Yeah, no, no, I'm not. Hey, Teresa.
How are you?
Awake.
Yeah, me too.
Green. Teresa's green. Really? Oh, God. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Coffee machine in the bag. Everybody, everybody. Are you all ready? Good morning, everyone. And I would welcome everyone to the City of Palm Coast City Council Workshop this morning. Today is Tuesday, February the 13th, so make sure you get ready for whatever you need to do for tomorrow so that everybody's happy. Tomorrow would be Valentine's Day. And from my experience, don't forget it because you will regret it. It is 9:01 a.m. We are in the community wing of City Hall. And with that, I would ask you to please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you're welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thank you all. And if I could ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus. Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Very good. I would welcome Ms. Lauren Johnston to the dais today. She will be sitting for the city manager as our assistant city manager. I would just ask, are there any comments in advance of today's meeting that you need to make?
No, Mayor.
Very good. Then I would open up the agenda for public participation in order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns. Please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the folks in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would invite our first speaker this morning, and I see a member of the press. Do you need another chair up here? Okay. So are there any members of the public that would like to address me in city council this morning? Yes, sir.
All right. Good morning. My name's Ken McDowell, and I'm back up here again to kind of ask some questions that I know no one up here will answer, but maybe people behind me might open their minds a little bit. Months ago, several months ago, I stood up here and demanded this city perform a forensic audit. Guess what? All five of our city councilmen and women voted to approve it. That was on a Tuesday night. The very next Tuesday morning, three of you backed out on the guise that the city government told you it was too expensive to do. Okay? One week after that, the law firm that's been representing this city for 25 years, and who knows how much untold millions of dollars they've made off the information taken from this city government, they decided not to renew their contract. I'll be darned. They did. So the attorney that sits up here is a contract employee, has no real duty to the people in this town and to the city. Okay? They have a duty to their employer. So all of a sudden, the forensic audit just said, ah, we can't support it. Well, then the ground swell of citizens came along with this flooding issue, and guess what? Our forensic audit numbers are up about to probably about 2,500 people that are angry. They want this city government exposed. Most of it has nothing to do with you folks up here on the dais. It has to do with the people back there in these offices that have set the cultures and have taken our money and spent it the way it benefits them. And again, and there are people behind me and will be coming along in the weeks to come that are going to re-demand a forensic audit. Now, at least two of you I know that are up there, that are sitting up here, still support a forensic audit. It's what this city needs. It's never had one, never had one, and the timeframe is a maximum of every five years a forensic audit be performed. All right? What are you afraid of? You're, it's so easy to spend our money, okay? Spend it on a forensic audit. Let's get this done. Let the people know what's going on back here in these hallways, okay? We don't know what's going on in the back rooms with the politicians. All right?
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, too.
Good morning. My name is Celia Boglisi. I live in Palm Coast since 1991, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak, and I hope everybody has a happy Valentine's. I already celebrate with friends, supporting a local business in the golf course. Anyway, we had a great time. Anyway, I'm here because this weekend, again, this terrible, huge, five piles of parcel clearing debris is not controlled burning, my dear mayor and council. It's parcel clearing debris. I've been told a few weeks ago by Florida State that the cities can come up or counties with an ordinance banning parcel clearing debris. No, with all due respect, Mr. Barry Hills stood up here and explained to our councilman, Pontieri, that control, no, 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 no. We are not asking for that. That is the state. It is well justified because it's to prevent that we don't have forest fires around us like the last one we had in 1998 and the one before. What I'm asking the city is please, and the management, to really get to the point and find out that if it's true that the state told me in the phone when I called and was transferred to DEP, whatever, I wish I would have kept that phone number, that the city can come up with an ordinance banning parcel clearing lots burning for by developers when they have a project. We were exposed to this all weekend. I have sent you two emails to the council of all the peoples complaining and being affected in their health by this, and if we don't stop it, other parcel clearings, we're going to have to endure the same thing. We need an ordinance ASAP to stop contaminating our lungs, please. I drove by there, and the smoke was unbearable, okay? And they, when I called the Forest Street Department, Mr. Lucas Morales explained to me, oh, they have, she has a permit. She has a permit, okay? So the issue is that she might have a permit, but it is bad for us. And he told me also that yesterday's burning, I mean, the Sunday burning was the last five piles, she won't have no more to burn. This is not an excuse. It's not a justified thing for us. One other thing, I want to remind Mr. Flukas that when the Diamond rescind their application is good for us, so please take a stand for us. We need to change our original 17, 18 wireless plan because it says 150 feet from any home. That should not be allowed.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I really would like for the city to dig deeper into considering traffic calming methods being used in Palm Coast. Cities all around us are using them, and we hear all the time it's about the fire trucks, the emergency vehicles. Well, they have fire trucks, they have emergency vehicles, but yet they're using traffic calming methods. And I hear more people coming up and speaking about their streets there being more speeding or more excessive traffic. So why can't we, why can't the city look into how they are prevailing using traffic calming methods, but we don't want to? There must be a reason that, other than, well, just the fire trucks or the emergency vehicles, that we don't want them in Palm Coast because other cities are using them. It doesn't make sense. Protect our residential neighborhoods. That's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Donald Clemente, 48 Woodside Drive. So my problem is about the drainage, and I've been trying to get this addressed for a couple of years now. I wrote several comments on Palm Coast Connect. So it started around 2023, and D.O.R. Horton started building their house next to me, and I noticed that the actual, the lot was getting higher and higher. So they got the house together, and the house was sitting at about 20, 22, 23 inches higher than mine. So they essentially changed the topography of the land. Their lot sort of overlaps online about seven inches. I've talked to them throughout the time. They have come out a few times, tried to correct it and remove the sod and sort of scrape the area so there would be some sort of a swell, kind of leaning towards the front to drain in the city swell. Fortunately, it's not working. I recently have called D.O.R. Horton. They sent their rep here in town. I approached him in a way that amiable, to try to, together to correct the problem. He came down with a landscaper slash engineer. They came down with machinery, and it seemed that their lot was eight inches high in the back, eight up front, maybe about four in the middle. And it kind of proves the whole thing because the water is basically a midpoint by my fence, and it just collects there in the middle of their lot. So I've had some people down, some contractors. One thing in the possible view is a series of French drains that would drain into the city swell. They thought about possibly for me to do some things on my side similar, but it wouldn't work because the water essentially is on that side. Horton spent almost a half hour, they were trying to prove that my lot is draining on itself. So it was not amiable by no means. He essentially is looking for his company's interest. The, some of the proposals, again, by this other company, were to build a series of French wells on their side and drain it into the city. So what's being done about a lot of this? I mean, even if I, I can't put out the money to correct it because it's their land. If I was to do it on my land, it won't be effective. So what are we going to do?
Thank you for your comment. We're going to address that at the end of public comment.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask Lauren one question. Who does he need to see to get on the list of properties with problems?
Melissa Hill, if you can please get this gentleman's information, please.
We'll address, we have another comment to make at the end of public comment.
So Melissa Hill? Do I go now?
That'd be great if you would. Make sure we have your contact information.
Where is that? Is that place in the building?
No, she's right behind you, sir.
Right behind you.
We already have you on the list, and we've done a site.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Lauren, Melissa, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Candace Stevens, P section, also flooded in Flagler County. I think you guys can see here that there's a lot of people that are having this issue. We're still getting new people on the list. We were supposed to be done inspecting the properties last month, December, I think it was. Now we're going into further. So as you can see, there's more properties. Like Jeremy, I have actually taken some of my time and drove around and looked at some of the development going on in the P section, and I'm very baffled because I can go to the corner of Pony Express and Ponce de Leon and see the house on the corner grated beautifully, grated beautifully, everything smooth going to the outside, coming to the front. And then I go down about eight houses still on Ponce de Leon on the left, and there's a house that's being done, and it's this high and then a slant in the next people's fence. How is that visually approved by anybody that has eyes? That's what my question has been all along. Who is the person that initially okayed these heights of these houses? Who is that person? Where did this start and who is that person? Because that person has made all this trouble for you now and all this trouble for us now. It's really not a game. It's really our lives. This isn't a chess game. It's not a game of checkers. This is our lives and our homes. When I moved to Palm Coast, I was so happy. I love it here. I used to visit here for vacation for 10 years before I moved here. I would cry when I left here to go back to Tennessee. Not that I hated that. I just loved it here so much, and I felt like I really belonged here, and now I know I belong here. But the way it's going, sir, you have to put a stop to some of this stuff. And if I wouldn't have came out and said anything, how many other people's houses would be flooding like mine in their yards? We did stop some of it. We did, we did stop some of the bleeding from here forward, but what about from here backward? This city is full of people that love it. I bet you I've talked to more of them than you have, and I appreciate everybody being supportive, but instead of feeling like I'm doing something right, I feel like I'm fighting you guys, like I'm doing something wrong. That is not what my intention was. I just want to fix our city because I love Palm Coast. I think you know that. How much time I spend on the city? I spend more time working on the city than I do on my job where I get my paycheck. And just for the record for people, we need a forensic audit. We need a forensic audit. You guys have to show everybody where the money's going, no matter who comes and gets cut. That's how it works.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address me? Yes, sir.
Good morning. Jeremy Davis, P section. Yesterday, there was a survey team out at my house from the stormwater division. I would like to have that report from what they found. I mean, I could tell you what they found, but I wanted it in writing. So I'll be putting that request in for that. Now let's back to, back to business. I'd like to bring to your attention a potential conflict of interest concerning the mayor's involvement in real estate, given their role in decision-making for the city. This raises concerns about impartially, especially regarding matters that may impact their own business interests. Furthermore, the mayor's connections to developers creates additional conflicts of interest. Their relationship with those who stand to profit from development projects compromise their ability to make fair and objective decisions for the city, raising questions about preferential treatment and undue influence. Moreover, the mayor's association with developers is further complicated by their Chamber of Commerce affiliation, which raises suspicions of collusion and invites others to participate in the alleged scheme perpetuating a culture of cronyism and self-interest at the expense of the city's well-being. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir. Are there any other members of the, yes, ma'am? Either one.
Ms. Michael from the W section, and I'm with flooded Flagler. I had a gentleman come out last month, and he came in the yard, looked around, and I asked him what his qualifications were. He got snippy, and he goes, well, I worked in another county. I worked in St. John's County, and I know what I'm doing. I says, well, are you a certified engineer or anything so you can tell me you know what you're looking at? He just looked around, left, never heard anything. Now, another thing. They're building three new houses on the block behind me, another house on my block. I just don't understand, you know? I talked to a couple of people. I says, I'm ready to sell and get out of here. I had another home in Furtland Park, and my water bill was $46 a month, trash included, and they supplied me three cans. This was everything, and if I left to come back here, because I stayed a month out there and then come back over here, I tell them, turn my water off. They turned the water off. I don't get a water bill. I call them a day ahead of time, I'm coming back. They turn it on. I get charged for what I use. Here, I leave for a month, I still get $120 water bill, and you can't drink it. You know, it's so bad of bleach. My daughter had fainted taking a shower, and when I went to the water company and complained, they told me to have my daughter take her shower with the door open so the chemical smell won't get to her. Okay? And another thing, I'd like to know when our council here is going to fill out the Form 6 that Governor DeSantis says that, you know, you have to give a detail about your finances and if it's going to be available to the public. And then, you know, we need a forensic audit for everything. So I'd like to know when that Form 6 is going to be filled out, and that's it.
I thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Gary Kuna, C section. I think it's time, Mr. Mayor, you start cleaning house from the top down. There's people working in this city that are not doing anything. We call them chair sitters. They're not following through on their jobs. They're letting things go through. I worked with a company called Toll Brothers, and I knew Bob and Jane Toll well until they started playing games with developments. And I think this is what's happening with a lot of our developments. They lay out a big development, and then all of a sudden they end up with four to eight extra houses on it, and nobody could figure it out. The city engineers, township engineers, none of them. What they were doing were making lots three to five feet smaller, and it wasn't showing because they put it on the garage sites. Therefore, they had more house space further down the pike at the end of the development. I think this is some of the problem with some of these houses being built higher. We have a need or requirement for permits to put sod in, so when you put the sod in, your property is not higher than the neighbors. What happened to that? We seem to be just pushing build, 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 and nothing happening. Nobody's checking it. Myself and a neighbor watch the building inspector come down, check a house, drives up to the permit window, signs the papers, and leaves. Never goes in the house, never walks around the property. That happened several times, and we watched it, both myself and another neighbor, just walked around and checked all this stuff. We call that windshield inspection. The electrical department needs to be upgraded. The codes are worried behind the amps. These new systems in the air conditioning specialties are running on 24 volts, not 220. They don't need 60 amp breakers. Yes, they have a 60 amp safety switch, but that doesn't require a 60 amp breaker, not when they're running on 20 amps. Putting a 60 amp breaker on a 40 amp wire is looking for a potential house fire, and this is what's happening, and it needs to be updated. I had a session with your electrical company when I did mine, and they agreed, but they said, that's code. Well, you need to change the code because you're setting up a lot of houses for potential electrical fires. Build, build, build's got to stop. You're not taking into ramifications of the streets, the traffic, utilities, et cetera. The question is, where is all the sales tax money going for the gas, from the gas sales? That should be used for the roads and relining. Our gas here is 20 to 30 cents higher than even St. Augustine, 40 cents higher than Orlando. Okay? You realize the image you have set up out here for us to see? This is what it's all about. How much of this you can get in here and how much I can get back? And that's all there is to it, and you need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address city council at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy pre-Valentine's Day, everyone and everyone that's here. Make sure that you, your loved ones, you hug them and tell them you love them. Honorable mayor, honorable city council. My name is Ed Fuller, and I want to thank the, I think it's the Public Works Department. Unfortunately, we had a Texas-sized deer that was hit and killed on Cimarron and Comanche, and it was gigantic, and it was horrific. Neighbors called me, and I just happened to be walking my dog, and it was just terrible to see a beautiful animal like that killed. But that said, I called the community line, I believe it was, public service line, and got ahold of, I think the gal's name was Sam. Sam answers the phone. She said, sir, what's your problem? I said, unfortunately, we have a deer, that deer on the property of Cimarron and Comanche. She goes, well, we'll get around. I thank you for calling. Took the dog for a walk. 15 minutes later, that deer's gone. So I want to say thank you. It's unfortunate. I hated to see that deer lying in the curb, but it, no one wants to see a dead animal anywhere, but I really appreciate the timeliness of the response, and I want to thank Sam and all the team that came out there because I'm sure that's difficult work at best and thankless work as well. So thank you very much. I appreciate all you do, and you all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address me in city council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will, oh, yes, ma'am.
Marilyn Mack, the F section. I don't really have anything prepared today. It's just the same old thing here. I agree with the gentleman, that was two people ahead of me. You guys need to look from the top down or from the bottom up. You've got inspectors that are not doing their job. They don't inspect roofs on new builds or actually new roofs. I still have an issue with my roof that was put on two years ago because nobody ever went on it and inspected it, to include my lot issue that continues to go on for 20 months now that's not been repaired. The other thing I wanted to talk about was another department here. Your purchasing department is full of accounting people. They have historically accounting experience, not contracting experience. So I just saw the new RFP that went out for your forensic audit, but it's an educational forensic audit, it's not the actual RFP. So I'm going to talk about that today because I found it very interesting. I've never seen in 26 years it done that way. The reason why you do a solicitation is because it's confidential, so you're going to actually have all the different vendors and contractors come up here and do a presentation that's recorded. that's recorded. Never seen it in my life. Everything's supposed to be contained within the purchasing department, something that just speaks volumes of what's going on. Never seen it in my life. You could have done an RFI, Request for Information, not an RFP, so now you've made it duplicate work, so now you're going to have to go back out and do another RFP. So I don't know if it's a stall tactic or what on the forensic audit. By the way, I used to be an agent plus an officer, two different times, so I actually ran the whole department. So I do know about funding. I know about all of it pretty much, and my commodities were from A to Z. So again, I'm watching very closely, and I'm still amazed how this place is not, I'm actually amazed that the city actually functions every day because of the lack of qualifications, even though everybody's extremely overpaid in the staff. It's really amazing for this size of a city. And again, I support a forensic audit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If there are no other speakers from the public, I will close public comment. And I thank the last speaker. I think she answered the gentleman's question about the forensic audit. Assistant City Manager, can you just briefly describe the fact or when the RFP went out and the purpose of the RFP?
Yes, sir. The RFP opened on February the eighth. As per City Council's direction through consensus was to bring in expert that would be able to clarify the definition of a forensic audit, the scope, and if possible, a range of expenses. That bid closes on February twenty-ninth, and then we will do the review and evaluations and presentations if needed.
Thank you for the comment. City Council members, briefly, is there anything that you would like to specifically respond to or allow staff to follow up more completely with detail and necessary information on questions that were posed this morning?
Yep, just one thing. In response to Celia's burning, the open burning in Florida and whether it's regulated by the DEP, I was curious if staff could maybe bring back some counties or cities that are doing anything of the norm.
So we've already given direction to staff and the legal firm to bring back language for just that purpose, which would be based, of course, on others as well. So that is in the works as we speak. I don't know if you have timing on that because obviously time is of the essence. We would like to curtail any future burning at the earliest possible moment. Do we have an agenda item on that coming up?
We don't currently have one, Mayor, but we are working with legal on best practices.
All right, so obviously, I think everybody here, I don't want to speak for the council, but we would like to be able to move on that as soon as we possibly can. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on comments today?
I just want to, I know there's some confusion about the forensic audit, and, you know, we sit up here week after week, and we listen to people who have been asking for the forensic audit, and so I just want to kind of provide some clarity and transparency as to what we're doing. We were asked to do a forensic audit. A forensic audit is not something where you just do this very high-level forensic audit of the entire finances of a city or county. That would literally cost millions of dollars. The purpose of a forensic audit is if something were to come back in the audits that we already do annually, every single year, that our accounting department continues to win awards for, if something were to come back that raised any red flags, and that has never occurred. Now, do I disagree that a forensic audit may not provide some type of benefit? I don't disagree with that general statement, but the problem is we don't have anything to pinpoint and to narrow the scope. So what we asked for was for a firm to come in and say, "Hey, look, this is what we can specifically look at. This is what, if we were to look at the stormwater department, the enterprise fund, the general fund, this is what each of those things would cost, and then we can make a decision as a council as to what we want to focus a forensic audit on." So do I agree that the best language is probably an educational presentation? No, but that is kind of somewhat what it is because we need to know what we're going to spend money on, what the scope is going to entail, and by the way, what other things we're taking from in order to pay for this? Because I got news for everybody that is listening. We have a fire department that has to, that needs two new stations that have to be built, and we've got a police department that is needing more officers because we, as a city, are busting at the seams, and we need public safety. So we have very tough decisions to make up here with what we do with monies. Infrastructure is a concern. You all know that. And so we need to be educated as to what specifically we're going to use this forensic audit for, what needs to be hyper-focused, where we feel the best resources are going to be used, and what we're going to focus on, and then how much that's going to cost. So we are moving forward. It's not a delay tactic, but to the point of everybody who comes up and speaks, we're trying to be very responsible and diligent with taxpayer dollars. So to just say, "Hey, let's put out an RFP for a general forensic audit of every single dollar that's spent in this city," that would be a waste of your money, and I refuse to do that. So we feel, we felt this was the most diligent, and we had consensus on this council. This was the most diligent and cost-effective way to go about this. And the last thing I'll say, when you all come up here and speak, if you want to, I know you're supposed to direct your comments to the mayor, but if there's something to say about a specific staff member or our staff in general stealing and misappropriating, I would ask that you please not do that because they don't get to defend themselves. We have to do that for them, and it's inappropriate until something is found. We're taking steps to see if we can find that, but to just make that statement is very unfair to a staff that works very hard.
Thank you for your comment. The last item would be, can you, Assistant City Manager, give me an update on the convening of the ad hoc committee regarding the drainage issue?
Yes, Mayor, that's a part of the presentation that you'll hear from our staff.
Just in case people have to leave, I get it, but it's on your agenda.
Yes, providing the purpose and the scope is in the agenda item today, and then a resolution following is at your next business meeting.
The intent is that it would be composed of a group of citizens and other experts, I guess, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Just in case somebody has to leave before we get to the item. Very good.
Can we maybe get consensus to move it up because it's number two on the agenda?
I don't know if anybody has to leave or not, but I'm just trying to help everybody out here. I mean, do you want to move it up?
I mean, if those people here are here specifically.
Vice Mayor, do you want to move that up?
I'm fine either way.
Anybody?
Fine.
All right. If, has that caused you a problem in your presentation?
No, Mayor.
We have a consensus that we will now change because it was brought up in, not because it was brought up in public comment, but just to acknowledge the residents that have spoken about this because we do consider it a priority. We will move the number-two presentation to number-one in today's meeting. So who's delivering the presentation?
Our Director of Stormwater Engineering, Mr. Carl Cody, and Deputy Director of Stormwater Engineering, Ms.
We'll bump you up to first as a priority. Thank you.
Good morning. We are here today to provide an update on infill lot drainage. So there are several items that we'll cover in our presentation today. During the December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three and January sixteenth workshop, City Council provides staff direction to provide information on historical, current, and future information on issues of flooding in Palm Coast. This include a three-pronged approach: fact gathering, technical manual modifications, and funding sources. In addition, staff was asked to provide recommendation on creating a citizens committee for residential flooding issues. This report provides that information. So first, we wanted to provide some historical information on which impacts flooding in Palm Coast. For that, we introduce Jonathan Lord, Emergency Management Director for Flagler County, to come in and give you an update on flooding.
Mr. Lord, we appreciate your time this morning. I know you just got back from Tallahassee, so thank you for coming to visit with us. So the floor is yours.
All right, it's my pleasure. All right, so I'm just going to talk very briefly just about kind of our, where the climate is today and what we're seeing today, and then just also a little bit about things that do make a difference in Palm Coast. So as you can see on the screen there, I kind of show the twenty-five-year average for rainfall in Palm Coast. It ranges from about fifty inches to sixty-three inches. There's different areas within the city that get more or less rain, and that changes every year. So if you notice, twenty-five years ago, the, over the last twenty-five years, the average was fifty inches to sixty-three inches. If you look at only the last ten years, and same with the last five years, they're pretty close to each other, that's gone up to fifty-seven to sixty-seven inches. So we're definitely in a climate phase where the last decade or even five years, we're seeing significantly more rain falling in Palm Coast particularly than we did twenty-five years ago. Now, that can change over time. That can easily change over time. We have years where we have dry spells. If we all didn't, you all haven't noticed, typically in the winter, we're supposed to have a dry season. We haven't really had a dry season for the last four years or so. We've been quite wet, which is kind of good for the wildfire side of stuff, not so great for the amount of water that's accumulated within our community. Some other key years where we actually had over seventy inches of rain, and again, they're not all clustered towards the last ten years, but back in two thousand and one, in thirteen and fourteen, seventeen and eighteen, and twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see up there. And the three sites that I'm showing on the screen there, one is your water treatment plant, number one, your original water treatment plant that actually captures rain data back to the late seventies. Water Treatment Plant Two that captures rain data of the last twenty or so odd years, and actually over the Emergency Operations Center, we've been capturing rain data for the last twenty or so years there as well, even though it's technically outside the city limits. But that was just another area just to see, so you all can see where we kind of got our numbers from. So as I said, in general, more rain than twenty-five years ago. While most of the issues you all are seeing are inland, sea level rise, and regardless of what causes it, sea level rise does have an impact, even if you're not immediately on the coast. Sea level rise not only increases the mean water level on the Atlantic Ocean, it increases the mean water level, the average water level, on the intercoastal. And the intercoastal is where a lot of the water in Palm Coast ultimately drains through once it wakes its way through the stormwater system. So as sea level rises, that does have impacts on your stormwater infrastructure. So stormwater management, super important, and something that Palm Coast has had a commitment to since the beginning, since ITT started developing the Palm Coast because of the fact that Palm Coast area is inherently very wet in the first place. The land that Palm Coast is built on is, while it wasn't, is partly swamp, it's partly poured, as our Growth Manager Director in the county likes to call it, poorly drained, piney wetlands. So that's what we, that's what we started with in the first place, and things had to be done to dry out that land so Palm Coast could be developed. So ongoing stormwater management is super important to make sure that our community continues to be protected and we are able to continue to live and thrive here in our community. Your stormwater department is very proactive, but that with the canal systems and the pumps and even the swell system is part of that bigger stormwater management system. That is all part of the system that allows us all to live here in the community and have homes that hopefully are staying dry when possible. However, with all government-funded programs, this program is truly limited by the amount of funds put into that program. Your stormwater system can only do so much with, you know, based on the funding that you are all able to give it and allocate it every year through your stormwater fees. A very big win for the city of Palm Coast with the stormwater system that you have is you're part of something called the National Flood Insurance Program in its community rating system. So what, that is a voluntary program across the country that allows communities to buy down risk due to flooding, due to flooding events. And in exchange for buying down that risk, homeowners who buy flood insurance get significant discounts with their flood insurance. And Palm Coast is what's known as a Class Four community. The lower the number, the better. That equates to a thirty percent discount. Now, everyone knows our homeowners insurance is not a pretty thing to look at these days, but flood insurance, or the National Flood Insurance Program, which you typically buy through your regular homeowner's insurance company, is that the rates are controlled and they are based on the community's risk, and then you get that discount based on the things the community does. And thirty percent discount is a pretty big discount. Not many communities in the country qualify for that discount. Other benefits with this, with Palm Coast participating in the National Flood Insurance Program is it does allow homeowners who pay for flood insurance to also qualify for grants if their homes are repetitively flooded. So if the home has multiple losses due to flooding, the National Flood Insurance Program wants to encourage that homeowner to harden the home, elevate the home, or even have the land bought out and turned into open space, and there are grants provided through the city to the homeowner to take care of that. But the key part of that is, is the homeowner has to have purchased that flood insurance to be eligible for those, for those kinds of grants. The other kind of grants is too, CRS communities, which again, Palm Coast is one of them, is also eligible for some community-wide grant programs to improve public infrastructure when it comes to the stormwater system. So there's two pieces to that. There's homeowner grants as well as community-based grants. All right, so looking forward, the fact that we see more rain today in Palm Coast is nothing abnormal anywhere in Florida, probably not even the southeastern U.S., just the way the climate looks today. For all Florida communities, even if they're not immediately on the coast, as I mentioned earlier, sea level rise has an impact on what you can do with water. The increased rainfall has an impact, and also how the community grows and develops does have an impact on flooding. Building codes and property elevation are super important for hardening the community moving forward. They are needed for community resiliency, not just for flooding, but for other things too. Building codes don't only cover flooding, they cover wind resistance, fire resistance, and all that. In the past, the older codes did not adequately address what we're seeing today with flooding. They weren't wrong. That was just what we knew at the time, that building codes are set by the state of Florida, and they were what they were in the pastime. Today, they are different. They require more elevation to make sure that homes moving forward don't have these same issues. The same thing on older homes. If they have to be rebuilt or have damage in excess of fifty percent, they have to be rebuilt to the newer codes, which includes higher elevations. However, with all building codes, which includes a property elevation, enforcement is super key to limiting impacts, and I underline in limiting there because nothing makes impacts go away, a hundred percent. You know, we have these rain events, as we all saw last year in Fort Lauderdale, they had the storm of a lifetime down there, dumped thirty-plus inches of rain in a matter of hours. That same storm came up here, but it moved past here very quickly and only dropped four or five inches of rain, but it sat over Fort Lauderdale. So the climate is doing weird things these days, and unfortunately, we have to do our best to protect our communities to make sure we can do that. And then just the last thing I'll talk about is other programs that are out there that potentially the community can take care of, take advantage of. So at the federal level, mitigation programs, because of things like the climate impacts we're seeing today, there's a huge national focus, and there's millions, if not billions of dollars made available nationally, a lot of it's competitive, to help mitigate and make communities collectively stronger, more resilient to disasters. There's been a lot of studies done at the national level. For every dollar invested today to mitigate and make a community more resilient from natural disasters, return six dollars in future dollars. So there's a program managed by the county, which Palm Coast participates in, so do all the cities in the county, and it's called the Local Mitigation Strategy. It's a program where projects are presented and ranked, and then based on that ranking, they're made eligible to be submitted to some state and federal funding streams. Now, the ranking only gets them out of Flagler County. They then have to many times compete against projects statewide or compete against projects nationally. One of them is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That's a program that probably has the most money available right now. However, the issue with that program is you have to have a disaster to have those funds become available. We inherently don't want a disaster, but that is a way, when the federal government sees a disaster occur in a community, they say, "Hey, we don't want you to have the same kind of impacts in the future, so we're offering up money to help you harden your community." Flood Mitigation Grant Program, that's what I talked about a little earlier, is tied to the National Flood Insurance Program. You either have to be a CRS community, which Palm Coast is, or you have to be a homeowner who pays into the National Flood Insurance Program. Brick or building resilient infrastructure in communities, that's a newer grant program that's been around for about three years. That's a nationally competitive program that committees can apply for hardening grants to improve the infrastructure within their community, and you compete with communities across the entire country for that. And there's also a newer one called the Safeguarding Tomorrow Through Ongoing Risk Mitigation Loan Program. So realizing that there's never enough money to harden a community, the federal government's also made loan funds available, low-interest loan funds available to communities where you can apply, you get the low-interest loans, and then you pay back the federal government at this low rate. EPA and the National Ocean Traffic Administration also have resiliency-type grant programs that help harden communities as well.
Jonathan, thank you very much. Do you have this information in summary form that has, at the very least, the contact information for residents that the city could share with the community through website and perhaps printed brochures? Because there's a Because there's a whole host of items that you mentioned, and we may not be familiar enough with them. So is there a communication piece to this that you can help us with?
What I can get to the next day or so is I can take this presentation and add hyperlinks into it, because all of these are available on the internet.
The links, okay.
Yeah, so I'll just take this and just turn the text into links to the appropriate.
You'll get that to the city manager, I appreciate that very much, so thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Before Jonathan leaves, any questions for Jonathan in particular?
I just have a question on your sea level rise increase in rainfall, where are we getting this from?
So some of that's the National Weather Service, some of that's our own measurements here in the county. So the National Weather Service-
How much sea level rise are you talking?
I don't have that for here, I really, I'd have to look that up, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I mean, if you say sea level rise, it sounds like the sea is rising. Are we talking this much or this much?
It's inches. I don't have the exact number, but it's inches, and it's based on a point in either Jacksonville or Daytona, our two measuring sites.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I have some questions, I'm sorry, Mayor. The Class Four rating that you were speaking to, Mr. Lord, how is that achieved? I mean, what is that? I just don't know much about it.
No, that's fine. It's a whole suite of different things a community does. One is a part of it, and I'm going to be oversimplified because I'm not a true expert in the actual, it's so many pieces to it, and different areas have different expertise in it, but it's really about, does the community have a flooding or stormwater management plan? Does the community have infrastructure that's maintained to help move stormwater and decrease damage to property? Does the city do outreach with its citizens to help them understand the impacts of stormwater and things like encouraging the purchase of flood insurance, even if flood insurance is not required on your home? You know, emergency management, we always recommend that everybody carry flood insurance because we have hurricanes, and hurricanes come with the water, even if you're not in a flood zone. So it's a whole bunch of, and each of those things I mentioned have like 20 different criteria, I'm being somewhat facetious, underneath each one of them where you gain points. So it's very much a point-based system, and the federal government through the insurance services office comes and evaluates the community on a regular basis and kind of goes through this checklist and says, prove you're doing this, prove you're doing that, prove that you're enforcing building codes. That's another thing in there. So it's all these little things, and communities go up and down based on their most recent audit of have they followed the plan they have in place, are they doing the things they say they're doing?
Do you know when our last audit was?
It was recently.
Just this year, probably a couple of weeks ago.
Jordan Wood, right?
I think we're in the process of obtaining the final approval, but it just happened a couple of months ago, we've been doing RFIs with them, we're expecting a final decision within the next week or two.
Okay.
If I can add, if I'm not mistaken, that involved a tour with the state officials throughout the community, is that correct?
Yes, but we actually, we had two audits this year, actually, within like two months. That's the MS4 program, which is a different permit with the state, the CRS, which is what we were asking about. That happened in October, we've been doing some RFIs, giving them some more documentation, that's what Jonathan was talking about, you know. They like to see what brochures do we send out, signing sheets for the events that we hold, all the information, right? So I think I just saw an email from her this morning, so we're still going through the process, I believe we still are at Class Four from conversations with them.
Okay, if we can make that information public once it comes out, that would be, I think, beneficial. The next question I had was, you mentioned the wetland impacts. How is the reduction of our wetlands impacted? And then what is the, what do you think is the proper, I guess, proportion of wetlands that we should maintain in our community in order to do what they're supposed to do, which is help with flooding?
So that's an interesting question. So this area was naturally primarily wetlands in the first place with some higher ridges and all that stuff. You know, building codes do require offsets of wetlands? I don't know what the right amount is, I am definitely not a hydrologist to be able to tell you that this amount of wetlands is the best way to offset the now hard surfaces in a community. In the past, building codes didn't really consider them very well, I'll be, I think we all have to admit that, building codes didn't consider that. In today's world, under the state building code, there is an offset process where that experts, way smarter than I, have determined that, you know, this much hardscape must equate to this much wetland that you have to offset. But, you know, as communities get older, Palm Coast is getting old, we have a lot of new stuff in Palm Coast, we have a lot of older stuff too, you know, sometimes we do, for lack of a better term, pay for the sins of our fathers, where those kinds of things weren't necessarily considered in the past. Not saying it was wrong, that was just not in people's expertise in the past, and we didn't know the impacts of how things were happening in the past. In today's world, it very much is a scientific standard set through the building code that says, this much hardscape and destruction of wetlands equals this much replacement of wetlands. And I'm not a building code expert, so, but there are people that have studied that, the state reviews that literally every year and looks at tweaks to the building code. This current year in the legislature, I didn't see any tweaks happening to the building code, but last year, I think there were some, almost every year, there's something they're considering tweaking on the building code.
And then my last question is, that same slide regarding wetlands also states that enforcement is key to limit impacts on existing properties and to secure the future. What do you mean by that, what type of enforcement?
So, you know, with new building codes, and I know you all have been talking about it a lot, it does, there's that key requirement about keeping water on the property. So a lot of that, that's enforcement, making sure that new water, water created or water running off of a newly developed property to the new code is being managed properly and not impacting an older property. Now, that also goes hand in hand. You know, older properties over time, if you have a property that's 20-plus, 30-years-old, your drainage might be different than it was when the property was first built, you know, land subsides, hardens, and all that kind of stuff. So on both sides of the fence, making sure that the current rules are being enforced and making sure that water is staying within its own property, obviously in the swell area of Palm Coast, to making sure that the water's ending up in the swells and then able to make its way through the soil in the swell system is key. But, you know, that's something that, you know, that takes manpower, womenpower to go see that, and that's obviously a cost to the community to make sure that kind of stuff happens.
And Jonathan, your title, again, please, I don't think I presented you properly.
That's okay. Emergency Management Director for Flagler County.
So it would seem to me, if you all agree, that the emergency director of, what is it again?
Emergency Management Director for Flagler County.
Emergency Management Director should be an integral part of the comp plan review and should participate, just to answer some of the questions, Councilwoman, that you posed. I mean, it's a great question, what should the balance be for our local community? I think that's something that our community can weigh in on, in terms of listening to experts and, you know, coming up with a strategy for the long-term future, I think that'd be an excellent contribution and belongs in the Imagine 2050, although we can implement things obviously, you know, in short order, so I think that's great. Any other questions for Mr. Lord at this time?
No, I would just like to say thank you to Jordan and also our staff, I'm sorry, the NFIP program, or I'm sorry, our classification as a Class Four has been over the last eight years, I know that we have ascended that, I just wanted to say thank you to Jordan and team. Thank you very much for everything you've done, and thank you very much for, you know, managing our emergency district at Flagler County as a whole. I think holistically, this approach is great, and I know that our staff has worked tremendously hard, and I know that it is a difficult thing, especially with our current situation with flooding, but over the last eight years, I know that we've worked incredibly hard to be able to save money for those people who have to mandatory, have no option of purchasing flood insurance because they're in these national flood hazard areas, NFHA, so thank you to staff and also thank you to Flagler County.
And just to finish it up, for those of you in the audience who are listening online that may not be aware, Mr. Lord's mentor and predecessor was Kevin Guthrie, who is now in charge of emergency services for the entire state of Florida. So he has a direct connect right up to the top, so thank you for being here.
Oh, and thank you for the successful work at Tallahassee.
My pleasure.
Very good. Okay, who's going to continue? Thank you, Carl.
I know there's a few items that Jonathan talked about that I'll probably go into a little more detail on. So between 2004 and 2018, there have been 105 flood insurance claims in the city. Most up-to-date information that was provided by FEMA, those claims only represent those who have flood insurance through the NFIP, does not include any resident that has flood insurance from a private insurance company. Of the 105 claims made, only 30 floor received funds from insurance. During this time period, there are 112 named hurricanes in the Atlantic Basin. So according to NFIP, flooding is a general or temporary condition of partial or complete inundation of two or more acres of normally dry land area, or two or more properties from unusual and rapid accumulation or runoff of surface waters from any source. So the definition of mitigation is to reduce the risk or severity of something, meaning ways to reduce future disaster losses. When we talk about flooding or home damage, we mean reducing future damages to homes. This can be by installing hurricane shutters to mitigating wind damage, or other improvements like installing a generator or new roof to reduce the potential damage from storms. Flagler County LMS, that Jonathan referenced, focuses on the major hazards that could potentially affect Flagler County and all the participating jurisdictions in this plan. By evaluating hazards, identifying vulnerabilities, and proposing solutions to them, Flagler County will be able to more efficiently meet the needs of the residents. Hazards fully profiled in this plan include erosion, drought, extreme heat, flooding, tornadoes, cyclones, severe storms, coastal flooding storms, surge, wildfires. Additionally, there are several natural hazards as well as technological and human causes that will not profile to the same extent as the above items. They have been evaluated and identified to be researched and monitored further. Over the last five years, the Flagler County LMS Working Group has been able to implement a multitude of great mitigation projects that range from planning and installing backup power to hardening homes and critical facilities and promoting personal hazard mitigation efforts. Success can also be measured by the increased community rating system, the class scores with Flagler Beach, Palm Coast, and Flagler County. In 2023, the city currently has 13 projects on the LMS, including upgrades to the Woodlands Drainage and the Case Section Drainage Area. More information on this program is available on the county website. So you're touching more upon the CRS through the National Flood Insurance Program. The CRS is an incentive-based voluntary program that recognizes activities that exceed minimum NFIP standards. Areas that are considered for this rating include public information activities, mapping and regulations, flood damage reduction activities, warning and response. So there are only 26 out of the over 1,500 nationwide communities with a Class Four or higher ranking. And in Florida, there are 245 participating communities, only five with a Class Four or better. So we're one of five communities in the state that are that highly ranked. City is participating with Flagler County in the state-managed vulnerability assessment. Once completed, the city will be able to apply for grants through the Resilient Florida The assessment is being conducted by an engineering consultant and part of the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Commission. These assessments will address everything from inland flooding to stormwater to anything related to sea level rise, critical facilities identified as city-county-owned assets. Since the vulnerability assessment is still ongoing and staff is determining how impactful, relevant it would be toward the infill lot situation, this item should be explored further as a collaboration with the Citizen Advisory Committee. And then a second part to this would be investigating compound flooding, which is the next part in this assessment grant study. This is a statewide mandate that all counties participate and have a vulnerability assessment plan, so this is something that we've been participating in along with the county. I'm now going to turn it over to our city stormwater engineer, Carmela Morales, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the improvements we do, the overall stormwater system, and how those may impact residents.
Thank you, Carl. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Before I get, talk about the modeling, and I'll try to make that brief so as to not bore you guys to death with engineering talk, I just wanted to mention, you know, ITT, when they originally did their, you know, master community, right, they platted X amount, and I know we're going to get into more detail about this later, but they platted, I don't know, over 40,000 lots, right? And within that plot, there were also some reserved parcels for future development. I think the infill lot, right, that really implies to the residential lots that were planted. The reserved parcels, that's, those typically come in for community development review. And just to touch on what Ms. Montero was mentioning earlier, how do we deal with wetlands, right? And wetlands and flood plain can really be interchangeable words. So we do address as part of our review and also the Water Management District, there are criteria that have to be met when there are impacts to the flood plain. For instance, when there is, if you are filling in portion of a flood plain, and depending what zoning it is, right, if it is Zone A, the city requires the developer to do like an analysis of the entire flood plain, they have to demonstrate a no-rise after the condition of their development. So those are some of the things that we look at from wetland slash flood plain and some of the, you know, what we enforce. So our system can maintain functioning, right? Because the initial ITT design was really the canals, swales, ditches, right? So when you start adding additional development that wasn't part of just the residential lots, and they have to have their own drainage system, they have to demonstrate they're not impacting our, you know, original system. So I just wanted to mention that before I got in here. Part of that, did you have-
You had a quick question on that, because, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because my curiosity is very heightened with regards specifically to infill lots, because I know when we get like new developments, they have to come up with a wetland mitigation plan and all of that, right? There's credits and all this technical stuff that goes into it. But for infill lots, how is it that we are accounting for getting rid, because when an infill lot goes in, guess what goes down? Trees, right? So how are we specifically accounting for that when these are one-off lots that continue to accumulate over and over, getting rid of so much greenery?
Greenery from, you talk about wetlands or just-
Yeah, those initial ITT lots were part, all the lots were part of the overall city stormwater system when they designed it upfront. So they had accounted a certain impervious area in all the lots. So currently, our existing system is, was designed to be capable of having all the, all ITT lots built on, with no additional enhancements. Now, we do, you know, Carmela will get into the stormwater modeling, we do have areas where we, we know the system doesn't function as well as it should, we've identified improvements, and Carmela's going to touch upon some of those improvements where we can make it better. But ITT's initial design was planned to have all lots built on and accommodate that stormwater.
So the current model is based on every single infill lot being built on? That's what you're saying?
Yes, and it was designed, the stormwater system designed and built for them.
Okay, and I'll let you touch on the solutions you all are proposing.
Yeah, so what I'm going to mention now is just how we look at modeling and how does stormwater capital improvement could provide benefits, right? Not a direct benefit to one specific residential unit, but to the overall system. So as you guys are probably aware, the city utilizes modeling software, ICPR, for our capital improvement projects, design and selection, right? So this is the same model, by the way, that was created back in 2019 as part of the stormwater master plan. Typically, whether, how these projects begin is with the visibility study, feasibility study. We then analyze that feasibility study a consultant creates for us, and we look at it from many perspectives, including the potential costs, what are the improvement metrics, right? What's the actual benefit that it's providing? Are we talking about, you know, 100, or, you know, we talk about several inch, right? So some of the things, also what the population is that's benefiting from the improvement, right? We try to get our bang for our buck, right? How can we create a project that positively affects a large neighborhood as opposed to just, you know, the end of one city block, right? So we try to get, it's a capital project, try to get downstream improvement. So for the most part, the drainage improvement projects at the downstream locations, they provide either additional capacity or conveyance capacity, right? Improved conveyance capacity, those are the main two things. We have other projects, but those are the main ones for a flooding improvement perspective. Some of these projects that we've done in the recent past include canal dredging, vegetation clearing, we've done some of these in the W section, the E section, some of these actually done by in-house personnel with the new equipment that we've acquired throughout the last few years. Downstream of Three Sisters was a big one that we performed, this was in between 995 and Old Kings Road. That canal clearing really helped out a lot. Very recently, L4 rear replacement, and currently ongoing London Waterway, it's another project that actually benefits a larger portion, not just its immediate neighborhood. The London Waterway- That, that London Waterway, just to throw out a number, twenty-one million gallons. That's the additional capacity that that project provides to the London Waterway. So what does that mean, right? So typically, when the storm comes, you know, levels rise. It starts going onto the road, right? The homes are twelve inches above the centerline of the road. So ideally, a home wouldn't get flooded until there's twelve inches of water in their fronting road, right? So when we provide these additional capacities further downstream, it means waters doesn't start staging up onto the roads until that, you know, that additional capacity area is met. So that's, that's some of the things. It's a little, you know, a little hard to understand, but I'm trying my best to just kind of explain how these capacity projects work. The, the modeling graph that you see here, what it really is depicting is there are three covert upsizing. And you guys have probably seen this one half a dozen times, I imagine by now, right? So, so what it does is you have a light blue and you see the dark blue. So the, the dark blue represents the area that's removed from a ten-year peak elevation extent, right? So after the improvements are done, you can see how much dark blue area is removed, right? So that's the flooding from a ten-year storm event that would happen.
Just, sir, I'll have public comment after the presentation is finished. I'll have public comment after the presentation is finished, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, that, that is it for, for my presentation. Now, do you guys have any, any questions?
And just, just so you know, this area here that on the map, that area in blue, you know, a big part of that is in the Woodlands, you know. The, the, the large area, the light blue is actually Grand Swamp. You know, this is one of our main discharge points for our city stormwater system. It discharges through Grand Swamp and either heads north or south. These are a lot of the outfalls that go then to the intercoastal. So, you know, this is one that's specifically, you know, like Carmela indicated, working on these downstream projects, you know, cleaning out ditches like in the W section, we cleaned out ditches. The swales, you know, held less water. So, you know, that's been the focus all along is to, if the water has nowhere to go, you know, you need to start from the bottom and work your way up, you know, so the water can flow out of our system and make improvements, you know. So Woodlands has always been an issue. This is a project that's on the LMS where we are seeking HMGP funding for this project as well. This was also a state appropriation for this year as one of our critical projects. So, you know, these are some of those projects that we, we go after dollars for. So we've gone after this one, I think, in the past for water management district funding as well. You know, the difficulty is, you know, a lot of those grants are tied to, you know, Jonathan Lord indicated repetitive loss. So repetitive loss is difficult to prove because we have such a high CRS rating. We don't have homes that flood, you know, like a lot of other communities here. So getting that repetitive loss of homes flooding is, is what our challenge is of scoring higher than when we're competing against a lot of these other communities that have, you know, entire neighborhoods with homes underwater. So just wanted to pass that along. And, you know, I mentioned ITT drainage system being fully designed. And, you know, they obviously didn't design it for a fifty-year, a hundred-year storm because you can't design for the worst-case event. And that's why the indication was that twelve inches above the road, you know. So for your everyday storm, you know, the swales are going to hold the water. For your larger storms or you get inundated with, you know, a large amount of rain in a short period of time, the roads are going to flood. They were meant to flood as part of the ITT design and that was their intent was, you know, to keep the water in the road, have it convey the water. So even if the swale's not functioning, the water's going to flow down the street, find that ditch, get to the canal, and that's what its purpose was, you know. So the swale was more to treat the water, have it percolate back down into the groundwater. It, yes, it does do some conveyance down to the ditch, but it's big part was to, you know, slowly get it there. So the benefit, the bigger benefit was trying to recharge aquifer and treat the, the stormwater. So just passing along more information. So the task force, so this four, task force was formed in November of 2023. And we meet each weekly to discuss topics related to infill lots. So it's going to provide the top leadership and experts in stormwater. We have several members, the CFM is Certified Floodplain Manager, so they're part of that, gone through that certification process and part of that entity that deals with floodplain management in the CRS program. The group meets weekly, we discuss cases and updates with city council. And you can see the members on, on here. We also utilize other staff members, you know, whether it's our survey crew inspectors and other staff that help provide input and assessment on the cases that we've been addressing. I'm now going to turn it over to Lynn Stevens, our Deputy Director of Stormwater Engineering, to kind of give you an update on our infill lots.
Sorry. Good morning.
Morning.
So currently, as, as we've mentioned before, there's about forty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six lots that were originally planted by ITT. Out of those, little over thirty-nine thousand of those lots have been built upon. So there are quite a few still vacant out there. In two thousand and five, the stormwater, the city created the first stormwater department and began conducting stormwater inspections. Prior to two thousand and five, the stormwater system was managed by the Community Service Corporation. Sorry. Trying to find my mouse.
Can you explain that pie chart a little bit? I'm not sure you understand the numbers on that.
I'm sorry, say again?
Ah, the pie chart there, I'm not sure.
Yes, so what we're showing on the pie chart there is that prior to two thousand and five, when the city created the stormwater department, seventy-four, seventy-three percent of the cases that we've gone out to inspect, seventy-three percent of those homes were built prior to two thousand and five, when the city had the stormwater department.
The middle number is the number of cases?
That's correct.
Understood.
So what we did is, is currently we have about a hundred and seventy-four cases that have come into us on infill lots, thank you very much. And others have come in, but they were reclassified because majority of the complaint was with the swale and not associated with construction on an infill lot. So they were moved out of this category. So as of last week, we had a hundred and seventy-four cases that have been logged since October twenty twenty-three. We did go back to some of the previous cases. Melissa Hill was, was able to pull some of the other cases out of prior to October twenty twenty-three that would have been included in the infill lots if we had that designation at the time. So she did go back and, and try and historically look at some of the older cases and bring them in. So at the end of the day, we wound up last week with about a hundred and seventy-four cases. Seventy-three percent of those have been impacted by new home construction. And I'm sorry, seventy-three percent of those were built prior to two thousand and five. Just wanted to point out too that in, in calendar year twenty twenty-three, there were a hundred and thirty-nine duplexes, one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine single-family homes that received COs or certificates of occupancy as completing construction in twenty twenty-three. So after we concluded our site visits, and, and again, we still have some more site visits that we, we are scheduled to, to visit. So we are still receiving more cases every day. So it's not like we have no, it's not like we're not taking any more cases. So we added the hundred and seventy-four cases. There are twenty-five that are listed as other. And those are ones that are scheduled to be visited or we're waiting for the resident to get back with us to schedule that site visit. So there still are twenty-five of them out there that we have not gotten to or we haven't scheduled to visit. We have two groups of employees that visit each site. And when we go out to the site, we have a set of pre-prepared questions that we ask each resident. We ask them the year the house was built. We ask them how long they've lived there. We ask them to provide us a full description of what the issues are, what they're experiencing. We ask them how long water, how long does the water stand in their yards? How long the issue has been ongoing? Where the, where on the property the water stands? And does the water enter the house or some other structure on the property? And we do ask them if they have flood insurance. It doesn't impact our, our evaluation, but it's just a question for more information. Sometimes when we go out to the location, we may offer suggestions to the homeowner on how they can mitigate their own issues, such as redirecting their own gutters. A lot of times they're flooding on the side or in the back and that's exactly where the gutters are discharging to. So we have made some suggestions to homeowners to move those outlets so that it conveys to the front of the property instead of the area that they're experiencing the flooding. Staff will then go back and, and look at the drainage plan for the home if it's available. Some of the homes are, are older and we can't always get all the information if they're built back in the seventies and eighties. Some of that information may not be available. But we do as much research as we can to try and get back and find out how they were built, how their, their flood, how their stormwater was conveyed off of their property. We also look at the new construction and how the new homes are being built today. We'll look at some other information on the property, see if there's been any changes, have they added a pool? Have they added patios or any other structures? And then the case is placed into one of the categories that we have listed. One of them is just they do have standing water in the yard and there's no issue about that. There, there is an issue. We also take photographs when we're out there to help document the information. Sometimes it is a concern about construction. So they may be concerned that, that they've just cleared a lot and they're concerned about what that construction is going to look like, even though construction hasn't really started. They have concerns that may not be related to the new build. And we're going to go into each of these categories in the next couple of slides. We do have a couple of cases where water does enter the home. And there are some where water enters other structures and that could be a shed, patio, pool. So the first case we wanted to talk about was standing water in the yard. And, and ninety-one of the homes that we visited of the seventy-four homes did have water standing in the yard. And that is out of the over thirty-nine thousand homes that are built currently in the city. Again, these are based on cases reported to us that we have documented cases on. The standing water in the yard may be because of the new home build nearby. May not be, but they definitely do have documented water in their yard. It means that the drainage on the existing home in its current condition does not allow the stormwater to drain to the front where the swell and therefore ponds in their back or side yard. The next one is the construction concern. This is where construction has not yet started. The lot has been cleared. The residents are worried about drainage impacts and how that's going to work on their property. And some cases, they're concerned about the height of the new home, the finished floor, and how much fill is being brought in. When these cases come in, we are able to move, we are able to more closely review the proposed builder drainage plan. So one of the first things we'll do, and, and we've done this on quite a few homes, is pull that proposed drainage plan, look a little closer at those. There has been occasions where we've been able to work with the builder to actually reduce the overall elevation of those homes. This is all work that was done prior to the new technical manual being enacted recently. Oftentimes, we'll meet with the concerned residents. We'll bring the drainage plans out there with us so that we can explain to the resident exactly what's happening on the, on the construction site. Again, now with the new technical manual in place regarding the elevations, we're experiencing less and less of these concerns. The next one is a concern not related to the new build. There's been a couple of homes that we've gone out to where there has been no construction surrounding the, the location. For example, some folks have had standing water because of landscaping. They've removed trees, maybe they had a natural area at the back of their property. And now they've removed all of those trees and now the water is just standing back at that property line. There's also fences have been added which will stop water movement. And those are what we were, we were saying was where the concern is not related to the new build. And this is the location of those homes.
I have a quick question, just on tree removal?
Yes, sir.
How does removing a tree affect a lot?
So a lot of times what we have seen in the field, especially those lots that have had that natural area in the back, when they remove multiple trees and they pull those trees out, it leaves voids behind.
What, I mean, are you talking big trees, little trees? When you say pull them out, are you talking more cutting the tree, leaving the stump, grinding the stump?
It, it could be. I mean, we've seen some where they have left the stump behind and over time that stump is just disintegrated and starting to decompose and therefore leaves a void behind.
Leaves a hole?
Yes, sir.
Of, okay. But if that hole's filled in, if that stump is grinded and the hole's filled in, they should be fine, right?
They should be.
Well, not necessarily. A lot of these older homes that were left natural, when they built, they put fill on the front half of the lot and the back half, the back, you know, whatever it was, twenty feet, thirty feet, whatever they left natural, was the original grade, which was low. Now, if you had vacant lots around you, yeah, you didn't have an issue with water draining anywhere. But if you decide to, you know, the trees will suck up water, especially pine trees, which is good to keep it natural. And that's probably what was happening with some of those trees. But once you clear the, the trees, you would have had to add fill higher, you know, enough so it could push the water to the front of the home. That isn't necessarily always what happens. Sometimes they'll just remove the trees over time and then it's a depressed area on their lot that's lower than the rest of it. So there's no place for the water to go.
You'd have to remove more than one tree to have an effect, I would assume.
You, you could, or someone, if you, or if some people built around you over time, then you would have a place, you'd have a low spot, you'd have a basically a depressed area on your lot.
Since we stopped for just a moment to discuss this one issue, I want to ask a question related to it. Are we stopping the analysis? Because it's, in my mind, I'm thinking there could be a few factors that are contributing to what's going on on one property. So just because somebody may have removed some trees, does that say, is that a point where we say, okay, you removed trees, we're done looking at your property now? Or is there still an analysis as to make sure that the neighboring properties, if they were built on, and then, you know, a new infill lot built is what maybe could have contributed to this, that we're still looking at whether or not that could be a contributing factor?
So we haven't closed any of the cases.
Okay.
So all these cases are still open.
Yeah, that's our number one priority is, are they, is that infill lot getting water from an adjacent lot? And that's the case of anywhere, whether it's a new build or not. We want to make sure that they're not taking on anybody else's stormwater. That's, that's really the final outcome of what we're trying to determine or whether it's just their own stormwater that can't drain to the front.
Okay, so we're not saying that because these eighteen properties had, trees removed, that stops the staff's analysis, right?
No, that doesn't stop it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Just to reinforce what you said, I don't think it's determined yet. Some of these properties may have multiple reasons. In other words, that may be one which may reinforce or exacerbate yet another reason. So I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think you must keep them open until you are able to figure out all of the reasons that there may be, that there is an issue.
Right, we, we take quite a few notes on our assessment and make those notations. Because, you know, natural areas is just one of them that Lynn mentioned, but there's other areas where they may add landscaping along the side of the house and that, that drainage feature where it drained to the front now got filled in over time with landscaping they did around the home or they put in a fence or they put in a shed in their backyard that blocked where the water used to drain or how it used to drain. So there's, there's a multitude of items, like you said, could be more than one.
Right, so and not to belabor the conversation, but I have to ask this. So, I mean, let's assume that you identify a couple of different possible reasons. What kind of expertise or certification would it require to prioritize which of the identified issues was the predominant cause? Is that a floodplain management certification? Who, who is qualified to make that determination?
Well, that, that, I mean, some of these lots were built in the eighties. So one, we don't know exactly what was built when the home was built, you know, forty years ago, thirty years ago. So exactly what changes, you know, the best we can do is look at the original drawings. If we have that information, we look at other permits that were, may have been pulled for work on the property. We can obviously see during the site inspection, you know, where they may have add- We can obviously see during the site inspection, you know, where they may have added landscaping or they may have installed patios or shed or done things on their property that are clearly, you know, an item that may be impacting the drainage pattern. But I don't think, you know, we could, we could make that assessment not having the original base information in as-built survey. Those weren't done back in the day, so we didn't, we don't have one of those to go by. And then, like, we can't do a survey today, look at a survey that was done thirty years ago. We can't do that comparative analysis. We're just making our best judgment on what we see in the field.
So the reason for my question is, you know, we're going to get to a segue here where what the committee that's being formed, the ad hoc committee will, you know, how they will work through this, what sounds to me, right now at least, as almost an engineering project, but that was the reason for my question.
We identified some potential solutions in the back. Every case is going to be different, but we've identified some potential solutions. You know, Lynn already indicated, you know, changing your downspout. You know, some people are draining downspouts into, you know, a landscape curb around their home that had a concrete curb, you know, edging and it was just holding water like a pool because the water couldn't get out of that landscape bed. So things like that were, we've already talked with residents about a few potential solutions, but yeah, that committee is exactly who we're looking for, you know, that ad hoc committee and we'll get to that further.
And just one question, real quick. Categorically, these seem to be getting hard and overlapping on where specifically to put them in which category. So these infill lots, are these also categorized as having water standing in their lawn? This is, you know, a concern related to unusual grading or citizen's own lot from nearby future. Does this, does one of these particular cases, will this also show up in another category? Or have you itemized these to only appear in one category, is my question?
We've currently itemized them only to appear in one category just so that we can categorize all hundred-and-seventy-four cases.
Understood, I just wanted for, conceptually, okay, thank you.
So water enters a structure. This is one where it's not, it's not the house that the water enters, but it's entering a shed, it's impacting a patio, pool enclosure, or other structure. And these cases were categorized a bit differently than water in the home because most flood insurance providers will only cover water in the living quarters of the home. So therefore, we put them in a separate category. And currently, there were seventeen cases that we visited that we documented that there was, they experienced water either in the shed, the pool area, or some other structure on their property, not necessarily inside the home. So when we, when we conducted our case, we didn't go inside the homes to verify water. We took the residents at their word that they've had water inside their homes. So there were four reported cases of water actually entering the living structure. The water seems to be entering where the concrete slab and the walls meet. That seems to be where it's at. So the water is getting high enough around the home to literally get into the home between the floor and the walls. I didn't hear any cases, not saying there aren't some out there, but I didn't hear any cases that water literally came in through the threshold of the door or other area of the house. One home that we visited stated that it happened during Hurricane Ian. They went through their insurance company for repairs. They did have flood insurance. The insurance company did take care of their repairs. That particular home did some mitigation on their own before we visited the site. They had actually installed an underground drainage system so that their gutters went to the front of their property. They put in a French drain system. They chipped away at the stucco at the base of the home. They waterproofed the base of the home and then, of course, reapplied the stucco. Just one case out there. I had not heard of many others out there that had gone through that level of repair, but just to give you an idea of what we saw out there. There are, again, there are still twenty-five cases that are designated as other out there and those cases are, again, the sites that we have either scheduled to visit or we're trying to contact the resident. We have not closed the door on taking more cases in, so we do still receive cases on a regular basis.
Lynn, I'm sorry, before you get into the technical manual, can I just ask you a few questions about some of the Daddy just went over? First of all, for the task force, do we have anybody specifically on the task force that, and I know we're still, hopefully towards the tail end, but still in an information gathering phase, but do we have anybody currently dedicated to enforcing our codes if we go out to a property and we see that the new build is in fact not retaining its own runoff? Do we have anybody dedicated to the task force specifically for those enforcement purposes?
So as Carl had mentioned, when we, when the task force needs to bring someone in from another department, we certainly do that.
Okay.
So we have reached out to code enforcement. We've had conversations with code enforcement. We've worked through the building officials. So we have worked with the other departments for code violations.
For consistency purposes, I would ask that we possibly look at adding somebody that is dedicated to this because what I would hate to see is that you reach out to code enforcement and we have one inspector that goes out and determines one thing and then another inspector that goes out and determines another. So for transparency and consistency, I think that that would probably be a good idea and would show a dedication to really making sure we're enforcing equally across the board. And I saw Barbara start to walk up. I don't know, I don't know, Barbara, if you wanted to add anything, but that's just a suggestion from the outside.
Barbara Grossman, Code Enforcement Manager. Right now, as it stands, we work with stormwater. We won't make any decisions as far as stormwater goes. Once they've done their evaluation with their task force and they've come up with their conclusion, then that's when code enforcement would get involved. So it wouldn't be because I have ten officers, ten different zones. That's not our forte. So of course, we wait until we have a final evaluation from the stormwater department. Once they give us a directive and the way that we need to go, then we would go to the code to be able to write and explain to them what needed to be done. And at that time, we'd also be leaving the information to stormwater so that they can make, you know, contact with them so that they could discuss the situation further. Code Enforcement Division is not stormwater, so we're not going to give them any answers. We're going to give them to the right department.
What do you mean, you're not going to give them any answer? Who do you mean them when you say?
The homeowner of the property.
Okay.
So when we go out there, if, for instance, they're ponding, in Section twenty-four, it distinctly says that you can't pond onto the adjacent lot. So if they're ponding onto the adjacent lot, normally the call is, if it does come through code enforcement, we work with stormwater for them to go out and do the inspection. Once they've done the inspection and a determination has been made, then the case is either issued a notice of violation or they've come up with a, you know, solution to the situation. And then, of course, the other side of the story is, is if they change their elevation for some reason, let's not say the twenty-foot, let's just say that they've done something and they've changed the elevation and the water is no running, no more running to the front, there's also an ordinance for your maintenance of your property. So if you're not having the water run to the front of the property, then that could be another issue. But again, it's stormwater doing all of the, you know, inspections on those cases. If we get something, we've had meetings with stormwater, we will go into Palm Coast Connect and we will give it to stormwater. Stormwater will inspect the situation. If it's something that needs to come back to code enforcement, then code enforcement would start the case of notice of violation with the property owner.
Got it. So they make the determination as to whether or not there's a violation of the actual code and then you all, you all take the steps to enforce it with the builder, homeowner, whomever it is?
Yes, we're the process, they're the inspectors. So once they've inspected it and because that's their domain, then we would be the process and we would bring them in to code board if we had to and they would give their evidence and their testimony concerning what the violation is on the property.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then my last question before we get into the technical manual is, I don't want to minimize the importance of addressing properties where there's ponding in the yard because obviously it could still affect the foundation, the driveway. I mean, you have prolonged ponding, it can still affect the actual structure. But for those where we're seeing water intruding in actual structures already, whether that's pool, enclosure, patio, shed, or unfortunately in a few of these, the actual house itself, are we prioritizing those in any way or are we still, have we not gotten that far yet?
So they are high priority on our side, but we do not have resolution at this particular point.
Okay.
We do, if it is tied to a new build, yes, we are definitely making sure, I mean, that's with all of them. If an adjacent property is dumping stormwater into them, yes, we're trying to resolve those issues either with the contractor if it's still in the construction or with the existing homeowner if it's one that's already, you know, occupied.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next we go into the technical manual updates. We have made revisions to the technical manual. We have had meetings with various builders throughout our community. The information has been disseminated to them both through CD Plus for all those that gather permits, as well as through HBO and other relevant parties. Our own inspectors are making sure that builders, when they go out and do an inspection, are fully aware of the updates to the technical manual. Again, just to recap, the, some of the updates include that the flatwork, in other words, sidewalks, housekeeping pads for air conditioners, things of that nature, they cannot impact the drainage flow. Peptanks cannot impede the drainage conveyance. They have to take that into consideration when they, when they provide us their final survey. The front elevations have to match the edge of the pavement now instead of the crown of the road, which has helped us reduce some of the finished floor elevations in many of the new homes that are about to start construction. Again, per the building code, the finished floor elevation cannot be less than twelve inches above the crown of the road. If you recall earlier in our presentation, we had said that ITT had designed Palm Coast as the roads being part of the conveyance system. So in order to protect homes, we have to make sure that those homes are at least twelve inches above the crown of the road. The finished floor needs to be at, we wrote in the technical manual that the finished floor shall be at the lowest elevation necessary to obtain stormwater conveyance, but no higher than twenty-two inches above the crown of the road unless specifically approved by the city stormwater engineer. And we've had a lot of questions, why? The reason why there may be some that are higher than twenty-two inches is some of our neighborhoods, the natural ground, the natural topography of that neighborhood is more than twenty-two inches above the crown of the road. So those are ones that will go through a special extra review by the city engineer. Finished floors shall be no more than ten inches, different than the lowest adjacent home, adjacent being to the left or to the right. The ones that are behind may be more than ten inches because the elevation of the roads are different from block to block and that we have seen time and time again throughout the city. So we are looking at some more revisions to the technical manual, but it won't be the area surrounding finished floor or grading.
I have a quick question on the, on two of these. So on two of these, when you're talking about the finished floor elevation, you have this criteria, but then it says unless specifically reviewed and approved by city engineer for two of these. So on, underneath paragraph three, there's three little bullet points there and there's three notes. For two of them, the engineer has the ability to go in and provide for an exception. And my question is, what's the discretion there and will there be any criteria in order to meet that exception? Because as it stands right now, it doesn't seem that there is.
So the criteria would be, and that would go through Carmelo's department as a professional engineer. So the criteria would be, like I said, if the topography of the surrounding neighborhood is already more than twelve inches above the crown of the road or twenty inches above the crown of the road. We have quite a few areas where I can think of, over in the F section, there's quite a few areas where they're two, three feet, just the general topography of the vacant ground is two or three feet above the crown of the road. So that would be an exception. So they would need to justify to us as to why they need to go any higher and that would be one of those criteria.
So, and I appreciate that. I think my concern, well, I can tell you, my concern is that, you know, as we sit here right now, this is all fresh, right? We're all here, we're listening to you, we know that you just, we know what you just said. But in the future, unless it's codified, how is it that future engineers, future builders, future, I mean, what do they have to rely on to know that that is the criteria they're dealing with? So as you all look to continue to update the technical manual, I would suggest and hope that that is something that is specified and actually codified in this manual so that we're all on the same page. And, you know, ten years from now, we don't have a resident saying, I was at that meeting and this was supposed to be the criteria and then we're going back and looking at meeting minutes.
Can I suggest that this could become a scope of the ad hoc committee to make sure that their recommendation is to challenge the city with an ongoing update of those specifications?
Well, I don't think that's really necessary. I mean, if we have an engineer that says, that's as we're sitting here today, saying this would be a ground.
Ten years down the road, it may have changed.
Well, that hot committee isn't going to be here ten down the road, ten years down the road. My, all my suggestion is, Mayor, is she clearly has what would be considered an exception and working with our engineer, come up with what those specific exceptions would be and then codify them in the manual.
But your question was about discretion, which means that it's somewhat subjective and forecasting what might be.
Right, it is, as it's written right now, it's subjective. If they, between their department now, as they're working on this, know these would be the grounds for the exceptions, it takes away that subjectivity in the future and makes it objective per the manual. That's all I'm asking for.
I would put it to the engineers, is there such a thing as an equation that never changes?
Well, can I real, chime in real quick? I think also part of this is the transparency as well, the fact that
Right.
we have, you know, the ability for this little bit of leeway, you know, for discretion with engineers, the fact that we are calling for additional, you know, signs of discrepancy in this process to make sure that, you know, these items that we're talking about today, the enumerated conditions for discretion, if in the future, ten years from now, we're not, we're all not here, someone else is running the show, the fact that we're able to actually still have insight into the discretion that's being applied here, could you just speak a little bit of that in addition to what you were going to say?
Yeah, just, excuse me. And just for reference, just what we're talking about is mostly one-offs, right? Since we've started doing this more thorough review, there hasn't been one exception done. It hasn't come up, right? Our main reviewers are instructed, this is a criteria, if they don't meet it, turn it back. That's it. Where something could come up that may require an exception would be if there is a home and its two adjacent lots are three foot higher than the road. We can't by any reasonable standard say, no, you have to be twenty-two inches higher than, you know, they'll be in the hole. But those are the more typical exceptions. If it's impossible for them to create a drainage design that works and fits, and I guess we could come up with some sort of more spot that language, but it'll be, there are numerous cases also that could arise, right? We may be getting too much in the weeds and we'll have to write a whole page or two pages in the land development code or the technical manual just to address some one-offs.
Well, I'm just asking that you all analyze it as you're looking further at the technical manual, again, to provide for transparency and to provide for consistency.
And the other potential one-off, you know, could be the floodplain because there are specific requirements where you have to build so many inches or foot or whatever it is above the floodplain if your home is in a floodplain. So those could override this criteria as well. So we can list a couple items in there to help clarify some of those potential cases.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Is there more to your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Please.
So the next thing we wanted to discuss are the codes and ordinances. First is the land development code. We've had a lot of conversation about the gutter requirement. Just to let you know that if we do need to, those items that we need to change in the land development code, those modifications will require approval by the planning board, then two readings by city councils, public meetings. So we're estimating that any modifications that we need to make to the LDC could take about six to eight months. So just to let you know, we are still evaluating some of those items. Those would include the gutters. Staff has spoken to Flagler Beach on their regulation on gutters. We have, we just recently made contact with them. We've been reviewing their documentation. However, our building official is still researching and reaching out to the state regulators just to make sure that we're not going to be in violation of the state building code. It says that the city is, we would require, it's possible we would require an is, we would require, it's possible we would require an amendment to our building code in order to require gutters on homes, as brought up by a couple of the folks that got up and spoke when we talked about it last time. They said, "It's kind of like a fire hose going on to someone else's lot." So we want to make sure that we do our due diligence, and that we're not creating a problem for someone else by requiring gutters on every home. And how does that look? And under what circumstances? So there's a lot of things that we're taking a look at. Again, if we do require gutters, we need to look at the wording about where the gutter would discharge, just to ensure that it doesn't impact someone else.
Quick question on the gutters. Would it make the most sense to have those gutters drain into the swales?
So there are a lot of homes that have their gutters already plumbed to pop off just before the swell, not necessarily into the swell,
Or the swell, or whatever.
But just on the edge of the swell. And a lot of the homes that we've visited have pipes that go underground from their gutters to the swales.
I have it in my home. Works really well. It's a suggestion that we might add that to the gutter thing.
So the next thing we looked at, or that we've had conversations at the dais about, is erosion control. Our research reveals that we can require erosion control on new home construction, but the code states that it's as required. So we talked to the state, and the state of Florida mandates erosion control on lots over one acre, but for lots under one acre, they only require that water quality be protected. So I've talked with Patrick from the building department. We believe that we can change some of the language in both the land development code and our technical manual to include requirements for erosion control. We're still having internal discussions as to how far that erosion control goes. We'll need to identify what type of erosion control we'll approve. So that will be included in the updated and clarified in the next version of our technical manual.
And when you say erosion control, you're talking about things like this silt fencing and stuff like that?
So there's new technologies out there that are over and above silt fencing, but silt fencing is one form of erosion control. So then the next thing that we've talked about is certification on a drainage plan. And we did get some information. The building official, Patrick, has been excellent in doing some research on this. He's provided us some information on the city of West Lake in Florida. They require a drainage certificate of compliance, but it only states that the lot drainage has been constructed in accordance with the approved drainage plan for a subdivision. Doesn't necessarily spell out individual lots, but I suspect that they have been using it for individual lots, and it's signed off by either the surveyor or the builder. We've also found other places outside of Florida that do have requirements, and they do require a professional engineer that signs the document, but none that require a professional engineer in the state of Florida. Some of the problems that we think we're going to encounter requiring a professional engineer is that most of the homes built in Palm Coast are spec homes. In other words, they're already designed, they build the same floor plan over and over and over again. So they don't require an engineer's stamp for the actual design. So they don't have a civil or structural engineer on every one. They get the engineering documentation for trusses in certain portions, but not necessarily for the site plan. So our concern is that professional engineers may not be willing to sign a document for a project that they didn't design or oversee throughout the entire construction process. So currently, the final survey is signed by a professional licensed surveyor. We're researching that item further. Maybe we can have the certificate signed by the surveyor instead. For areas that are in a flood zone, the state requires an elevation certificate. And that elevation certificate can be signed and sealed by either the land surveyor, engineer, or architect that's licensed by the staff. So we're thinking that might be one of the avenues that we'll research. Again, that certification would require us to do some modifications to land development, possibly land development code, but definitely technical manual. So that'll come back to you for review. Some of the other code of ordinances that we've talked about are, of course, the lot grading. I think Barbara did a great job reviewing that, so I don't want to continue taking time over that.
So just a question. At some point in time, would it be your intention to speak to the property appraiser? And the reason I ask is that some of the items that I see here could affect the cost, or the expense related to a property, and his just value could then be affected. So it's just, I would think a part of the discussion going forward to make sure that we understand those repercussions as well, if trying to do the right thing also may, again, increase the just value of properties, which ultimately would increase the cost of homes, I would think.
Good point, and we will check with him.
Thank you.
I do know that the gutters, of course, would be passed on to the new homeowner. The certificate of the drainage plan may wind up with a cost to the potential homebuyer. So all those costs may impact that just value.
You know, they may be minimal. I just don't know. That would be better judged by the property appraiser. So your ask of city council today is to comment on the formation of the citizen, of the ad hoc committee to, do we have a name for the committee?
Well, we just called it a citizens advisory committee when we passed the motion.
I don't know if we already have one of those, but we might have to...
Or may have to add a...
Add something.
Something to it, but that's...
So is that your ask of us today, to give you instructions on moving forward to create, to convene, to provide a suggested structure for that committee?
Yeah, correct. We have prepared a draft resolution, and the committees, we're going to, Lynn will go through the formation of the committee, and we'd be looking for feedback from council on specific items. What are the goals of the committee? How many members the committee is going to be? What type of members are there going to be? Are you seeking for, how long the committee is going to be in duration? Lynn will cover many items that we're going to look for feedback on, so we can finalize and formalize the resolution and bring it back to you for adoption.
So are we, so are we there now?
We're there now. We've got some couple slides that we'll go through on, and we'd be looking for feedback.
I didn't mean to get ahead. Go ahead. Sorry.
So Carl, or Lynn, or maybe even Lauren, I just had a couple questions. I read through your application, and I just want to just clarify a couple of things. I noticed one of the things we're going to do is run a probably light background check on anyone on the committee. I assume that's standard for any committee we put together, code enforcement, whatever. But there was also something about a financial disclosure. Does the state require any financial disclosures from people, citizens on these committees?
I would probably defer to either the city clerk or the city attorney
Yeah.
for that.
Hold on.
We just utilize the same form that we have utilized for every committee the city has put together.
And the reason I ask that, all of us are now going to be required to do this more extensive financial disclosure. I know on the county level, since I'm running for a position, we already are required to do that at a certain point. But I don't want to discourage anyone from applying, any citizen, just by us stating you may have to do a financial disclosure.
Let's ask the clerk.
Yeah, I want to know if they have to do one.
Do you know the answer?
Yes, so it is a standard for all board members. They will complete the Form 1 statement of financial interests as required by the state, and elected officials, including yourselves, are going to the Form 6 for the next...
So they would be doing the lighter form that we used to do,
That's right.
which is just a percentage of, pretty much, just not a lot of information.
And would also be subject to the sunshine laws of the state of Florida.
Well, that was my second question, since they're not elected officials, when I understand subject to the sunshine law and the fact that they probably need to meet in the sunshine?
Yes.
But does anything preclude them from having conversations
Yes.
with each other?
Yes, because they're making recommendations to the city council, which then would be voted on. So it's standard, it's state of Florida, it's not us.
That's what I was asking, is it standard, or is it something we're opposing?
I'll let the attorney answer.
Yes, it is going to be the standard applicable sunshine laws, public records laws, everything that will be required of this committee.
So I assume that before the committee even meets, once they're selected, you or an attorney would meet with them and explain what that is. Can you do that in a group function?
I don't know that that's typically done beforehand, before a committee.
Usually the training happens at the first meeting.
Right.
And that can be done at business meetings.
But I know when we go through it, we do it individually, but I assume we can do a group thing, so we can get through it.
They could do it as a group. I've been through that process as a group, yeah.
Okay, I've got other questions, but go ahead. Thank you.
So according, we went through, and we looked at city ordinances. We have a brochure out there. The city has a brochure available on our website that talks about volunteer boards and committees. So we use that as some of the guideline. We also took input from previous city council meetings on what you were looking for in this committee. So we're providing some recommendations. We're looking for your input as to what you would like to see on this committee, so that we can finalize the resolution, because the committee has to be, requires a resolution approved by city council. So that's our first order of business. And in order to finalize that resolution, we need to have clear and specific goals for the committee. So some of the things that staff was thinking about, the task force got together and said, "Okay, what kind of things would we like to see from this committee?" And these are some of the goals that we thought would be good for the committee to do. And that's to review information from technical experts. So they're going to be looking at all different types of information. It might be from engineers, it might be from just research they do. To address drainage issues related to the existing lots, this is the infill lots, which to us is the primary focus of the committee that we heard from city council that you wanted. To research potential solutions to those identified issues. So we would provide them access to all of our case information. We'd provide them access to all the photos, all the documentation that we've pulled together from each of the site visits, so that they could look at some potential resolutions, do some research on their own for other resolutions, identify potential funding sources for resolutions, whether that is city-funded, or some grants, or other avenues of funding sources for individual homeowners, and to provide written and oral reports to the citizens, as well as city council, of their findings.
I would like to add one other thing to this list, and maybe it's part of the review information, but they should be free to visit any homes they deem necessary, to see for their own eyes what the situation is.
Certainly, with the homeowner's permission.
Well, right, exactly. Yeah, I'm sure the homeowners will be happy to invite them out if they think it's going to help them. But I think having the eyes on this, going out there, seeing...
I only want to ask, I don't want to put any of the committee members in harm's way either. I don't want to subject them to anything, so...
If they get a request while they're meeting in the sunshine, "Please come see my home. It's a unique situation. I know I've been out to more homes than I can even count."
They could voluntarily participate. Okay, just, I just want to make sure that they're well protected, okay?
And again, when we go out and meet, we generally go two people, for the homeowner's protection, as well as the staff's protection.
Sure.
So, and we make it very clear, we don't enter the residents' homes. We don't go inside the homes at all. We simply go around the exterior of the property, and only with the homeowner's present.
Absolutely.
Now, again, with, you brought it up, Vice Mayor, so with a voluntary site visit, I assume there would need to be some kind of a standard reporting, report that they would then bring back to their...
I would assume they may even just come back with some pictures they took and a verbal report of the residents.
Well, I don't know, so I don't know if that needs to be formalized. Maybe the committee would be best to decide how they're going to operate. I don't want to handcuff the committee. I'd like the committee, quite frankly, to take these rather broad concepts and develop their own strategy. I think that's the purpose of having a citizens ad hoc committee, so that they can decide, you know, as residents of the community, the best way they could advise city council, I think.
I think, we don't want to tie their hands. They have to have the freedom, once they're formed, once they elect a chairperson, to proceed on their own.
So are there any big ones that are not good?
Yeah, I went through it the other night. I know you guys were recommending five. I would like to up that to nine members. I think we need to broaden it just a little bit, because we're talking about possibly people from the Home Builders Association, or people with engineering degrees, and also concerned citizens, and citizens that have been affected by this. I think we need everybody's input, so I think nine would be a much better number.
I think that's on our next slide. So are you guys good with the goals? Any other changes to the goals?
Yeah, the goals are good, yeah.
Sorry, Carl, go ahead. I'm sorry. Continue.
So we'll move on to the next topic and talk about meetings, as an item for any input on meetings.
So we're talking about, at least in the beginning, monthly meetings, and then the members would determine how often they need to meet.
I think letting them decide how often they need to meet is the best approach. We get them launched, get them set, and then let them proceed on their own.
We also...
And I hear, I see you have five here. Again, I would like, with consensus, I would like to up that to nine. Is everyone good with nine members?
Well, so...
We're talking about a consensus to up to five to nine members. You're good?
I mean, you got to get that many volunteers, so...
That was going to be my thing, is that you have to get that many volunteers.
I have no objection. I'm sorry, I was asking, I was asking council, at the same time, I apologize for being rude, I was asking council if we needed to have council attend these meetings. I don't think council's ready to give us the opinion on that yet.
Yeah.
Just to help them work in a correct way, so there's no violation.
Or maybe a periodic visit, who knows?
No, I'd like council to make a suggestion. Maybe not now, but when you're ready.
Going back to the number, maybe this is more a question for legal. Could we put a minimum of five members and up to nine members in the resolution? So if we get a lot of applicants, they could have nine members.
I think we were reaching a consensus of trying to start off with nine members.
Well, the other issue...
Well, if you can't get nine, it's a problem. So how about, he's suggesting a range, so what's, our goal would be to get to nine.
Okay, if that's our goal, yeah. Again, I think we'll get nine people.
I hope so. But also, it becomes an issue when you start trying to form a quorum, too.
Right.
I know a lot of these ad hoc committees, it's, you know, during the day, it's times when a lot of people are busy, so it becomes an issue trying to get a quorum.
Have a quorum, remember, requirement.
Yeah. Well, anyone volunteering would have to agree to our original meeting dates, or, you know, realizing the time that they're going to have to commit to this. I mean, let's see how the process goes and see how many we can get. Ideally, I would think nine would be great, but if we can't get nine, we can't get nine, right? So...
So then for those extra four, so are we then saying that each council member will appoint one, and then we'll vote on the extras? Because that's unclear as well.
I like the...
Well, this is specifically saying one staff member appointed. It says somewhere, and I think it's the actual resolution. No, 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 I agree with you. I don't think, I think there should be consensus for everybody.
But let's say 12 people showed up, and we decided on the number nine, just as an example. We'd have each person come in front of us, we would have, you know, ask questions, and then we would vote, and, you know, the top nine people would be the ones we put in. I mean, this is a selection by us.
We have three other ad hoc committees, so I keep following those questions.
Yeah. And I would also suggest, we also discussed not just a staff member, but a council member, too, being part of this committee, and we would be there to advise the committee. We're not voting members, neither is the staff member.
So let's just get, I need a legal opinion on that. So you have a liaison, which I think is okay, but you got to be careful about what they're, because you're going to be participating in a future vote that you're going to make.
Well, I think that maybe perhaps, obviously, a liaison from staff or the council would not have any voting privileges on that committee or anything. They're just there to listen.
But an elected would have a voting capacity here.
So maybe we rotate council members through each meeting? I don't know, I'm...
I think you're creating what exactly we're trying to stay away from.
Yes.
Right? So we're creating the advisory committee, so that they, as a board, can make decisions and then recommend us, with us being hands off.
They, we'd stay with them when they come forward, but I would be very uncomfortable being a part of that discussion.
When we approved this, we had been including a council person, so I just want to clarify whether we do or don't, which is fine. I also would, though, on appointing a member of our staff by the city manager, I'd like that appointment to have to be approved by this council, to make sure that we all agree on the right person.
I think ad hoc committee, that's part of our regular procedure anyway, so that's fine.
To have the council approve the staff member from, that's appointed by city manager.
Correct.
Okay.
Everybody, is everybody on board? Any questions? Councilwoman? Good. Okay. I'm sorry, I keep interrupting. Go ahead. Is there, are there any other... Is there, are there any other organizational bullets that you think are important that we discuss now?
So there are a couple of other items for consideration, sorry.
I just do want to be clear as to the amount, the number of people that are officially being appointed to the board then. So is everybody, are all council members?
I think we were agreeing that if we could get nine people, that would be an ideal number. We'll have to see how many people...
So what's your quorum?
Five to nine people.
So five to nine. No less than, no less than nine, no more than, no less than five, no more than nine.
Right. And if a couple additional members to fill in, if someone's not there, like we do...
So those would be alternates?
Alternates.
I think two alternates is probably safe.
Okay, so along with two alternates that would rotate in, if an appointed committee member was unavailable on a meeting-to-meeting basis? So they would have to actually attend every meeting in order to be prepared for the next meeting?
Yeah, and that works well with our planning board too, correct?
So we'd be seeking at least 11 names at a minimum? So, you know, that may assign one or more additional members, so I don't even know, we may want to up that number to probably two or three or something, just so we get enough names to begin with.
Yeah, and again, I want to be clear, because I read that form, I know we're looking for some folks that may be retired that have expertise in this sort of area, but we also want to make every citizen who's concerned know that they're welcome to apply, just like anyone who is a victim or anyone who's in our business community, building community. I want to be very broad on the range of people we're looking at here. I think that's what's going to make this work.
I don't disagree. The only, I would ask for just one more legal opinion, which I don't need right now. So if there is a member of the committee that has been personally affected, how does that, does that work legally? Are we okay with that? I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure that I'm not crossing a legal boundary here.
I think it's one of the things we promised the community when we decided on this.
I think those will also be people who drive interest to the group, honestly.
I think so too. I mean, but there's, they need to have some kind of guidance as far as their decisions can't be made based upon their personal circumstance.
Like our quasi judicial, so they can't, they would need to be making their recommendations within the committee based on the evidence presented and not solely on...
Their situation.
Their personal gain, I think is what...
Oh, personal gain, yeah, okay.
And they would have to have the interest of the whole community...
Because I want the committee to be respected by the, the committee to, I want the committee to be well-respected by the community, because this will be a true voice of the community, so I don't want anybody to point a finger and say that the committee was moved this way or that way for a personal benefit, is that what you're kind of saying?
And again, anybody from our building, from our building community is in that same situation. So I think we're looking for people that really care about helping our community and solving this problem. And I don't think if we don't have representation from every side, I think people could say, well, they didn't care about people that were affected, or they only care about the builders, or they only care about this. So I think a broad range is going to be good.
Well, that'll, you know, we'll get a chance to talk, yes, good.
And in these, with these members, are we also appointing a chairperson?
So I was going to suggest that the committee itself would organize itself.
Yes.
I've seen that more often than not, and I would prefer not to influence...
I shouldn't have worded that way. I didn't mean us, I meant like, because I didn't see it in the resolution, that a chairperson will be appointed.
If at their first meeting, in addition to the sunshine training, they would appoint their own, I don't want to say board, because that would be incorrect, but their own chair at least, and then they would need a vice chair as well.
And vice chair.
Right. And then they'll probably need a secretary to record their own minutes so that they are consistent and on the record.
Well, is a clerk at these?
Isn't that something that the, is that not something that the city is going to be doing? And I also need to know in preparing the resolution.
It's a question, is that a task that we want to now assign to the city clerk? Because I don't want the public to challenge us with using city staff to influence or to organize this committee.
How does a planning board do it?
Well, the planning board, the beautification committee might be a better example. I believe they have the city clerk present.
They have a staff, they have a staff-appointed clerk. It's not myself, but there is a staff member from planning who serves as the clerk.
Well, if the president is there, that's fine, good.
So we do have two other areas that we need clarification on.
I'll let you get finished, I promise. Go ahead.
This is all the information that we need in order to finalize the committee. Another consideration is whether or not they have the authority to spend money. So I, the staff recommends that they would not have the authority to spend money and that not be included in their powers, but that they could recommend expenditures in the future that would have to be budgeted by the appropriate department and approved by city council.
And I just want to clarify, the staff person that we and the city manager assign is there to assist them as they look for grants or possible other things. It's just to offer assistance, not to, you know, not to push them in a direction, just to offer some guidance.
So expenditures would be at the, at the pleasure and the recommendation of the ad hoc committee to come to city council and recommend that if some expense or expenditure was thought to be, you know, supported by that committee, they would come forward and say, hey, we would like you to budget or spend or whatever it is.
I think that with, when we're talking about funding or spending, I just want to point out that as we have in the past, well, first, this is an advisory committee, so I want to ensure that they would be coming for any kind of permission in regards to spending any kind of money, that that absolutely be authorized by the city council. But also, as has been discussed in the past and has been the advice of our office, I know, you know, we have to recall also that public funding isn't to be spent on private...
Well, that's your advice. That is your advice.
Right.
It could be part of the training that they receive in addition to the sunshine training.
But that is just advice from your law firm. That's all that is.
That is the legal advice that we've provided to this council.
We can move in any direction we choose if that's necessary. I'm not quite sure what they're going to be spending.
But yeah.
Understood.
We're talking about formation of the committee and what they're able to do, yeah.
Yeah, and I would also think one other thing is that anytime that committee feels the necessity to come in front of council, we make that a priority to get that, them in front of us as quickly as possible.
We do have a requirement, if should it result in a vote, that there be a notice period, just...
Okay, well, a brief notice period, I would hope.
Well, I don't know, I think that's set by law. We have to follow, we have to follow the city meeting procedures of public notification, that's all.
So if the committee felt it was necessary to get in front of us about whatever issue for whatever reason...
It could reach out to the city manager who could advise us at the very next workshop or meeting.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. I don't want them waiting two months to come...
No, no, I think that's the workaround, but we can't, we can't disregard the public notice legal requirements that we have, but this gets you to the same finish line.
Okay, so you'll get us that, so we know what...
I have a quick question.
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
Being that anyone could be considered for this position, and anyone from the community, is there any, and I didn't get to read over the application, but is there any vetting process necessary in order for someone to be considered for this board?
Yes, there is a vetting process.
Rather similar to the other committees, so like, not that different from the county's Affordable Housing Committee and some of the others.
Okay, yeah, I asked because I didn't read the application.
Light, but there is, it is in place, yes.
Okay.
And since you're on that subject, your background checked in, everything, what would exclude somebody from being on this committee?
Probably outstanding warrants. I think you have to go get a, you probably have to go, well, if it's like the beautification...
Their picture in the post office, Nick, most wanted.
Or on the side of a mail, yeah, exactly. I would say you have to go get your fingers fingerprinted at the sheriff's office or look come to you, right? And then it's, I don't think there's much more than that. I don't think it's like a LexisNexis background search, so probably just if you would walk into a sheriff's office and get arrested, that's probably what bars you from being on here. But besides that, I think you're okay.
It's a good bar, Nick.
The more complicated part of this, which I think we can handle through the interview process, is if somebody wanted to participate that perhaps, let's say, owned a company that built French drinks, you know, you may have to think about that.
Well, but that's an expertise they bring to the table.
I'm just bringing it up. It's a decision that you will have to face at the time. Okay, and that's just, that's just an example of a possibility, and there probably could be 100 others. I'm sorry, now, I want to let you finish.
One last area that we need to get direction on is termination of the committee. So how long we want this to go? We're assuming because it's an ad hoc committee, it goes until council decides that we have a final report, we have all the information, they present to council, and at that time, council would decide whether or not to dissolve the committee.
I would hope that the time to dissolve the committee would be once we've solved all of these problems and closed all the cases and move forward.
But thinking that there could always be more cases.
It could be.
So what is your thinking? When does this sunset never?
Let the committee go until they're no longer necessary. If another council decides down the road, we've reached that point.
You're building this in probably for, in perpetuity.
Yeah, maybe so.
Because, well, that's, I just want to make sure that we have consensus. Councilwoman, how do you feel about that? It's, because it's a burden, there's, we're adding, you know, there's some staff and there's city council meeting agenda, and I'm not suggesting it's not important or priority, but I don't know the right answer. In other words, do you want to save the sunset? Do we have to identify a sunset upfront?
I don't know, I don't know that we have to give a pinpointed amount of time, however, as it is an ad hoc committee, you know, the purposes for it not to be around forever, of course, but to give you guys the information that you're seeking out. So currently, as written, we have it, shall be dissolved by majority vote of the council. We don't have a timeframe in there, but it's a mechanism.
If you can do that, that's fine. Then as long as it's, you know, a priority, as long as there's a resident in distress, then we can keep it going, okay? Is everybody okay with that? Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, and we can always, if we determine otherwise, we can come with the draft resolution to city council with a suggested timeframe.
How quickly can we have this? This would be an ordinance?
It's a resolution.
How quickly can this resolution be in front of city council?
It's tentatively scheduled for your next business meeting.
Next business meeting, okay. Obviously, we can't do it before then. Excellent, good. And we would vote on it at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that only requires a single presentation, not two reads, right?
No, it's just a resolution.
Good, okay.
Just to touch upon your potential open-ended or timeframe of this committee, you know, some of our committees have terms with term limits and how many terms they can serve. So I don't know if we want to add that language in here that was similar to some of our other boards or committees, knowing that this potentially could go on.
The PLDRB term is how long?
I believe they're four-year terms.
You want to just adopt theirs for the time being? It could be changed, but...
I think it was four-year terms and you can only serve two terms, I think is...
Right, is that acceptable?
About language.
If we haven't solved this problem in eight years, we shouldn't be here.
Work? Okay, that, so we're going to take right from the PLDRB organization?
All right, we'll add that language in as well.
Okay. Does that get you across the, in order for you to draft up what we're looking for prior to the next business meeting, which means it would have to appear on our agenda the Thursday before, whenever that business meeting is, so that we...
It's scheduled for February 20th.
Perfect, very good date. Questions for the members that have, the presenters? I think we've, no? Yes?
No, but I just want to commend you guys. I can tell you've done a lot of research. I mean, we've had you up here for three hours, so, or two hours, I can't count. I do words, not numbers. So thank you for everything that you've done, for the research that you've completed from top to bottom. Really, really appreciate the work you guys continue to do.
So with that, I will open up this agenda item for the public. I think there was a gentleman had asked to make public comment, want to know if our presenters would still be here? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Yes, sir, or ma'am?
Ms. Michael from the W section. Now, you were saying about the swales. I understand with how they're dug out, but the problem is, at least on our block, is if there's an empty lot in between a couple houses, that swale is not dug up. So you have water rushing down, boop, stops at the empty lot, builds up this way, and then you have the water from the other side. I don't know if the people who owned empty lots are not being charged the taxes to do the swale maintenance because they don't get a water bill or something, but that's where most of the trouble's happening. All these empty lots are blocking the flow. Okay, and now you showed a really pretty picture up there of the waterway over there on Pine Lakes and Belter with the little pipe. Well, off to the right where they put that little railing, because a few years ago, that whole area caved in. Well, I've been here a very long time, 28 years, and I drove by last year and I saw that right where it caved in before. It looks like it's caving in, I said it before at the meeting. About eight months later, I saw a couple boulders thrown in there. You drive by there now, the boulders are actually sinking in. We're going to have another caved-in street there. So whatever water's rushing through the pipe, nobody's doing nothing here. You know, I did tell the city multiple times. I hope and I pray that you on this committee get to talk to us residents and don't let there be any kind of fear, and I hope that us residents can hand you something. And then you're saying about your little map you showed? Yes, those streets and the swales are made for, you know, the rain, the extra rainwater. But what you don't see, which you have to go on the website, Flooded and Flagler, there is houses, okay, in residential neighborhoods in the middle where there's, never has any flooding. I've been here, my yard's never flood. I have a food forest in my yard. Everything is demolished. I almost was going to sell my house. All right, my trees are split up the middle because they were holding so much water. Yes, they build next door to me. The people are wonderful, but you can actually look underneath their white fence, and what they did, the ground is swooping back and swooping this way. Now, these are pictures. This house is built on a two-tier.
Ma'am.
It's five feet tall. Now, how is this going to drain from the back to the front? Do you see these pictures? Have you seen them?
Ma'am, I'm going to, ma'am, 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 no, no.
Afraid for them to see the truth?
No, but the procedure, excuse me, the procedure is if you'll share those pictures, excuse me.
Go to Flooded on Flagler, and you will see all the pictures.
If you would, if you would share the pictures with the clerk, the public...
The clerk has them, but nobody gets to see them. We don't see them on the big screen. You have houses that are five feet tall that are at a two-tier.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
My name is...
Excuse me. Go ahead.
My name is Celia Puglisi, and I've been here since 91. There was a great presentation. I appreciate that. But it's like blaming ITT, blaming the storm, blaming the high level of the ocean, has nothing to do with these houses that have flooded, because the only houses we have flooded here in Pankos, it's not even mine, are the ones that they have these higher infills around them. That's the only reason. So the rest of what was presented here is like beating around the bush. Let's don't blame ITT neither, because we have our, our chapter 2415 CC, and I want to read it right now. It says, "The final survey shall be submitted to the city manager or designee no less than two working days prior to the day the request for the inspection is made to the building official. If examination of the final survey and/or physical site examination by the city manager or designee indicates stone water drainage has not been properly provided for, then the owner or contractor shall correct deficiency to provide for proper drainage. Drainage examination shall include movement of stone water into the conveyance system and assurance that stone water runoff on adjacent lots has been mitigated or resolved." This is in our charter. This has not, for some, you know... This has not, for some, you know, whatever imagination of somebody, has not been taken care of. And probably if Barbara would have been, Barbara Grossman would have been inspecting, these things wouldn't have been taking place. So, you know, these owners, as per our charter, are to resolve this, all these flooded homes and yards. The owner of the lot or the developer, as per our charter, and these people have a leg to stand on and we need to support them. I appreciate Mr. Land, Mr. Jonathan Landlord, but when the county gets these federal funds, they go by the millions like they went to A1A to provide for the city of Palm Coast their sewer. They, they don't come to us. They use those millions that Mr. Jonathan Landlord requests for the county, for the county, it's not for us. And this we need, if he can help with anything with FEMA, which I don't think will cover any of these developers' disasters approved here, if he can get some money to help the city, to help our people that are suffering, Mr. Jonathan Law is welcome, but here, the county doesn't have nothing to do with this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, next speaker, please.
Candace Stevens, P section. I don't even know where to start. First of all, to get grants, they look at your income. So, if you make over $30,000 a year, they're not going to give any of us any money because you got to make more than $30,000 a year to live in Palm Coast. You got to make triple that. So, the grants that you're speaking of are income-based. A lot of them are. So, a lot of them will not be available to us. Trees, you keep bringing up trees, how we've changed our yards, our backyards. I haven't changed anything in my backyard. I put my fence exactly where it was, that they tore down when they were developing the house and behind and next to me. I didn't change anything in my yard. My yard's elevation in the left rear corner has been changed because it's been washed out from the developed house behind me, and then the one they developed next to me during all the rainstorms when they were developing, it washed away. It's also higher than mine. Water runs this way, not this way. So, you guys want to use the fact that we may have taken trees out of our yard as an excuse not to pay for it? What about all the hardwood trees you tore out, out of both of the lots next to me? Nobody was worried about the trees then. Why are the developers planting cheap-ass trees back? Softwood trees that don't suck up hardly any water? They should have to plant hardwood trees back, five of them, not this cheap stuff that doesn't last or that falls over when the next rain comes because the roots don't go very deep. The dirt they're using to put back on the lots to build, has anybody looked at the type of dirt that they're using to put back? It's insoluble dirt. So, you got insoluble dirt, no hardwood trees, and you got houses that are 12 to 24 inches higher than the ones around them. Really? Do we have any common sense left anywhere in our city? This is my point the whole time, since October, I've been telling you all these things this whole time. There is no way with all this stuff that they say they're looking at, that they're comparing and comparing and comparing, that the common sense to the whole issue doesn't come about. Water runs downhill. I am now the retention pond for a square block of my neighborhood. So, I install drainage because I don't want any more damage done to my home, so I've already paid for my drainage, yet I still come here, yet I still answer the messages, yet I still answer the phone calls. I'm trying to help everybody else.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Jeremy Davis again. Um, that picture that the lady brought up was actually my home, and she was at my, my home, and that, that's funny, right, Lynn? You were there, and Carl Cote, that's thing you said, no home was above 22 inches. The survey department was there, and that home is four feet above the crown of the road, two-plus feet above my home. Now, let's follow up on that. What are we going to do about it? Nothing, because there's a structure there. I have to suffer for the rest of my life until I decide to sell my home, which I will never do because it's my first home and I used to be homeless, and I will not go back to being homeless, and I will not let you push me around and tolerate this, I'm sorry. Anytime I've done anything wrong, I've been held accountable, just like y'all are asking me to fill out our, our thing for, to go get sheriff thing. I've been to prison. I know what it's like to be behind bars. What you guys don't understand is my determination is far greater than anyone else here. I will hold somebody accountable for the wrongdoing, somebody somewhere along the line, signed off on allowing this to happen. And when you say a topography report, if you come out and look at 62 Paraty, then look at 60 Paraty, built by the same builder, to explain to me how that one is two-and-a-half feet higher than that one as well, explain to me that. Everything y'all are talking about is total BS. Nothing in here makes sense, and like I told you last time, make it make sense and I will stop coming here. But until then, I will be here every day pestering you to make things done right, and I shouldn't have to beg to live my life freely. No one should have to beg for this, not a damn person. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
I don't know if it's afternoon yet, but anyway, Donald, W sections, uh, I have a few, a few points. I probably need a half hour or two, but in regards to the swells, uh, yeah, there's been improvements, especially the main one on, uh, Pine Lakes. Did a lot of work there, and even a few years ago, they tried to do a few things on Woodside Drive, they stopped at the curve around approximately a 50, 50 Woodside Drive. So, you have not cut the grass in the secondary swells, used the weed whack that, oh, I feel last time you did, it was probably 20, 2020, thereabouts, so they're not maintained. The swells need to be re, uh, reformed, uh, and if you had to have Spectrum and the rest of them take the cables out of it, do it. Have them, have, run them on the poles, because they have to be deeper, and you have to have at least a two, three, two, three-degree pitch for, for the water to, uh, to drain. And in regard to what's going on with the drain problems, we caused the problem. We don't know what happened. We don't want to accuse anybody, but the developers have made money. Perhaps you should address them, have them take care of the problem. All these committees are fine and all these presentations are fine, they cost money. Let's just be realistic and simplistic, the problems will be solved. I am one of the ITT years, no, not the, not a developer here, but I do remember in the seventies when they want me to come down and buy land. I, uh, am retired from the avionics and the ACD division, which was the, the money that actually made this town. When ITT gritted out the land, it was probably good for 20,000 houses, and they, they created these wells. These things had to be redone. You have a lot of the, uh, complexes, subdivisions, that we haven't even addressed. So, whatever they designed, it's been overwhelmed. All you had to do is just readjust it. But in terms of these developed personnel and these houses being built higher and making excuses for whatever reason, whatever they have done, they, they have the money, they have to try to help. We were here before any of you. We were here before, we bought these houses and they were structured as such. I'm not going to put, uh, drains and this and that. I have a house that never had water problems. Now I have, depending on how bad the, the rain is, I have a lake, uh, by my, by my fence because of the fact that the, their land is about seven, eight inches higher. So, you know, something has to be done. Let's do it amiably, let's not be high-tech, because as soon as you get, I worked for ITT in, uh, as a, in government contracts. When things don't work, simplify it, simplify it, simplify it.
Thank you, sir. Um, is there another speaker that would like to address this item? Yes, sir.
Ken McDowell, C section. Uh, I want to congratulate all of you on coming up with this ad hoc committee idea because what it will do will be amazing stuff. The bureaucracy will be increased and everybody can talk about stuff more and not take care and fix stuff anymore, okay? Or any faster. So, once again, as I've done in the past, I'm not going to go back to what I spoke about earlier, I have reached out to the city government, to all employees, even you, people up here. If you know something, as in the words of our sheriff, if you know something, see something, you say something, okay? For those city employees that want to take charge and be comfortable, I have an idea, and it's basically become an anonymous whistleblower. Anybody in the city government or anyone that knows something about the crap that goes on behind these portaled walls, they can call the special investigating unit, remain anonymous, you don't have to give up your job. I know the city has a whistleblower program. Anybody that partakes of it will lose their job, probably. Okay, so the sheriff's special investigating unit, they take tips and the numbers, 386-871-1276. You will remain anonymous and you can help everybody in our city by becoming a whistleblower, and you can help yourself too. So, please, all city employees, think about this, come forward, you remain anonymous, and there would not be any retribution towards you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda at this time?
Gary Kuhnus, C section. Two years ago, I had a neighbor put in a new driveway. City engineer came out and insisted they put the drain under the driveway a foot lower than everyone else's. His reasoning for that was, I don't want to hump in the driveway and the water should stay in the swales. Water fills up the end of the cul-de-sac so bad, it floods out the whole section. My driveway, the end has dropped several times, had to repave it several times. He said, "Oh, well, there's holes in your pipe." Well, holes in a pipe in concrete's not going to matter. It's the ground underneath gets so soft from all the water sitting there, it sinks. Then he says, "Well, you got to clean out your own drains." Well, the average person's not going to have to know how to clean out their own driveway drain. Why did we buy all that big equipment to do just that in the city? Those drains mostly are on the city's right-of-way. The city's responsible for cleaning them. My drain is now six inches below the neighbor's drains. The water sits there, goes nowhere. I told him how to fix it. He said, "Well, we can run a pipe from the, here to the canal." I said, "Well, we're going to put more sediment in the canal and make them shallower?" "Oh, no, we clean the drains out once a month where they truck." "Really? How come there are no scratch marks on the drains, the other drains where you pulled the crates off?" No answer. Denise was there, she looked at it. She agreed there was an issue. Has anything been done? Nope. You know, we go through all this process, do this, do that, and nothing happens. Question, Carl, you still on the builders' board?
Mr. Kuhnus, Mr. Kuhnus, you know, please, direct your comments here.
Is Carl still on the builders' board? It would answer a lot of questions. Oh, and some of his stuff is not being done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public want to make a comment at this time?
When I came here last fall and started speaking to you all on the different issues with this city, I had told you at the very end that if you had your Ts crossed and your Is dotted in processes, we all wouldn't be here. That still stands true. So, in today's meeting, I wanted to bring up a couple points after we all just had this little show go on. First of all, I didn't say anything about employees stealing or doing appropriations. I'm talking about staff not doing what they were hired to do that are paid for by tax dollars, because consistently, there's no follow-up again. You submit issues and nothing happens. They might come out, they give you good lip service, but then nothing happens. So, my issue again has been going on for 20 months. Number two, you guys talked about that the accounting department here gets certificates from the state. I've seen that before, that makes absolutely no difference. I'm see, I've seen some of the most corrupt cities and they all had certifications and awards and all that stuff, doesn't matter. This whole presentation today, you're totally leaving out your all's man-made flooding that has happened to this city. Because again, water runs downhill. Got to find my three. As far as trees being removed, doesn't the city approve and require to have a permit to have a tree removed? Same thing with fences? So, I mean, do the departments not talk with each other? Because that's what I see. Nobody's communicating with each other, even though it's 2024 and you've got email, text messaging, all these ways to communicate with each other, but it's not happening. So, I also, just for the flip of amusement, submitted a, um, issue to the code enforcement department about six weeks ago on my issue that's been going on for 20 months. Same thing. I got an email that acknowledged they got it, nobody's ever come out, nobody's done anything. And actually, they didn't even address what I submitted. So, I'm telling you again, your employees do not do their job. So, I don't know if they're not trained well, they're not educated well, or they're being directed to respond in a certain way, because it kind of feels like that, especially when they're paid for with my tax dollars, and nothing's happening. And basically, then the end of this point is with the ad hoc committee that y'all want for the citizens to do. So, then you're asking the residents to do the job to correct what y'all created the problem of. I just don't even get it.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
Steve Hobbs in the Indian Trails. I've been fighting the situation since 2008. Builder put the, went under the new code, a lot foot and a half higher, uh, adjoining my lot. We've put in French drains, we've put in gutters, we've put in downspouts, we've done everything we can to French drains out of our pocket. The builder at the time was told pursuant to the code at the time of the new city code that they had to go ahead and mitigate water from the backyard to the front, not coming into our yard. Well, that didn't happen because the builder went back to Orlando and was no longer building in Palm Coast, so there's nothing they can do to enforce that code. The problem we have here, and since we've got engineers here, just real quickly, a little history lesson, the original thing with ITT, yes, there are 40,000 lots, yes, they all drained, they all worked. All that stopped in 2004 when the city of Palm Coast decided to put barriers next to the existing swales, existing drainage in the rear of the property. Palm Coast, the original, our original code, houses in the center, 12 inches above street level, slopes front from, from the center of the lot to the back, center lot to the front. We had a 10-foot easement, if I remember correctly, in the rear of every property in Palm Coast, and that easements were designed not to have trees cut down, not to be built on, not to have swimming pools put on. And the rear swale is kind of like a mini swale, drains left to right into one of the bigger canals. That's how the original thing was set up. Well, now, I got a house next door to me that the lot is a foot and a half, and I essentially have a foot and a half dam at the edge of my property because all the other lots on my street were built with the ITT code. Shoo, comes the water, here's the city of Palm Coast code, 2004, we don't care anymore. I was told by the city in 2008, if I had deep enough pockets, I could get an attorney and fight them. and fight them. But that was the only recourse that we had at that time. I do appreciate, you guys do the ad hoc committee, and at least getting something moving on this. But when you guys changed, and I say to you guys, the city changed the drainage plan of Palm Coast without making any other ways to move water around here. You've stuck the existing homeowners in a hole, literally a hole. And that's all I got to say, it's, you know, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If there are no other members of the public that would like to comment at this time, all closed public comment. Any comments from city council members? I appreciate your discussion on putting this initiative together as quickly as possible. Obviously, you have heard from the residents that we need to get moving and get solutions as quickly as we possibly can. So any final comments on this topic?
No, just that, I would like to say that the committee was based upon the fact that we listened to the residents and we wanted them to have their voices heard. So giving posterity to the voices of the individuals who are doing, you know, all the advocating and everything, or coming to these meetings, I think that's going to indefinitely give them a voice until the committee is dissolved into whatever year in the future that is. But in the meantime, that is basically, in my view, gives them posterity of their voice. And I'm thankful that some of the residents recognize this, you know, we are trying to do something that I believe the community was trying to, you know, engage us to do. And I think we accomplished that, and I appreciate the staff being very diligent and coming back with us as far as categorizing each of the inquiries. And I'm thankful that you guys can come forward and give us recommendations for, you know, a community-driven committee such as this, and I hope that it's effective. And I hope that the city council, we get feedback on the progress of this ad hoc committee so that we can determine how we can best give it the chance to be successful.
Counselwoman, any comment?
I'd just like to thank the community for continuing to come out with your comp. I think it's really vital that we hear your thoughts and how you feel about everything that's going on in this city. And I just want to say thank you so much. I don't know if my microphone is working. Can you hear me? Okay. I just want to say thank you to the citizens for continuing to come out and voicing your concerns about what's going on in the city. And I'm looking forward to something being done about it. Thank you.
Counselwoman?
Nothing further.
Counselwoman?
I just want to make sure you guys have all the direction you need, you know where to go with this, and I think you do, and I want to appreciate everything you did to get this together quickly, and I hope we can move forward and start solving some of these problems.
Very good, thank you. All right, thank you, Steph. With that, we'll move to what was originally our number one presentation, which will be the sports activity center.
I will open us up. As you recall from your December 12 city council workshop, we gave you a presentation on a sports complex feasibility study. We know that this aligns with your strategic action plan priorities, specifically your pillar in strong resilient economy, and to conduct an analysis of new and untapped revenue sources to lessen the reliance on residential property taxes and relieve the burden on residential homeowners. We have a few slides today that's going to give you some examples of that priority, as well as this aligns in your strategic action plan under pillar, safe and reliable services, priority B2, which is identify local recreation demands to balance the need of regional activity centers. We're excited to introduce Synergy Sports. We met Synergy Sports via our partnership with Jaxx USA. Jaxx USA is Jacksonville's Regional Economic Development Partnership that focuses on helping businesses grow and expand in northeast Florida. And I'm going to let Jason introduce himself and take it away.
Great. Thank you, Lauren. Nice to meet all of you, thanks for having me here today. As Lauren mentioned, my name is Jason Boudry. I own Synergy Sports. We're based out of Charlotte, North Carolina. Primarily, we work with municipalities, cities, counties, and municipal entities, as well as colleges and universities to help them figure out sports. So we were engaged to do a follow-up to the initial feasibility study that was done and presented back in December, and to take a little bit deeper dive into what this could mean for Palm Coast, and put some actual numbers and ideas to the original conceptual plans that were created. So, you know, a couple of things, as you can see, that we were able to do, you know, this aligns with the Parks Master Plan for sports and recreation. We noted that the initial study was done well. It outlined some of the basic needs for the city and for the region. We noted our revisions to city staff. We took a look at the site plan that was conceptually designed onto a hypothetical piece of land, and put it onto more of a realistic parcel based on the western expansion. We validated the cost estimate that was prepared originally. And then we put together a more detailed financial operating model for the complex that is based on actual performance of actual performing facilities. And so we put real-life numbers to these, rather than just make assumptions or based on assessments or hypotheticals, because that's all that the other group had to work with. And then more importantly, we explored a couple of different funding options. You know, one of the things that we hear a lot when we talk with and work with municipalities is, we love this idea, we love the idea of sports and recreation, fields, courts, but how are we going to pay for it? How, you know, this is going to cost $90 million. How do we do that? And so we looked at a couple of funding options, and then we put together a development and development path forward on how to see this through from where we are now to having a soccer ball or a football kicked on a field. And so that's kind of the high level of what we did. Just to recap, for those of you that may have forgotten, what the initial study recommended was 20 flat fields, 16 of those being turf, four of them being grass, an outdoor stadium, an indoor facility that was around 112,000 square feet, support spaces and buildings, things like, you know, field houses and storage sheds. And all of that would sit on about 180 acres. And so the initial cost estimate was $93 million for the totality of the project. Year-one economic impact was projected to be around $30 million. It was projected to generate about 75,000 room nights, and had a projected loss in year one of around $500,000 and about $110,000 in year two. So those were the baseline assumptions that we took a look at, and through our analysis, we came back with the follow-up. The field recommendation is appropriate, right, based on what the study, you know, suggested. The outdoor stadium is appropriate for what the concept is. The indoor facility may be somewhat inadequate for hosting more of a regional sports offering. You may want to add leasable spaces, community spaces, because as we looked at this, you know, the first thing we kind of thought about was, well, why Palm Coast? You know, and so that was really, really interesting. As we looked at the region, as we looked at the local community, Palm Coast is a great place to put something like this. You know, there's, it's not a major market. When we talk to a lot of organizers, the folks that organize tournaments and meets and things like that, you know, one of the things that we hear a lot is, man, we do not want to go to Atlanta again. We don't want to go to Orlando again. We don't want to go to Tampa again. Those are all great markets for sports, but they're crowded, it's hard to get in and out, there's just so much going on. And so, you know, Palm Coast has the foundational structures that's necessary for this. Access to thoroughfares, close proximity to airports. It's a, you know, it's a small community with a big reach. You know, it's quaint, it's got the hotels, it's got some of, you know, a lot of the infrastructure already in place. And with the proposed expansion to the west, it can create an ecosystem out there all in its own, and then, you know, to the point of some of the strategic priorities, not have to be reliant on property taxes and residential development to stimulate economic growth and economic development. And so the rest of the conceptual site plan, we found was adequate, right? There was nothing that was too big or too small, it was, for the most part, appropriate. The cost estimate for that is also appropriate, it's in line with what we would expect. We feel like the economic impact to the region is low, as is some of the visitor numbers. And as we look at this, we like to balance these facilities with community use and sports tourism, right, as a destination. And so there's just as many community benefits to this type of a facility as there are economic incentive or economic impact, right? This is a place for kids to go to after-school camps and summer programs. It's a place for people to go to play pickleball, or walk around an indoor track in the summertime when it's too hot. And so you get a lot of those community benefits, at the same time, you get some of the economic impacts from sports tourism. We determined, you know, through our financial modeling, that the revenues of the facility can support its operating expenses. And so that's a very big, that's a very big deal, right? Because one of the things, when we work with communities, we don't want to suggest developing facilities that becomes a drain on general revenues of the city, right? We don't want to put the city in a position of having to subsidize the operations of something this big. They're traditionally doing that anyway with a lot of the parks and rec facilities. And so when you put it on steroids, you know, to this level, that amount of subsidy is generally not something that a community can sustain. And so if through our programming recommendations and our modeling, we can show that cash flows can sustain operating expenses, then it's really a win-win for the community and for regional sports tourism. And so we looked at a more realistic site plan. The original study, again, had it on a hypothetical piece of land that was kind of a square and said this is about 180 acres. And so we worked with ETM, they created a more realistic site plan as part of the western expansion, to really show what this could look like, space-wise, layout-wise, with some of the roads and infrastructure already there, to give a more realistic perspective on, again, kind of the size of this, one. I don't, I don't think, you know, we do this all the time, but it's sometimes hard to imagine what 20 soccer fields in one location really means in terms of size. And so, but this starts to orient that western expansion where other things will eventually be filled in, you know, to support not only the sports complex, but other development to the west. And so by having this in a centralized location, it really centralizes your sports tourism. And so for, you know, typically with communities, there's community concern with, if we put something this big, what's it going to do to our town? By having this as part of the western expansion, it really allows for the city of Palm Coast to stay this quaint city of Palm Coast, and the tourism side and the sports side to live in harmony with it, but not be overrun by it. And so we really like this concept of putting it out to the west. And so again, you know, once we took a look at, you know, where can this go, how big is it, does it really work? It really comes back to the financial question of, this looks great, Jason, this is a nice little map, but how do we pay for it? And so typically, there are several funding models that are available to communities, and so we want to touch on each one of those, right? So the first one that's most common to most cities and communities is issuing bonds. That is the last thing that we would ever recommend for these types of projects. Sports is a great thing. I've got kids that play sports, you guys have kids, you may have grandkids that play sports. Everybody can rally around sports, but not everybody wants their taxes going up to support sports. And so we recognize that, but it is a funding option that if you guys choose to move forward with this project, you could consider. Capital improvement budget, capital improvement plan, different communities have different names for it. Typically, the problem with this model or this pathway is it never happens, right? There's always something more important. I learned more today about flooding than I will ever learn in my life. But infrastructure, and so you save up for a sports complex, and now you have to redo roads, or you need a new water treatment plant, or a hospital, or a fire station. And so, you know, these things, again, are great, but they generally fall by the wayside for more important concerns. The third option that some communities will look to is a developer-funded or private facility. In some cases, this isn't a bad option. In this case, it's probably not the best option. Essentially, what it says is, hey, we're the city of Palm Coast, we're going to give a developer some land, we want you to come in and build it, we want you to come in and operate. Well, that's great, except for a couple of things. Developers can make more money doing other things besides sports. Developers aren't very good at running sports facilities. And it inherently excludes the community, right? So if a developer were to come in, and they say, well, we'll put in the $93 million, well, they have to get that from somewhere. They have to get it from investors, or they have to get it from a bank. Either way, they owe somebody something. And so if I'm that developer, and Lauren wants to bring her kids in to play basketball for free, but I can rent it to the mayor, a basketball court, for $100, I'm always going to pick that, because I have debt to repay, or I have investors to satisfy. So the community becomes excluded, and it becomes an elitist kind of facility, charging the highest rates possible for access, and it typically will leave out community members that want to use it for quality of life. And so then that brings us to kind of the fourth option, which of the 30 or so projects that we are consulting on now, almost all of them are following this pathway. And it is a type of public-private partnership in which both sides bring value to the project, and it essentially takes the form of a municipality lease. And so we'll talk about what that looks like in a second. But what this does is, it retains the community's access to it. It doesn't impact the city's bond capacity. It allows the private side to do what the private side does well, and it lets the public side do what the public side does well. And so of the four options, this is by and large the best option in these large capital projects. And so how does it work? You know, I'm going to go ahead and get all of these on the screen. So like I said, each side brings something of value. The city could bring land, possibly capital, tax incentives, economic development incentives, TDC funds, et cetera. The private side, and where the private side excels here, is on the development and the operation side. So the private side can develop things really, really well. The private side can typically do it more affordably, more efficiently, and less costly than the public side can. And so when those two groups come together, and the public side offers what it can offer, the private side will then come in and bring the remainder of the capital that's required, as well as their development expertise and their operating expertise. And so then, you know, we'll get to this in the next slide, but what that does is, it, again, keeps you from using bond capacity, it doesn't, no one raises taxes, and through our financial modeling, you know, if we can show that it supports its own operating expenses, then you have a cash flow positive facility that only gives back to the community rather than takes general revenues from the city. All right, so this is off by a little bit, you hopefully can see it on your screen. So, you know, from a structural standpoint, the way this works is, which you already have done, the city will fund an initial feasibility study, make sure the project's viable, it's feasible, it's realistic. The municipality would then fund what's called pre-development, site surveys, you know, acquiring land or identifying land, all of the things before construction. At that point, that's the last dollars out of pocket that the city has to spend. Some communities we work with have raised $15 million, $50 million, $5 million, or no dollars. After that pre-development period, the rest of the project can be fully funded. And so through private equity and nonprofits that we work with, we are able to bring that private capital to these projects. It'll fund 100% of the project. It'll fund 100% of the project cost, plus the professional services fees that go along with it. And again, taking it out of the public side, there are a lot of efficiencies in doing that. By doing that, as part of that public-private partnership, it essentially becomes a private project, rather than a municipal project. So the private side can develop it on its own timeline, with its own resources, utilizing as many local firms as possible. The municipality then leases that facility back from the private side, and as they master leaseholder, it's the same, I use an analogy, it's just like a car, except it's a really big car.
Suburban.
Right, so if you lease a car, right, it doesn't belong to you, but you're leasing it, so you get to decide how you drive it, what kind of gas you put into it, when you rotate the tires and that sort of thing. The same premise holds true with these sports complexes. With the city as the master leaseholder, it guarantees quality-of-life amenities for the community. And then it provides the opportunity for the private side to program it, to bring in the economic impact and the sports tourism benefits from it. And so it truly is the balance of both of those worlds. It's externally operated, right, and most of these operators, they work on a fee-plus-incentive basis. With these type of facilities, we generally do not recommend that parks and rec or things like that manage these facilities. The private side, again, is very well-versed at going out and securing tournaments, bringing in events, working with TDC, working with other events holders and naming rights donors, to really run it as a business with a community focus. And then lastly, as the master leaseholder, all of the revenues from the facility are returned to the municipality. Right, and so, again, if we're able to model that the operations from the facility meet its own operating expenses and its lease service, there's no money out of pocket from the city, other than the pre-development costs, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars usually, for the eternity of the project. Right, it can stand on its own, it's not requiring a subsidy, and it's providing all of this return benefit to the community. And so that's that last bullet point. So we only recommend this public leaseback in the cases where our financial model shows that it can support the facility. And so we're not going to put ourselves, our partners, out there, you know, put our necks on the line to bring all of this capital in, if it's not going to be supported by its own revenues. And so real quick, just a case study that illustrates this. This is a project very similar to the one that's contemplated in Palm Coast. The components are a little bit different, but the size, scope, cost, all of that is the same. So this is a project that we are working on in West Texas. They are almost done with pre-development. It's on 100 acres. It's got 10 soccer fields, 12 ball fields, and an indoor facility. They've got an amphitheater, they've got a splash park, but it was, it's a $90 million project. And so they are following this exact same model. They brought, they paid the feasibility study, and they paid $1 million in pre-development fee. They are leasing back the entire $90 million. They don't have a TDC or things like that. And so their financial, the financial model for the facility and the financial status of the city allows them to do that. Right, and so it doesn't use their bond capacity, it uses their credit rating and their balance sheet as a city to confirm, right, that there's funds available. And through our operating model, you know, our private equity folks have a, you know, a comfort level that this is going to produce what it will, and they're going to get their return.
And Jason Manches asked, real quick, this Odessa, Texas case study, is there a timeline when this facility was brought online, just so that we can compare just timing of this? This wasn't built 25 years ago, this is a recent facility?
Yeah, so they're only in pre-development.
Understood.
So they are breaking ground February 27th.
Cool.
Kind of a side comment to that, the very first time I was ever introduced to anyone in Odessa, Texas, was last February. So in less than 12 months, they went from, we've got this great idea, we want to see what it can do, to putting a shovel in the ground. Their fields will come online, which I would expect would happen here, too. Their fields will come online first by this fall, but, you know, by October, they will have fields to play on, you know, for their local kids. The rest of the facility, right, some of the buildings, the vertical construction, will take about 18 months, 24 months.
Thank you.
And so then, you know, we put together a financial model. I know it's maybe a little bit hard on the big screens to see, you've got them in front of you. And so when we put together these financial models, we look at the bigger-ticket sports. I wouldn't be able to fit on one screen every possible revenue generator. You know, there's an outdoor stadium included in the site plan. We didn't include track and field, we didn't include wrestling, we didn't include pickleball leagues, we didn't include some of those types of things. Those only add to, because if we can show through the financial model of most major sports that this thing's viable, any secondary sports isn't going to drag it down. It's only going to add to the benefits that it can provide. And so then we took an excerpt, just a single sport on a single surface, right, just looking at soccer on soccer fields. We're not looking at, like, football, rugby, lacrosse, anything else, not looking at the indoor or anything in the arena. Just looking at soccer, we identified there are 46 possible tournaments in the southeast that could relocate to Palm Coast if given the opportunity. We assigned a 50% capture rate, so even if you only get half of those, you're still going to have 23 tournaments and have total visitor spending and tax generation of over $17 million. Right, again, single sport, single surface. And now you extrapolate that to all of the other major sports, and then some of the minor sports, you can see how the economic impact of these types of facilities really start to work. One of the things that we noted on the initial feasibility study, it didn't really take into account the economic impact of daytime visitors or day-only visitors. And so they always look at, well, overnight visitors this, overnight visitors that. The bulk of the visitors to this complex are going to be daytime visitors. Right, my daughter plays softball. So we go to a tournament, we're there all day, but then we're done, and we go home. But when we're out there, we're going to get gas, we're going to a restaurant for lunch, we're getting something to eat on the way home. There's going to be a lot more of those people, right? So again, to alleviate some of the concerns that community members may have of, oh, we're going to have all these people come staying in our hotels, you will have some, yes, absolutely. And it's a good thing. But a lot of these are going to be people coming in, spending their money here, enjoying themselves, and leaving. And so visitors end up funding the bulk of the cost of this complex, right, through TDC funds, through their own spending, because that would be spending that would otherwise not be done in Palm Coast. I'm not going to go through all of this, right, but we did a pretty exhaustive exercise on the expense side as well. We include things like deferred maintenance, right, so we can replace turf and things like that. We included economic impact, and so this is a little bit more realistic. And so the salmon color there down near the bottom is the economic impact that we're One thing I want to try to back up to, I don't know, it's not showing up on here, it may on your screens. On the financial model, we included the leaseback service, and so we even factored in what the lease cost would be. And it still showed, you know, a net income of about $500,000 the first year, even after paying a $6 million a year lease. And so that is financially viable to us, and those are funds that go back to the city. And so that allows you to do other things within the city, reinvest it into parks and communities and walking trails and biking trails and those sorts of things. And so then we kind of get into process, right? We've already kind of taken a look at the feasibility studies, we checked that one off. The next phase of this will be, and I think Lauren will speak to this in a second, but finalizing the structure, right? If this is something that you guys decide to move forward with, what does that look like, nuts and bolts? What is the process? What are the legal things that have to be taken into account? What are the financial things that have to be taken into account? So kind of dotting i's, crossing t's is the next step. Present that final framework, back to council for final approval. Then you go into pre-development, which is typically about a six-month process. You begin construction, timeline is 18 to 24 months, and then you're at your grand opening. Right, again, some of that stuff will come online first, and so people can enjoy the amenities out there while some of the construction is still going on. As far as roles and responsibilities, again, one of the beauties of this is that you're not turning this project over to a private developer. The city remains in control. City manager, assistant city manager, chief of staff are still leading this project forward. We are supporters of that, along with our partners. And then underneath us come contractors, subcontractors, as many local firms as possible, even up to the general construction side of it, as long as there's a qualified contractor that can build a 140,000-square-foot, 50-foot-high building. And so then we kind of, I put together, you know, some brief FAQs just in the hopes of kind of heading off any questions you may have, because we get them all the time. You know, but what's the term of the lease? Who owns the facility? So things like that. And so, you know, we can get into more of these details now or offline, but, you know, this doesn't really change much. The lease is a 30-year lease, it's amortized based on a 6% rate of return. Typically, what we've found is that municipalities can pay this off in about 17 years, assuming all of those profits are reinvested. Now, if you choose to start to use some of that for other things, then that's fine. But it's nice knowing that there's no prepayment penalty, and you can get this back in about half the time. The funding group or the group of investors technically own the facility until the last lease payment's made, just like if you lease a car, you don't own that car until you pay your lease off. It's then turned over to the city for a dollar, and then it's yours to do with as you choose. The recommendation is still continue to have a private operator. Non-appropriations is automatically built into this, and so there's an element of non-appropriation's risk that is baked in. Never in 15 years has appropriations been a problem, because of it can support itself, right? So you're not really appropriating money for it, there's no subsidy. Who operates the facility? We have operating partners. We've got one partner here in Florida, we've got another partner up in the Northeast, we've got another partner out west. And so depending on the components of the facility, we'll call in one of those operators or another. That is a quote-unquote requirement of this leaseback, is that the private funding groups are not very excited to build these facilities when Park and Rec is managing. And so who's responsible for repairs and maintenance? The operating company is responsible for all operations, daily maintenance, change a light bulb, clean the windows. Deferred maintenance accounts are already built in, so when capital improvements have to be made to turf or buildings or scoreboards, all of those are already accounted for as well. Naming rights and corporate donations are typically a big part of these projects. So we recommend that a nonprofit get created to act as an intermediary, similar to the community organization or committee that you were talking about earlier, that sits between the sports complex and city council. They're an advisory board, but it's also a 501(c)(3) that can accept corporate donations from major donors, right? If we want to have this called, you know, the synergy sports soccer field, and I'm going to give $1 million for it, well, now that's tax-deductible for me, the business, and it can be kept in a silo that can only be used for the sports complex. It can't be shuttled over to another park, or a trail, or wherever there may be needs. Municipal leasing doesn't affect a city's credit rating unless you don't pay your lease, just like it is on the personal side. And so underwriting's based on the credit rating of the city and the balance sheet of the city. And so then what's next? And I know Lauren wants to speak to some of this, but just to reiterate some of the process, you know, there needs to be some framework created around this concept, brought back to city council for approval, and then pre-development, construction, and then, you know, all their ducks go where they need to. You're probably looking at early 2026, you know, if we said go today. And so with that, Lauren, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Before you go, I would ask you a couple of things. So the revenue generation fits our current strategic action plan, where we have assigned ourselves to identify alternative revenue streams. So that's number one. Number two, when you next come back to present, the one, a piece that I see missing here, which you may have some reference material on, is because it's sports, and it's primarily youth sports, I'm gathering, the increase in athletic scholarships that local students could benefit from would be an interesting metric for us to have as a part of the next presentation.
Very good.
And the one other piece is a more closely, a close alignment with the healthcare services initiative that the city currently is strategic action planned. I mean, obviously, sports and youth sports and healthcare services are a natural marriage in a lot of different ways. So I would just ask you to weave that conversation in next time, and I don't want to steal any of your discussion, but I wanted to get those out.
I was just thinking on that, Mr. Mayor, too. It was back on one of these slides about the size of the indoor facility. That's typically a marriage that we suggest. The healthcare system, whether it's the hospital system, a physical therapist, occupational therapist, whatever the case may be, they typically work well as a lease tenant, right? They're going to be able to see their own patients through there, but they're also going to be able to provide athletic trainers for the facility, you know, emergency medical folks, if there's injuries, right? Because to put this in perspective, and I don't have a slide on it, but, you know, when we benchmark the size of tournaments, right, a soccer field can hold about 10 teams per soccer field, per tournament, when you look at brackets and pool play and all that. So a 20-team soccer field complex could host a 200-team tournament, right? So when you work backwards, 200 teams, each team has 10 kids on the team, you have 2,000 kids, right? And so to have an onsite medical staff that can look at a sprained ankle, or a shoulder, or whatever.
Or to have the medical services available, because we have an older demographic, and orthopedics is a big concern to our older and current residents as well. So it's not confined just to this initiative. This would be services generally spread throughout, available throughout the entire community. I'm just trying to help you highlight that benefit.
Yes, sir.
Sprained ankle, hurt hip, could be any one of the...
Replacement, yeah.
Got it, understood, understood, okay. Yeah.
So, city council, our next step is we're seeking consensus to move forward with the structure of a P3. There is some language in state statute that we need to follow, and then we need to work with legal on drafting what that framework would look like. We wanted to get this information in front of you, ahead of your SAP, because this falls in line with your current strategic action plan, so as we're embarking on that journey, just continuing this priority.
Comments?
I'm fine with moving forward.
I mean, if you look at the first year, it's hard to tear it up.
No, I'm very excited about this. Thank you for all of the information in the presentation. I just had some questions while we've got you here. So I know we received kind of an updated feasibility study, I believe, that included some questions that I had specifically posed, which were the addition of some track and field space, and the addition of making sure the facility is accessible for Special Olympics. And we got a report back, and I asked about an aquatic center, too. Essentially, the high-level response was, aquatics, not a good idea, very expensive, and not a high ROI, but track and field and accessibility, definitely doable. Do you know how that affects cost, or are we looking at that kind of like the next step?
So track and field, it's that cost for developing that's already baked into this?
Okay.
As part of the outdoor arena? You're not going to have a track around each of the soccer fields, right? But in the stadium, it's already accounted for there. The revenue for that kind of falls into that bucket of second-tier sports where if we can show viability through the major sports, then we know the rest of it's just going to add gravy to the financial model. And so that kind of takes care of that. We do a lot of outdoor tracks as part of these projects. Special Olympics and accessibility, that kind of is baked in with construction, right? You're going to have accessible pathways and ramps and things like that. Now, if what you're saying is maybe do we put in a miracle field, like a synthetic surface, right, rubber field predominantly for kids in wheelchairs and things like that? They make baseball fields that way. It would add some, but what you're talking about in terms of a ninety-three-million-dollar budget, it's not going to be enough to move the needle. That has to be made a specific point on, right? So if we're talking about general accessibility, that's already built into any project. If we want to look at specific things for specific groups, we can. This project in West Texas, their very first event is the Special Olympics.
Yeah. Well, and we, it is, it's very big in Florida, and we don't have too many, there's not too many resources out there. So it is something that I had brought forward and wanted to explore the, I guess, the viability of it. Obviously, you know, we want it to be successful and used, and so that's something that I'm curious about, too. Would it be utilized? I think it would be. But yeah, just wanted to know if those costs were additional or if they were already baked in. It sounds like they're already baked in.
Yeah, they're already baked in.
Okay. And then the naming rights. I saw on, let me get back to this slide. It was the economic impact slide. It looks like you all have naming rights capital listed at five million dollars through year five, and then that goes down to three million dollars for years six through ten. It's only because of that revenue that we're in the green. So how did we arrive at that? How can we depend on that? How dependable is it? That's a big number that we don't have yet, so I'm a little concerned.
Correct. And that's part of the framework and part of this next phase is to start testing those waters. I can tell you from this other example, again, out in Texas, they've not broken ground yet. They have twenty-five million dollars already secured in naming rights. The reason it goes down is because typically your naming rights are going to come before the project starts, and they're going to phase out depending on the amount of the gift, right? So if you give a million dollars, then you may be able to pay that over five years. Well, if you give ten million dollars and you want your name over the entire complex, you may be able to spread that out over ten years. And so you have this declining balance over the course of time that coincides with an uptick in revenue from the facility, right? The revenue, you're not going to have as good of revenue the first year as you will the second year. Name recognition, people getting out there. And so if you look on that, the financial model, you know, you start to, you know, you start to see a bigger, bigger increase over time, but naming rights are a big part of that. And so as part of this next part of the process, we'll reach out to some national partners that we have. Also, and again, this kind of bleeds over into the pre-development period, that's where more of the local community businesses would be approached or could be approached. You don't want to do that too early, right? Because then if the project doesn't happen, you've kind of started to set some false expectations. But we'll assess that as we go through here. Some of these numbers were put in here from past experience on other projects of similar-sized markets and knowing what we've been able to cultivate in terms of naming rights there, too.
So our city, I think, is a little unique in that we are pretty young. We don't have some of that, I guess, old money that a lot of cities have, and I would consider probably Odessa, Texas, in that category of being more of an established city, probably with old industry and manufacturing and things like that. But I guess I'm concerned because I, you know, I know, there's a few, the very next slide talks about what we're paying for in this process at the beginning, or I don't know, it might be further on down. How much money we put forward, we're asking for a lot of money in appropriations out of Tallahassee to kind of go west and make all this happen, and then at the same time relying on five million dollars a year for five years and three million dollars a year for five years after that without having it yet. So I understand the concern about not wanting to try to get it too quickly, too soon in the process, but how, at what point in the process and after how much money that we spend and eggs we put in this basket, will we know whether or not we have something like this coming through?
Yeah, based on the process that has to be figured out, I think by the time that process is over, we'll have a pretty good idea of where this is sitting. We probably won't know exactly, but we'll know whether is five million dollars right? Is it only five hundred thousand? Before we get to the point that the city has to put out any more dollars to move forward on the project. And that's why we kind of do it this way, is after this pre-development period, you're really kind of jumping into this and saying, okay, private money, come in here. Before that, it's kind of like a jumping off point, right? And so if through this structured process, we look and we reach out and there's not really a lot of naming rights sponsorships out there, that's a jumping off point for the city. Okay, great. Thanks for your assessment. We can't support this without these naming rights. It's not there. We're going to scale back this concept, right? Maybe you do ten fields instead of twenty, maybe whatever. But it gives you those options.
And let me just help you out because you already know this, so, and to your point that we're a younger city. So on the flip side of that, because your point is well-taken, is that we only have right now one healthcare network, and the competition amongst healthcare networks is more than aggressive. And in addition to that, there are any number of other, there's also a regional competition getting ready to take place that I'm sure you all know who that list of potential supporters would be. Don't have it in hand, agreed, but I think the feeling generally is that those monies could be spun up. At what level? They'll have to come back, and there's a jumping off point, so there's a protection in place.
Well, yeah, I mean, I hope you're right, and I hope we can, you know, this becomes a non-issue, but it is a concern.
And I mentioned the academic institutions as well. I meant to say those. So you've got several major universities that are competing against each other to put a bigger, I don't want to say footprint, to put a bigger impression locally.
I'm a night, so I really, you know, I have some difficulties with that potentially, but I'll get over it.
Right on.
Yeah. So thank you for that explanation. I would kind of like to know as we get along this process, kept up on the, kept up to speed on where we're at with that because it is a concern of mine. And then how did we come up with this six million dollars as a price point for the leaseback?
It's the same leaseback as Odessa.
Got it, okay. And that's market for...
It's, yeah, so we work with a nonprofit. So they're a philanthropic private equity group, and so they don't have the same rates or requirements as true private equity. So we know what it is, and so I can plug in whatever numbers I want, and it's always going to be the same.
Gotcha, okay. And then the management, you said there was a management firm here in Florida that you all often use? Who is that? Are you a lot of...
Yeah, sure. It's a group called Rad Sports. They manage the Alachua County Sports and Event Center in Champions Park. They are the operators for Odessa as well, and so they're up in Gainesville.
A little close to Gators, but okay, whatever.
It'll all right, it'll be all right. And then my last question, so for the food and beverage portion of this, because I think there's a lot of money to be made in food and beverage, would Rad Sports also be the company that manages that or would, okay?
So yes, no, and maybe. Typically, with most facilities, yes. Again, I'll go back to this Texas project. One of the naming rights sponsors is a very large convenience store chain, and so they are going to handle food and beverage as part of their sponsorship. And on the, another large sponsor is a restaurant group out of Texas. And so they're going to handle a food court on the inside of the indoor facility rather than what they call pretzels and beer cheese. And so they're going to have, you know, tacos and burritos and burgers and more of a restaurant, you know, food court rather than just a concession stand.
And those revenues still come back to us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, sorry, I know I said one more, but I have one more after that. The, paying this off in seventeen years, you said most cities are able to pay it off in seventeen years. Why is that? Are they paying above that leaseback?
Yeah, right. They're reinvesting their net income.
Got it.
You know, from parking revenue and concession revenue. That bottom-line number, right, it's kind of like found money for the city. So if you don't need it, well, then just dump it back in to the mix and get that paid off. And then your lease payment goes away. Now your numbers, your financials go way up, and then you can bank on the profit after that, but you want to try to get that paid off as quick as possible.
And do we start paying off that lease during construction or once construction's complete?
Once operations begin.
Got it.
There's no interest, interest is capitalized, and so no payments start, it doesn't hit the balance sheet of the city until operations begin. Principal payments are deferred typically or can be deferred two years. And so again, it would alter the financial model a little bit in that you wouldn't have a principal payment, you would only have a lease payment for the first two years, thus alleviating one of your concerns on naming rights capital, right? Because if we can show a ramp up in operations where you're not dependent on naming rights in the early years because you're only paying interest and not the full lease payment, then operations has a chance to catch up.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
I only have one. Okay, so Councilwoman Pontieri mentioned the Special Olympic Games, and our mayor, Alvin, mentioned our youth population, which would be a major focus of these tournaments. But we also have a senior populations. So would this sports complex also be able to accommodate something like the senior games? I know they've had them in different places. I know Port Orange has a seniors game, so something like that they would also have available for events like that. I just don't want to leave out seniors out.
I know. Well, and so there's two sides to that. There's community amenity and there's sports tourism, right? So from a, you know, what are you going to do on Tuesday morning? Well, now you've got a place to go play pickleball or go walk around the track in the summertime, you know, play pickup basketball, those sorts of things, men's leagues in the morning, you know, pickleball at lunch sort of thing. And then you've got events that are, that's just program-driven. There's no special accommodations that need to be made for the senior games. You just program that on a weekend.
Okay.
And so again, going back to the indoor facility, another piece that's usually included in addition to healthcare is some sort of strength and conditioning. And so there could be a community fitness center in there or, you know, a place for athletes to work out.
Wellness center.
But that's also your...
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Good point.
I don't have any questions necessarily, just want to say thank you, Jason, very much for this presentation. Thank you to staff. Thank you to Lauren. I met with Lauren and Jason earlier this week to go over this. I had the same questions about the naming rights. I am fully on board. I understand fully the financial propositions and the financial model here. I think it also opens up a clever opportunity for council to be able to earmark some of these funds. I won't be on this council when that occurs, but potentially being able to use these funds for, you know, goal-driven accomplishments such as repaving X number of miles per road each year, things that have been stated in the past by former councils, things that might be able to be re-implemented once we have additional revenue sources like this. But I am hopeful that this can offer something that's much needed in our community and lead the westward expansion in an awesome athletic way. And I'm very thankful for the conjunction at the county level and our TDC representative. Thank you very much for being here, and I'm excited for this.
Great. Thank you guys so much.
Very good. Any final questions for the presenter? Same answer. Okay, then I would, if you hold for a minute, I would open up this discussion or this agenda item for the public if you'd like to comment.
Thank you. My name is Celia Bogrissi, residence since nineteen ninety-one. This is very, very, this presentation is very promising and very visionary. Now, we did have another presentation like this last month, was another one, like an hour, something. My question is, this is very nice for the future, and my question is, and it was before, I asked and I never got a reply, are these presentations free to us or we are paying for them? And if we are paying each presentation for, as a taxpayer, I want to know now, because I was not replied on the first one presentation last month, how much is costing us right now and where are the funds coming to pay for these beautiful presentations? Please, I need to know because I was not informed before. Because we're having issues here of funding roads and funding other priorities, and my question is, how much is this pre-development cost? My also question is, we are biting too big that we might choke ninety, I hear ninety-three millions, I hear the city's thirty millions. Where is this money going to come from? Is this from grants that we're getting these monies? The people needs to know. And I would like to have an answer before I, because I withstood all this for the next issue that we're going to have, it's very important to us. And I want to know this question before I walk out of here as a resident, so I can copy my other residents in the city. So please answer me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else have a public comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Any final discussion from city council? So I'm going to ask city council for consensus for the city manager to move forward with preparing a organizational, to describe an organizational initiative on how to move forward according to the flow chart, which would be the second graphic that you showed on the flow chart on development, which would be a more precise description on how the P3 and the other elements related to it would be formed for the discussion and consideration only of city council. Is that...
Sounds good.
Is that enough direction for city council?
Yes, ma'am.
So there's no commitment here? It's just giving them the authority to move forward and come back to us with a presentation, which gets us to that next graphic on your flow chart.
Sure. And real quick, I just want to ask our director of Parks and Recreation, any input, anything that you see, you know, outstanding? Didn't ask for input, but just want to make sure everything's okay.
Oh, thank you. No, no, it's opportunity, it's exciting. We need the fields, so it is, we're excited and we're ready to help out in any way.
Perfect, thank you.
And I would ask the presenter before we finish, if you have just a minute to speak with the public speaker just for a moment, just in kind of broad strokes, I think you may be able to add some, some flavor to the presentation to help answer the concern that you may have just heard. If you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be great. So with that, let me just get a head shake from everybody. We do have a consensus, a unanimous consensus from everyone, so there you go.
And mayor, since we're now adding another presentation, can we make it clear we're not paying per presentation here?
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes.
Well, I, yes, go ahead.
I would, because, yeah, because we're not really paying per presentation, so I just want to make that very clear.
Right. This is an economic generator. This is being funded out of economic development funds that we have in our budget.
Thank you. Okay. And, but if you would hit some of those other points, I think that would be, I would appreciate it. Very good. Thank you very much for the presentation. You have consensus. We now move forward to the next item, which is the contract regarding Hernando County piggyback. Is that something, this is just a presentation, you don't need to identify that in the record, right? I don't believe so. So a presentation from Carl.
Carl Curry, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department, looking to present council an update regarding the pavement management roadway program. So this presentation will cover the Palm Coast Road Network resurfacing history, looking forward, implementation criteria in a five-year pavement management plan, and then we'll discuss council actions. So we'll go over the roadway network. You've seen this slide before. We've got a fairly extensive roadway network, over five hundred and forty-two centerline miles and a total value of over eight hundred and forty-six million dollar value. The bulk of our roadway, roughly eighty percent, are local residential roads that... That means they have driveways on them. The rest of them are arterial collector.
And it is a very elaborate, uh, road, street system. This is a lot more mileage than a lot of other cities our, our size have.
Yeah, that's what, um, our TransMap, our, our consultant that did the scanning of our roadway noted that as well. They do a lot of cities and municipalities in Florida. I think we have over twelve hundred lane miles, which is very high for a city.
There ain't no Odessa here, right?
Ayo. So some of the resurfacing history, um, from two thousand and three to two thousand and twelve, the county had imposed a half-cent sales surtax. That revenue went to funding the milling and resurfacing program. During those ten years that funding was in place, the city milled and resurfaced six hundred and fifty lane miles of roadways. In the ten years since that funding source expired, the city has milled and resurfaced less than two hundred lane miles of roadway. However, we're able to construct new roadways or resurface additional roadways as part of some roadway improvement projects with assistance of grant funding. And so on the right is those additional roadways that were part of roadway projects. So from two thousand and two to seventeen, the only option utilized was milling and resurfacing. City staff inspected, identified roadways to be milled and resurfaced. In two thousand and seventeen, TransMap, that was the firm we, the city hired, they performed data collection to establish the quality of the roadway network. Scans included a light radar, LIDAR, which uses a computer agor- algorithm to evaluate the roadway condition and establishes a pavement condition index map of the city. This map gives a visual representation of the current quality of the roadway. This map and data behind it are used to identify individual roads and clusters of roadways that are in the most need of repair. TransMap performed a second roadway condition scan index in two thousand and twenty-one to generate an updated pavement condition index map. So this here covers the initial roadway, that, um, scan that was done. It, it shows in our arterial roadways. On the left, we had an average of a PCI of a seventy-nine. Four years later, we had dropped to a PCI of seventy-three. And then this is our residential roadways. We, we had a PCI average of seventy-four in two thousand and seventeen and we dropped to an average of seventy in two thousand and twenty-one. At the date of the measurement, less than fifty percent of our roadways were available for a global treatment option. So we were exploring in our pavement management program alternatives to just milling and resurfacing using other treatment methods. And we needed to identify which roads would potentially, um, be an alternative to receive global treatment. So looking forward, we had some implementation criteria. City staff and TransMap put together a five-year pavement management plan based on direction from city council to only utilize current funding sources. No new funding sources approved to provide the necessary funding shortfall in the pavement management program. Continue to not provide funding for median beautification, entry gateway, neighborhood signs, as well as sidewalks. Incorporate the use of global treatments to reduce the current ten million dollar annual funding shortfall. With these factors, the recommendation for arterial and collective roadways is to utilize milling and resurfacing only with full-depth repair where needed, with a budget to maintain a seventy-three PCI over the upcoming five-year outlook. For local residential roadways, the plan would introduce global treatments with any surplus funds from maintaining the arterial network utilizing global treatments where possible. So the recent projection for the Streets Improvement Fund averages roughly three point seven million dollars a year for, over the next five years. This includes the one-time added revenue of two and a half million dollars in the current fiscal year and a fund balance of two point two million dollars. Those dollars are eligible for roadway maintenance, a large portion of which is assigned to asphalt resurfacing. The city has deferred certain items and increased the fund allocation to assist in adding funding to the pavement management program. However, it's not nearly the funding needed. It is also not sustainable as traffic signals and other roadway maintenance increases over time as these items get older, which will require additional funding. And you can see the split of the different items of funding here. It's roughly seventy-five percent of the revenue and that's when we're deferring some of those unfunded items. But we know those maintenance items are going to increase in cost that are going to impact how much dollars we have available for milling and resurfacing. So this, TransMap ran a model, uh, with the pavement management software and identified a need of two point seven three five million dollars annually over the next five years to maintain a PCI of seventy-three for the city's arterial and collector roadway network. You'll note there are no roadways that meet the criteria for global treatment, so this is all milling and resurfacing. These dollars include a five percent annual cost inflation, construction management inspection services, as well as a ten percent contingency. Any areas for full-depth repair would have an impact on this plan. This plan includes additional lane miles to be resurfaced as part of grant-funded projects such as Old Kings Road North, Phase Two, and Belt Air Parkway Turn Lanes. So this list is a tentative listing in order of roadways to be resurfaced in the five-year CIP for arterios. As part of the annual budget, this plan will be updated based on actual bids and cost of projects, as well as actual revenue received and projected revenue updates. Projects may be beca- combined into a single year based on market conditions, pricing and cost projections for, you know, what's going to be most efficient moving forward on a particular project. So we got a, a map on the right, it's kind of difficult to see. We kind of put some color coding on the, the bar charts there, but you can see the listing of the streets in the various years and identified that the streets in green that are grant-funded. So our TransMap also ran a model with the management software to incorporate initial expense in the current fiscal year of just over a million dollars for global treatment utilizing micro-surfacing. This would allow the city to have micro-surfacing installed and monitored on various road types over the next several years so that the next PCI scan update is completed and will help determine its effectiveness. The five-year revenue projection and expenses has to maintain the arterial PCI has no available funding for residential roads in years twenty, twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight. The recommended pavement plan for residential roads is to maintain the average PCI of seventy, but you can see in the graph, due to current revenue sources, we're unable to maintain the resulting with a drastic drop in the projected five-year plan. This here is a list of the roadways that were identified off the eligible roadways from TransMap. A variety of PCI values and roadways were selected to be analyzed annually to assist in determining future roads to receive this type of global treatment in the future. City staff and the vendor inspected these roadways and a proposal was received per pricing from a piggyback contract. Additional roadways may be added after fiscal year twenty-four if there's available funding as we do our annual updates. So current city council action is needed to approve a piggyback contract with Hernando County, Florida and Asphalt Paving Systems, Inc., and to approve expenses in the amount of one million dollars, one million fifty thousand dollars for global treatment contract, project. City staff will be coming back to council in the future to approve a contract for resurfacing of arterial roadways, construction engineering inspection services and project contingency. Council will need to adopt a new revenue source, sources to fully fund the city's pavement management program. Continued delays in action will create a backlog of work that will not be attainable to bring the residential roadways back to recommended PCI average of seventy.
That's the end of my presentation. Any questions from council?
Questions?
I have none.
So I, first of all, want to just say, I think it's pretty awesome that we, as a council, decided we were going to dedicate funds and with those funds, we're going to be able to address twenty-nine roads. That's, I think that's a pretty good accomplishment. So, and kudos to staff for finding the contract to piggyback. And, um, as far as the roads that we've chosen this time around, do you know what the criteria TransMap used to figure out which ones we were going to address first?
Yeah. You know, with the micro-surfacing, they have a range of PCI values and we, and for our determination, we tried to get a mix in that range of value. So we didn't go to the ones that were just on the edge of that being a acceptable roadway because we want to know, you know, we're kind of a unique community because one thing that impacts micro-surfacing are heavy truck traffic and we have still infill lots to be built on. So we chose cul-de-sacs, we chose some drives, some lanes, we chose a mix of PCI values. So over the next four or five years before we scan the roads again, we'll be able to determine where ideally these are going to have the most cost-effectiveness for future placement. So we tried to get a big mix in this first go-around for this, this year.
Okay. And the, um, the pie chart that you showed where it says the, the total funds, um, are three point nine million dollars roughly, we had a, a comment earlier about the gas tax. Could you please explain how it is that we're be, we're able to even fund the paving of our arterial roads at this time and where this money comes from?
Yeah. I don't have that slide. Here, the, we have two funding sources in the Streets Improvement Fund. Uh, we have the fuel tax and the municipality revenue sharing tax. Um, the fuel tax is a, a set dollar amount and it goes, it's given to the county based on the number of lane miles of roadway that are maintained by each entity. So as a city, I, I, maybe Helena can correct me, I think we're near the eighty percent that the county receives? Yeah, she's taken ahead, yes. So we get about eighty percent of the dollars that are sent down from the state. And some of those other funds that go into here, there's a minimum amount that this city gives you, you have to dedicate to street maintenance. We put in a higher percentage than, than the state minimum, um, to, to help assist in the shortfall in this program.
Okay. And then, um, the five-year pavement management plan for the arterial, arterial roadways, how were these specific roads chosen as well?
These were straight from TransMap. They identified which roadways should be targeted first. So we took their roadways. They, they obviously broke some segments up. Um, we, we did more, uh, continuous on a roadway. They may have broken up, you know, Palm Coast Parkway into two or three years and we just picked, uh, the bulk of the year, like maybe it was the middle year had the lar- the most segments in it. So we chose that year to do the entire roadway. It's most cost-effective and speaking with our pavement management contractors as to how we should proceed, but that's how, it was done based on TransMap's recommendation list. And then we combined segments in, in, to a specific year.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. I would just really encourage council, you know, when we're going through the budget again this year, if we can, I mean, if we could even use a million dollars a year for neighborhood roads, we could really maintain, I think, a lot of roads. So I, I know it's a lot of work, um, to try to find those monies, but I would just encourage, my colleagues to, let's keep working hard to try to find these monies. So, but no further questions. Thank you.
Just a, a reference point. Is there any relationship between the standards that they used in their algorithm and the DOT definitions of road wear and tear? In other words, DOT also has a, a, a scale that they use to describe the condition of roadways. Does this algorithm parallel that? Is there any relationship between the two or is that something you'll get back to me on?
Yeah. I, you're all, there's two different things. The roads are classified A, B, C, D, F, you know, that, that's strictly to capacity of how the roadway is functioning, not the condition of the roadway itself.
But DOT also, uh, has labels for condition as well.
Yeah, I can get back to you with that information and see how it compares with the two.
Councilwoman?
No questions.
And councilman?
No, I'm just thankful, uh, to the staff for being able to come up with these alternative solutions and provided, you know, some, a little bit of resurfacing to multiple roads like that. I think in two thousand and seventeen, we made a great addition by going to LIDAR. Before that, we were literally driving around in our trucks, uh, I say us, but the city, trying to assess road, roads, uh, condition by sight, which is crazy. This is, gives us much more data-driven approach. It gives us a way to be able to not only visually see amongst our council members, but to be able to plan ahead. And also, I just wanted to debunk the whole gas revenue. Volusia County has an average gas price of three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Flagler is, uh, three dollars and thirty cents and St. John's County is also three dollars and thirty cents. So I know a lot of the time we hear that, it's like, oh, thirty cents cheaper down in Daytona. That's not the case. Just wanted to go ahead and.
Got to go to Buc-E's.
Well, yeah, go to Buc-E's, maybe go to Costco, you know, somewhere that you have a membership fee. And that was also, I was going to ask Jason, that big gas station in Odessa, Texas that was sponsored, I was wondering if that was Buc-E's, but I don't know, I refrained from that. But again, thank you, Carl and team. Appreciate it.
Very good. All right. If there are no further comments from, uh, city council members, are there any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Celia Puglisi, uh, since ninety-one here. Okay. I've been in a city, a county meeting before when the FDOT, uh, people were there, they were talking about roads and other things. So I, that was the time on which I asked the FDOT, uh, thinking that there were their trucks coming loading sand on Olkens Road North, using Olkens Road, damaging, using Palm Coast Parkway all the way above the bridge and damaging. So FDOT said, oh, well, no, well, no, those are not our trucks, so we are involving the work, or whatever. They said, I said, well, they're destroying the, the Palm Coast Parkway and Olkens Road also, right? And they said, and then, uh, they said, well, but, uh, we, Palm Coast Parkway can get FDOT funds. So Al Catifa, what is the, the county engineer? She talked, she sent me an email and I might look for it to talk with her. And so I talked with her and she said the following, and I might search for the old email, okay? That she said that, yes, I am right, that Palm Coast Parkway can get FDOT funds to be, uh, repaired. And she said that what the city had to do was to talk with the county about it getting those funds. That, I didn't invent this. This was told to me, okay? And, uh, and this was talking with the city engineer and she said that we need to get together with the county request. So if we can save repaving from our own funds, because, uh, Palm Coast Parkway, it is one of those, uh, roads that can get funding from FDOT or any funding we can get for roads for FDOT that are within their district, we should save those monies from ours and ask for that. So let's ask Mr. Al Carti, uh, Carti to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager can follow up on the county, uh, relationship. I don't think she's any longer an employee of the county, but we'll follow up to see what opportunities there might be.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Any final comments? And Carl, um, I'm sorry, what direction are you looking for from us?
It would be, no. At your next business meeting will be the piggyback contract, approval of piggyback contract, and then approval of expenses to pave all those residential roads.
That comes back at, at the next meeting?
Next business meeting.
Next business meeting, but I, I think you can see by everybody's comment, here you have consensus, uh, amongst city council members. So when you bring it back, a very brief summary and then if there are any questions, of course. So we thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
Very good. And for the grand finale. So the next item on the agenda is discussion, a presentation regarding an ordinance revising the rates of the city's utility system. So at your pleasure.
Well, I have to change my opening statement from good morning to good afternoon, mayor, council, citizens. Steve Flanagan, can you hear me all right? I don't know if it's coming through very well. Steve Flanagan, your utility director here today with Mr. Eric Rao from Stand Tech Consulting to present to you the utility rate study analysis. I will attempt to provide a good summary overview of our organization, facilities, needs, capital and system expansion highlights. Our main agenda points, review summary of utility infrastructure and needs, present rate study analysis, incorporate, uh, council direction from prior workshop, propose to adopt first-read ordinance revising rates of the city utility system. Water plant, number one, is our oldest water treatment facility, is currently underway in the process of a resiliency evaluation to turn, to determine how we would best utilize the facility in the future, when we might need to transition over to a new treatment method and/or location of that facility. The plant uses an older method of treatment based around lime softening, which may not meet DEP regulations in the future. Water treatment plant, number two, currently permitted at seven point five eight million gallons a day treatment capability and will not require any major capacity expansion in the next five-year window. We are currently working on the design improvements of an additional ground storage tank. We are currently working on the design improvements of an additional ground storage tank and a secondary sludge thickener. This is a membrane treatment facility with additional lime softening utilized to nearly make full use of the complete raw water supplied to the plant. Water plant number three is originally placed in service in 2008 at 3 million gallons a day permitted capacity. This facility was master planned to be able to be expanded to 9 million gallons per day when the need occurs. We are looking to expand this facility using fresh and brackish water supplies currently. It currently uses only shallow superficial aquifer water supply for its raw water supply to the plant. This facility would be the water plant of the three existing facilities that we are looking to expand capacity, capability in the current five-year plan to meet the community's growth needs. Wastewater. Wastewater Treatment Plant number one was previously scheduled for capacity upgrades in the year 2031, but based on, based on capacity, based on the capacity analysis report. But due to the increase in growth patterns over the recent five years, it was determined that we need to advance the capacity upgrade of this facility. The latest analysis report advanced the upgrade to fiscal year 2027, 2028. Council recently approved the initial pre-engineering design for the expansion. The timeframe from early design beginning to construction completion of a large-scale project like this would roughly be four years. It is a vital project to provide for our system and the community growth, both for today and into the future. It is also important as it provides for the infrastructure improvements that allow for our building industry to continue to provide for many jobs in our community. Much of our building growth is from infill lots that were platted back in the 70s and 80s. Wastewater Treatment Plant number two, located in the northwestern portion of the city, is currently under construction to provide for additional plant capacity going from 2 million gallons a day to 4 million gallons per day. The service area for this facility has several new subdivisions located north of Palm Coast Parkway along State Road US-1 that it provides service to. The facility's construction is expected to be completed in late calendar year 2024 at a cost of roughly $30 million. In 2008, the city upgraded its wastewater treatment plant process, built a trunk pipeline system along Old Kings Road to the north and south, and started in the reclaim water sale business. We now service subdivisions such as Hidden Lakes, Tuscana, Ran Landings, the entire town center area, and the new subdivision starting up along US-1. Providing reclaimed water to the community is a big benefit in many ways. It reduces the overall use of potable water for irrigation. It helps to replenish our raw water aquifer. It lessens the need for the utility to acquire additional lands for effluent disposal, and it aids us in our conservation efforts, thereby providing us conservation credits with our St. John's River Water Management District's consumptive use permit allocation of the aquifer recharge withdrawal. This slide is intended to provide the highlights of the five-year capital plan as it relates to the larger-scale water-related projects. Some of these priority-level projects would be Water Treatment Plant number three, capacity expansion, design permitting and construction. Water Plant number three, well-field expansion, well drilling and well activation. Water Plant One, lime sludge handling. Water Plant Number Two, sludge thickener, design and construction. And finally, Water Plant Number Two, 2 million gallon a day ground storage tank. This slide is intended to, I'm sorry, excuse me. Is intended to provide the highlights of the five-year capital plan as it relates to the larger-scale wastewater-related projects. Some of these priority-level projects would be wastewater treatment plant number one, centrifuge replacement with screw press for solids handling. Wastewater Plant Number One, aeration and headworks upgrades. Wastewater Plant Number One, capacity expansion, design permitting and construction from 6.83 million gallons a day to an approximately 10 million gallon a day facility. Reclaim water expansions. Wastewater Plant Number Two, 6 million gallon a day ground storage tank, design and construction. As a public water purveyor, it is our responsibility to protect the environment. At the end of the day, the environment is what provides us the resources we need to provide our best quality service to our citizens and customers. We take this responsibility seriously and we understand our responsibility to abide by the rules and regulations that our governing authorities stipulate. These rules and regulations, however, come at a cost that must be ultimately be borne by our ratepayers. We work to do our best at holding down costs while informing our customers what they can do to conserve water and our resource, which can help lower their utility payment. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Eric Grau, Principal in Stand Tech Consulting Services, to go over the complete analysis of the utility rate study and its results. Please welcome Eric with me. Eric?
Sorry. Let me help you with that. Well, Stephen pulls up the presentation.
Just do me a favor, pull the mic as close as you can so that those folks that are listening online can, can hear you well. Thank you.
While Stephen pulls up the presentation, I just wanted to say good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you all again. As Steve mentioned, my name is Eric Grau. I'm a principal with the Management and Technology Consulting Group at Stand Tech Consulting Services. And today, I'll be presenting to you the updated results to the comprehensive utility rate study that we have conducted on behalf of the city's Water and Wastewater Utility Enterprise Fund. Solitaire always gets me too, tell you what. Minesweeper. Gotta drag the ace at the top.
Could be the original Atari Asteroid.
Or Pong?
Or Oregon Trail.
Dying of dysentery? All right, I think we're, we're good now. So as part of this comprehensive utility rate study that we've conducted on behalf of the city, there were four key analyses that we conducted. The first was a revenue sufficiency analysis where we effectively are developing a 10-year financial management program for the utility fund that identifies all of the needs over a multi-year period. In this case, we looked at a 10-year forecasting period. We look at each of the operating costs, identify the capital needs, that service requirements, as well as other, you know, kind of non-fiscal-type policies, such as are there sufficient unrestricted reserves being held on, you know, on hand per policy? Is, are revenues sufficiently greater than debt service, consistent with the requirements of your existing bonds? So kind of account for all of those and develop a 10-year financial management plan and identify a plan of annual rate revenue increases that would be needed to fund those requirements. Then, once we've identified those needs, we've conducted a cost allocation study, which was taking a deeper look at the costs of the system and identifying to which service, be it water, wastewater, reclaimed water, to which service those costs are allocable. And then we look at the rate revenue generated by the rates for each of those specific services and determine if they're properly aligned with each other. And if not, that gives us the opportunity during the third analysis, which is the rate design analysis, to either make modifications to the existing rate structure to address those cross-service subsidies that might exist if needed. And if not, it's an opportunity to address other objectives of the city and the utility. And so it's just an evaluation to see, are there modifications to the existing rate structures that we could consider to help achieve some of these goals, on a revenue-neutral basis, of course? And then finally, we wrap up with an updated calculation to the city's water and wastewater capacity fees, also locally known as contributions and aid of construction fees. And so we'll review the results of that analysis. Jumping into the revenue sufficiency analysis, there are two key buckets of requirements, if you will, when it comes to determining rate revenues. The first is the annual capital requirements, and that's the first chart at the, the top one on this slide. And during our 10-year forecast period of fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2033, what we've identified is capital spending of approximately $635 million during that time period. Now, that is, that consists of both the capital investment necessary for renewal and replacement of the existing aging system, as well as new capital investment necessary to serve future demands. Of that $635 million need, we have secured about $17 million in grant funding tied to three specific water main extension projects, as well as, at the start of this fiscal year, there was about $27 million of remaining proceeds from the most recent state revolving fund loan, which was issued in support of the, I believe it's a wastewater treatment plant number two project. The other side of the revenue requirement coin is operating requirements. These were based upon the adopted fiscal year 2024 budget. With staff, we analyzed every line item of the budget to determine line item-specific cost escalation factors. By the end of the forecast period, our operating needs increased from about just under $40 million today to just over $70 million by fiscal year 2033. And that's being driven, one, by the inflationary cost pressures, especially those that are key to the provision of utility service. Those key inputs are chemicals and, and power, which have increased at quite a significant rate. And then, secondly, it's the incremental operating expenditures associated with personnel and equipment, above and beyond what's in today's budget, but necessary to operate and maintain the capital investment that we see on, on that top chart. And so currently, the city's practice is to increase rates annually on October 1st that are equal to the year-over-year change in the U.S. Consumer Price Index, or USCPI. For some context, over the last 10 years, that has averaged around 2.7%. But that has been a, especially in recent history, a variable, a very volatile 2.7%. Last year, the change was north of 9% to provide some context. Now, that USCPI, that number that we see in the news, that's really made up of two, it's a basket made up of 200 individual indices. One of those specific indices is called the Water and Sewerage Maintenance Series. It essentially tracks the change in water and sewer bills to consumers across the country. And it's a good surrogate for, for, for the increases in costs that utilities are faced with.
Can I just ask real quick what the WNS series was for last year?
I can find, I can get that number for you.
Okay, gotcha. I just wondered-
It was close to 9%.
So that's what was my question, reflected more correctly, the operational increases from last year? Okay, understood. Thank you.
Can, can I kind of cut in maybe and help maybe attach to what you're talking about, Councilman Clufus? Just as an example, we ran some numbers on our chemical costs. In a four-year time span from 2020 to 2024, two of our largest chemical costs are lime and basically chlorine or sodium hypochlorite, okay? Lime went up by 68.5% in that four-year time span. Hey Steve, what, what years were though again? 2020 to 2024, that four-year time span. Sodium hypochlorite or chlorine went up 165%. I'm not gonna name off all the other chemicals, but they ranged anywhere from basically 39% increase over that four-year span to 240%. Just to give you a kind of idea.
And so what's shown on the screen is what I call a status quo plus scenario. If we continued each October 1st with an inflationary 3% increase, and I call it a status quo plus because of, you know, on top of that 3% each year, what if we doubled this next October 1st increase? So if October 1st, it was 6%, and then we did 3% each year thereafter? All else equal, the blue bars, which represent ending year, end of year fund balance within the operating fund. We have a policy of wanting to maintain reserves each year that are at least equal to that black line, which represents the minimum target of two and a half months of annual operating expenditures, just to ensure you have liquidity to pay your bills in the event of an emergency. All else equal, with this plan of rate increases, the operating fund balance would drop below the two-and-a-half-month target by next fiscal year and would be exhausted totally by fiscal year 2028. The point here is that this is not a financially sustainable, long-term plan. But what are? So we've identified two rate plan scenarios that result in very similar financial dynamics. They fund all the identified requirements of the system, including those operating requirements, capital, debt service. They maintain fund balance equal to at least that two-and-a-half-month target and satisfy all of the debt service coverage requirements. The financial management plans that we developed would mean that, well, under alternative scenario one, if we wait until October 1st, which is when the next increase would typically occur, what would be needed is a 12.5% increase to rate revenue, followed by 6% the following October 1st, and then 3.5% each year thereafter. Under alternative scenario two, everything's the same, but the change in assumptions is that we start our increases sooner. So instead of waiting till October 1st for 12.5%, on May 1st of this year, we increase 6%. Then in October, it's another 6%, 6% the following October, and then again, 3.5% each year thereafter. An important caveat is that this is part of a comprehensive financial management plan that we developed with staff. So with these rate increases, it is assumed that between fiscal year 25 and 33, that there would be about $270 million of future debt needed to fund the, the capital program. And so moving on to the cost of service analysis, again, this was an analysis where we evaluated the, the operating and capital expenses of the, of the system in total to ensure the extent to which current rates are reflecting the proportional cost- current rates are reflecting the proportional cost of providing each service. After going through that analysis, what we determined was that wastewater revenues are currently under-recovering by about 5% to 6%, and water and reclaim are over-recovering by about 5% to 6%. In total, the system is whole, but there is a little bit of variance. Now, this is a snapshot in time, is an analysis that should be done every couple of years and really just monitored, but at this point, a kind of a 5% variance, plus or minus, isn't, they're not sufficient enough to warrant any corrective action, is basically what the analysis should. So that wasn't a goal, fixing that issue was not a goal when we did our rate design analysis, but through our discussions with staff, we did identify three key goals that we wanted to try to address as part of this exercise. The first was, in light of the rates, of the needed rate increases that I just showed you on the prior slides, about 18% over the next, you know, two years, how can we mitigate those bill impacts to the fixed income or low-water user? At the same time, how can we promote water conservation? As Steve mentioned in his presentation, you know, we are, the capacity that is currently available is running out. And so promoting water conservation today can help extend the life of the existing capacity. And then a third goal was, all right, well, how do we make these changes while at the same time ensure revenue stability is preserved? There are two solutions that I'm hoping on the next couple of slides will help illustrate what we're recommending as solutions. The first is the addition of a lifeline tier to the water residential rate structure. Currently, water residential rates, on their volumetric portion of their bill, their usage portion, it's a tiered rate structure. The more water you use, the higher the tier rate you pay. It's an inclining conservation rate structure, it's meant to promote conservation. What we're recommending is adding a fifth tier, a lifeline tier, from 0 to 2,000 gallons. So we would carve out of the existing tier one, which is 0 to 5,000, and this would be a reduced rate, a tier with a reduced rate that gets picked up and spread out across, you know, all the other tiers. The second solution would be during the next rate increase, so October 1st under alternative scenario one, or May 1st under alternative scenario two, to apply all of that next increase to solely the volumetric portion of the bills. Again, this will serve to kind of protect that low-water user from the rate impacts. And so currently, well, what I have on the screen is the current rate structure. The left table is the current water rates, the right table is the current wastewater rates. Both tables, on their top halves, reflect the fixed monthly charges that are, it's flat, it's the same charge each month, and it scales by meter size. The bottom half of each table reflects the volumetric charges. So this is going to be the rates you pay per 1,000 gallons of consumption per month. And it's broken up into kind of a residential and non-residential customer classes. The residential, which is encircled there in the orange border, reflects the current four-tier water residential rate structure. So we can see our four tiers, and that first one is 0 to 5,000 gallons. Non-residential customers at the bottom pay a uniform rate per 1,000 gallons. And if we move over to the wastewater rate table, both residential and non-residential customers pay a uniform rate per 1,000 gallons of water consumed with a cap at 8,000 gallons. Under this current rate structure, the fixed charge revenue, so the top half of these tables, result in about, on the water side, about 46% of the revenue that's generated from utility bills. On the wastewater side, it's about 48%. Industry guidance states that fixed charge revenue collection should be between 30% and 50%. So we're currently within that, the range of industry guidance and at the high range. So we currently have a structure that is very much such that it'll preserve, you know, fiscal, revenue stability with this current structure. And so again, with the changes that we wanted to make, encouraging water conservation and protecting that lower-water user, that's where the hit's going to be, right? Is can we preserve that level, that high level of revenue recovery from the fixed charges? So on this slide, this is under alternative scenario one. If we adopt a 12.5% increase on October 1 of 2024, these are the updated rate schedules. The fixed charges are exactly the same compared to the slide we just looked at. What's different are those volumetric charges, and specifically, within that orange box, that first tier we added in of 0 to 2,000 gallons. With the recommended rate structure changes, the fixed charge revenue recovery for water would drop from about 46% down to about 39%. And on the wastewater side, it would drop from about 48% down to 42%. Still within that range of industry guidance. Now, this slide demonstrates the monthly bill impacts under scenario one, so a 12.5% increase, but with the rate structure changes that I just described. Under this scenario, approximately 2/3 of residential bills issued would see an increase less than the 12.5% overall rate revenue increase need. And the typical bill, which for the city is a customer using 2,500 gallons per month, would see an increase of 9.1% versus the 12.5% overall rate revenue increase needed. This following slide calls out a couple of examples of non-residential customers, but if we consider an average one-inch connection for a non-residential customer, that customer on average is using 6,500 gallons per month, the change in their monthly bill would be 15.3%. So again, if you think of rate revenue as a balloon, and in a balloon, you only have so much air, and if that air effectively represents your rate revenue, if you poke on one end of a balloon, you still have the same amount of air in there, it's just going to kind of bump out on the other end of the balloon. It's the same here. We're looking at this on a revenue-neutral basis. So if we make modifications to benefit one part of the revenue stream, there's going to be, you know, a negative implication somewhere else. Now here, we have the updated rate tables under our second scenario, which is a 6% increase on May 1st. Under this scenario, the current fixed charge revenue recovery would be about 44%. So dropping from today's 46% to about 44%, and on the wastewater side, dropping from about 49% today to about 47%. Looking at the customer bill impacts under this scenario, now recall, we're looking for an overall rate revenue increase to the system of 6%. But under this scenario, approximately 96% of residential bills issued after May 1st will see an increase less than that 6%. And approximately half the bills issued would actually see a decrease to their monthly bill. The typical bill at 2,500 gallons would see an increase of only 0.1%. So we're effectively holding that typical bill flat.
Sweet. Scenario two.
If we look at...
And that's the recommended scenario.
All right. Excellent.
So looking at non-residential impacts, if we look at kind of that average one-inch connection, that's a 4.3% increase to that account. And so here, we have a monthly bill survey. These are other local utilities, and Palm Coast is denoted by the three orange arrows. That first one, the leftmost one, is where the city currently sits in this survey, a typical customer using 2,500 gallons. Under scenario one, with that 12.5% overall increase, that's a 9.1% increase to the typical residential bill, the city would jump one agency on this survey, all else equal. Under scenario two, that would be that second orange arrow, and we basically see that, you know, Palm Coast stays in its same relative position. And so the fourth analysis we looked at was the, an updated calculation of the capacity fees or contribution in aid of construction fees. These are fees that are meant to recover the cost of capacity in the system. So every new connection is paying for their quote-unquote "fair" share of the cost of capacity and the key backbone infrastructure of the system. If we look at the left-hand table, the water calculation, it includes the reconstruction cost of new-based value of the existing plant and service, less any outstanding debt associated with that, plus the expansion-related capital costs identified over the next five years, less any grants or contributed capital that we've identified with those projects. We add those up, and that provides us our net system value. On the water side, it's about $308 million. If we divide that net system value by the number of equivalent residential connections that the capacity of that system can support, that's going to give us a calculated fee per equivalent residential connection of $5,421, compared against the current fee of $3,995, that represents a 35.7% increase. Going through the same process and calculation on the wastewater side, we have a system value of about $369 million, divided by the number of equivalent residential connections, gives us a fee of $6,800 per equivalent residential connection, compared to the current fee of $5,441, that represents a percentage change of just under 25%. Now, as we review these, it's important to keep in mind that state statutes were updated in 2021 that provides some guidance or restrictions, if you will. The first is that, of these revisions, the first was that the, you know, capacity fees can be increased by no more than 50% once every four years. And both of the fees we've calculated are less than 50%, so it's, you know, it's kind of a moot point for us. But then, secondly, increases that are calculated to be 25% and greater, so between 25 and 50%, those increases must be phased in equally, you know, must be phased in over four equal increases. Increases that are between 0 and 25% must be phased in over two equal increases. So on the water side, the fees that we calculated were 35.71% greater than the current fees, which means we would need to phase in that fee increase over the next four years. So each May 1st, starting this May 1st. On the wastewater side, we're right underneath that 25% threshold, so it would be a two-year phase-in, so about 12.5% for the next two years, where it would then remain flat for the next two years before another study could be conducted to determine at that time what the full cost recovery fees are. And so in conclusion, staff has three recommendations for adoption, which we will be coming back next week for the first reading. So staff is recommending scenario number two. Again, that's a 6% rate revenue increase on May 1st, 2024, followed by 6% October 1st, then 6% again October 1st, 2025, and 3.5% October 1st, 2026. We're adding to that that unless or until, you know, a new study is conducted and completed, that we would revert back to automatic CPI-tied annual increases, but this time do it so that we set a floor. So it's 3.5% or US CPI, whichever is greater. The second recommendation from staff is to proceed with the two recommended rate structure modifications, so adding that lifeline tier to the water rates and applying the next, so the May 1st increases of 6% to only the water and wastewater volumetric charges. And then finally, staff is recommending increasing the contribution in aid of construction fees to their full cost recovery, following the two- and four-year phase-in schedules described. And with that, have any questions?
If I can, I'll be brief. So let me just get my opinion out first, if I may. I am troubled by your presentation, and let me explain why. There are, in presentations like this, there seems to be a tendency to make some gross assumptions, which quickly get buried into the weeds as you delve into the slides with the detail. So the original capital plan was extended, extended out to 2031. So there was an assumption made to reel it back into 2027 through 2028, just significant contraction of the timeline or acceleration in the increase. When I compare that, and it may not be apples to apples, but I'll note that the number of single-family permits that were approved in 2023 over the prior year 2022 is more than a 20% decrease, more than a 20% decrease from the year-over-year. Now, there are other factors as well, but I'm looking again at this gross assumption that accelerated the increase and shortened the timeline. Now, you also made a comment and talked about renewal capital dollars versus operating dollars. I'm not sure that I understand that there isn't some overlap there between the two, and I would need to be convinced with more information that we aren't counting those same dollars more than once. I may be off on the definition a little bit, but renewal and operating seem to be, for me anyway, they seem to overlap. So I am, starting at the highest level, not able to follow through, I understand the arithmetic, but I'm troubled at the get-go with the starting-up assumption. So that's where I am right now, and I guess I would open up to city council members, do you want to offer up your own comments on the presentation? We'll go around to everybody.
Mayor, can I respond to at least a portion of that?
Do you want to hear everybody first, or do you want to go? It's up to you.
Up to you.
At your pleasure.
I can't remember 10 comments and repeat them then. So I would say...
Fire when ready, Gridley.
Let me fire, fire as you, shoot. As far as the capacity issue, when you talked about, in 2031 was our original or our prior capacity analysis report for wastewater capacity only. That report had in it the expansion of wastewater treatment plant two from a 2 million gallon a day plant to a 4 million gallon a day plant, which we're currently under construction with. Now, in addition to that, we have recently, in our five-year and 10-year capital plan, we have worked towards... we have worked towards moving some of the wastewater capacity that's very limited at wastewater plant one over to wastewater plant two that has more capacity today. We did that in the last week of December, and we moved roughly a quarter million gallons of wastewater flow from wastewater plant one to wastewater plant two to benefit the overall system. Our next step is we're planning to move another 475,000 gallons, roughly in capacity, from wastewater plant one flows to wastewater plant two. We've already prepped that work to happen, but we really cannot activate that until plant two is completed, the expansion from 2 million to 4 million. So it's kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for the expansion of plant two to happen. So that kind of helps to address the wastewater plant one capacity needs. So it's a kind of a dynamic system between the two plants, unlike the water plant where you have three water plants, but basically their systems all interconnect. So you can boost one pressure from one plant, lower it from another, and the system really doesn't see a whole lot of difference. In wastewater capacity, in wastewater, you have basically a line in the sand, if you will. This area of the community goes to wastewater plant one. This area goes to wastewater plant two. Now, we can do certain things that changes that. Couple of years ago, we moved some of what's in Pine Lakes area from plant one to plant two as a first step at that time. So we will continue to look at those things when it comes down to a capacity standpoint. But wastewater plant one, I'm sorry, yes, wastewater plant one is moved way up on the schedule based on not just what's transpired in the last few years, but what we see coming forward. There's a lot of growth coming forward that's in the wastewater plant one service area. So that's another reason why in wastewater capacity analysis, you look for what's going on in the future as well as what's recent.
And not to dispute what you said, I get it. But I will go back to the original plan, which we all are aware of, and not to single out ITT again. But there was a growth plan. We talked about it several times earlier today that had far more connections or dwelling units or capacity or the need for wastewater than we currently have so far, which was why originally we were out to 2031. So I know that we, you know, we've had these blips. We had a bust, we had a boom. But if you look at the trend line, in my mind, we're not really far off from the original forecast for our infrastructure needs, despite the fact that we may be feeling growth because we suffered a bust for a while. So that's, I'm just not there yet with the understanding, maybe I need to understand these numbers even better. My problem is, I'm not, I'm not fearing a consequence of not investing at this level at this moment in time. So again, those are my comments. I would very much appreciate hearing from the rest of city council members, if we could.
I'll be happy to.
Well, do you want to go first?
No, go for it. So I have some problems with this, too. And the biggest problem I have is folks in our community have suffered enough financial abuse in the last almost three years, coming up on four, between the price of gasoline, the price of food, the price of insurance on their homes, the whole nine yards. This is, and again, the cost of what you guys are looking at has gone through the roof. It's not your fault. It's called Bidenomics. And I'll be very blunt about it. That's what's caused this problem. You know, the elderly man with poor memory who sees dead people has destroyed this economy. So my feeling is, I'm willing to put this off till next year when President Trump is back in office and the price of fuel drops and the cost of everything goes with it, and we're then maybe looking at a normal cost of living increase. So I would like to see us just tighten our belts for one year until the political land state changes and we have a much better economy to deal with. Because this is horrible, what everything costs. A lot of it's related to fuel, obviously, because stuff has to go from one coast to another coast, from around the world, whether it's in the sky or on the roadways, and we're using diesel. And to me, it's put us in a bad situation. But I have to tell you, I'm out every day now knocking on doors as I campaign for my next office. And I'm talking to all of our voters, and they have just really had enough. They can't take anymore. We have a lot of elderly people, and I like the idea of having another tier that might help some of those people down the road. So I think that's a great idea. But I think right now, we just should really sit back and see what happens when President Trump is back in office. I cannot vote for any increase at this time.
Councilman Clufus, are you ready to make some comments on the presentation?
Sure, I'm just worn down from being here until 2 o'clock this afternoon. I think as a council, we have to actually, in addition to this, talk about how we can get these meetings to be more efficient. But at this point, right now, when is the drop-dead deadline for things not going to be in equilibrium anymore? So it's 27 or 28? Yeah, I mean, I want to impact people as little as possible. I concur. I don't feel great about anybody paying anything more. The cost of increases from some of these astronomical prices is wild. Here's my question. If we had maintained the 3.5% CPI or higher, depending if the 3.5 CPI was met or not, would that have not, would that have, would we have not ended up in this position if we had followed that rule?
No, I think you'd be in the same position you have.
So are we really giving ourselves any outage out here? So why aren't we considering, instead of CPI, tying it to the CNS?
We can, I mean, I think the point is tying to an index that would provide a floor, a safety net, if you will.
Does the CNS occasionally not, like fluctuate? Okay, so my question would be then, why not tie it to 3.5% or the CNS? Is that amazing that it's, or is it S&amp;W sewer and wastewater?
Yeah, we can tie it to, I mean, yeah, to any, any index that we think makes sense. The idea is to have a level of protection when, once this four-year rate plan expires, if a rate study hasn't been conducted yet or hasn't been completed, that you would have in place a mechanism by which to automatically increase rates going into the future.
Understood. And looking back retroactively, which one of those would have prevented the situation from occurring now? Is there one? I mean, it's okay, and it's okay answer if there's.
Yeah, I mean, operating expenses have increased at a rate greater than
That's the problem.
The 3 and 1/2%. So that's, yeah, that is part of it. And then on top of that, we have an aging system. Forget, you know, new capital investment to serve future demands. Just to serve today's demands, you have an aging infrastructure that is much more expensive today than it was when it was originally installed, however many decades ago.
So I guess one of the other points we need to take away here is that even if no additional residents moved into the city, not another single house is built, still, it not sufficient to be able to sustain itself in its current form. And I know that a lot of the projections go into having additional residents come into and onboarding into our system. But even without any additional capacity increases, that the aging system that we have, mixed with the increased maintenance costs, this still would not be, our current situation would still not be alleviated, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to model that out, but yeah, I mean, my gut feeling is that's a true statement.
Understood. Yeah, it stinks. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I wish I could control the prices of sodium chloride or, you know, chlorine and lime and things like this, but here we are.
Councilman Clufus, I think one of the things, you know, I've always been a big advocate. I think ITT set up a really good community, and I think we've benefited from that greatly. But I think one of the things that we have not benefited from, from a utility standpoint, and I say a water and sewer utility standpoint, is when ITT started this community, basically, right, what did they do? They didn't, they didn't do like home builders do for the most part. They didn't build 100 and 200 lot subdivisions and then a lot of vertical infrastructure or homes go in, right? What they did is they started by selling lots and building roads and water and sewer systems that just sat and sat and didn't provide any purpose really at the time because they were just surrounded by vacant lots. We are now paying for that by needing to maintain those 800 miles plus or minus of water lines, sewer lines, and system that were set up 40 and 50 years ago. So I can tell you, one of our big expenses that we started upping in the last couple of years is lining sewer mains and manholes. Because what you don't want to have is roads cave in around manholes because they're failing. We are now looking at a grant to try and get millions of dollars to bump that program up greatly. And we're hoping we see, matter of fact, as recent as today, I saw an email from Maven saying that we have a good chance, it looks like, on getting several million dollars to aid our capital plan when it comes down to lining manholes and sewer lines. And that helps us in many different ways. It helps us from the standpoint is it extends out the life of that utility line, and it also reduces flows to our wastewater plant. So it cuts down the need for capacity improvements. So those are the kind of things that kind of show up over time on the aging system costs. So I can tell you that the costs to run the utility are not going to go down. They're going to continue to go up, and it's just a matter of at what percentage. And please keep in mind that in this five-year standpoint, from the last time a rate study was performed, we had COVID. We had all kinds of inflationary issues in addition to COVID. We had timeframes with COVID when people were just left and right putting sanitary napkins down the toilet, backing up the system, creating additional work for the staff to go out and derag pumps. Those are all costs that somebody has to pay at the end of the day to run a utility. You can't be done when you're cutting costs in that matter. But we do everything we can to hold our costs down.
Councilwoman, comments?
So thank you, Mr. Flynn, again, and thanks, Eric. I've, I know we've emailed back and forth, and so I just want to make it abundantly clear that I appreciate your time very much and your knowledge. And the work that's been put into this, I think, to create the least amount of impact on our residents cannot be understated. I appreciate the fact that this is not a raise on base charges. I appreciate the fact that this encourages conservation of water. Because to your point, Vice Mayor, while yes, we as a city can tighten our belts, at home, we can be mindful of how much water we're using as well.
Tighten our faucets.
Exactly. And in doing so, we can put ourselves in those lower tiers to where we do feel a minimum impact of any proposed increases. I share the mayor's concerns about maybe not having quite enough information yet at this point. So I kind of want to drill down on what he said again, or questioned with regards to the reason for the expediting of the capital plan project. So I understand to an extent why we might have expedited to 2028, but did we have to do all, like every project? Did it have to get moved up to 2028? Because it sounds like you were talking about mainly one plant, but it looks like we've kind of expedited everything rather than just that one plant. So can you speak to that a little bit more?
Certainly, certainly. No, when it comes down to it, what was really expedited is the plant expansion from 6.83 to 10 million gallons a day. That's what needed to be moved up in the wastewater capacity analysis report. Now, some of the improvements that will actually come with that expansion would be some electrical improvements that were planned before, anyway. So that's really the movement forward in the program from 2031 to 2027 or 2028 is solely the wastewater plant one expansion project.
Okay, so everything else then that was planned, we haven't, we haven't altered that timeline at all?
Not to any magnitude at all, Councilwoman Pontieri. I can tell you that, you know, basically what drives it, and we do this all the time. We sit down and go through our five-year capital and based on flows and flow projections and current flows. The plants, we run flows every day, of course. Then we move things both up and back, if we can. I give you, my example of that would have been in the bust of 2007. We were going to build wastewater plant two in 2008 because the growth at that time was just through the roof. Then all of a sudden, 2007, I think it was, came, and it went to basically nothing. So we were able to, even though we already had the design and the permitting all in hand, ready to go out to bid in construction, we took it off the five-year capital plan. And we said, we can save those dollars. There's no need for us to spend those dollars and then have to maintain that building when we might not need it. And the data showed that we wouldn't need it, probably. We could hold it off, hold off. So we held that facility off for almost 10 years. And instead of building it in 2008, it was completed in construction and activated in 2018. So I'd say all that to show you how dynamic the five- and 10-year capital plan is based on what's going on. And that's not just capacity. It's based on how is the system functioning? There's many other capital projects that aren't just at the water plants or wastewater plants. For example, we're getting ready to bid out on a forced main project from basically Whiteview Parkway up Old Kings Road to wastewater plant one. Now, that's all capacity-related, but it's not capacity at the plants. It's capacity to get your wastewater flow to the plants. And that all connects to, basically, you know, cutting it short kind of thing, is when it rains and we have some of this rain flow that was talked about earlier come into the system, it causes spills and overflows. Well, you've got to build the capacity in the distribution and collection systems as well. So those are all capital projects as well that move up or move back depending on how the system shows us its functioning or where it's, as I call it, where the pinch points are in the entire system. Because you're looking at a system of 800 plus or minus miles of water lines, sewer lines, and it's going to have pinch points in it. Think of it like our, your roadway system, right? Where's the worst parts of when you drive to here or you drive to there? Where is it just open and free-flowing? And then where do you get, oh, here's a backup, I got to wait through two lights? That kind of thing. So a sewer system is very similar to that, if you will, when it comes down to that kind of thinking.
So I understand what you're saying, Vice Mayor, about inflation and things like that, but it doesn't sound like, based on you saying last year, the rate of inflation was around 9%. This year, we're looking at it being, it's lower, but even what you propose is still only 3.5%. So respectfully, I don't think next year is going to make a difference. It doesn't really matter who's in office nationally.
It does matter.
For the, don't interrupt me, please.
Sorry.
For the purposes of this study and for what we're looking at, it's not going to matter because this is already lower than what has been caused by national policy. Maybe yes, but this, this rate is already lower than that. I mean, so do you foresee, even if, let's say, because things never go back down to what they were, but let's say that costs went down by 25, 30%. Is that going to affect the 3.5% that you propose going forward?
Yes. And in fact, many of my other clients, they'll go through a, you know, a big comprehensive study like this every four or five years or so, but they'll conduct a revenue sufficiency announce- but they'll conduct a revenue sufficiency analysis or a revenue sufficiency analysis light, kind of like a check-in of the financial management plan, and they'll do that every year or every other year. They might incorporate it just as part of, to help inform the budget development process. But through those, the, those more frequent updates, it allows staff or the board to see how the assumptions have changed. To your point about growth, let's say it continues to be 20% decline in growth year over year for the next five years. That's probably not reflected in, as a baseline assumption in our financial model, but we would have the opportunity to say, okay, growth's coming in lighter, we changed this. What does this mean to the overall financial management plan? Can the rate increases, the rate plan that was approved and adopted, you can always go back and reduce it after the fact. I mean, we don't want to do that. But if that, if the assumptions, if the reality is such that that's what makes sense and is in the best interest of the community, like you, you would have that, that foresight.
So if, if rates went down next year, could that, will that reduce the cost or I guess the, the percentage increase that we would have to impose in order to keep the current system going?
If CPI is down next year, you're saying, would that cause a reason? I don't believe that it would be a significant enough reason in the near term. We're already, as can be seen on that chart at the top, those light blue bars to the left represent ending fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2022 and estimated at the end of fiscal year 23. And that, those bars are declining. And so without rectifying that cash flow deficit, I mean, you're eventually, you could, I mean, nobody else moves to the city, stop everything. I mean, to operate as is currently right now, you would still, still need to raise rates.
Just to your point, not to interrupt, but you use that word eventually. So this is a timing thing. So eventually is, is one year, three years or five years? I'm not looking for the answer. Let, let me ask City Council this. One of the things that I, I think is important, and I would ask the city management, if we could have a memo, I guess, that clearly summarize the catastrophic effects that we might be risking or playing with here as we continue the discussion on the details. In other words, we've covered a lot of information here. I'm not yet comfortable that I understand making a decision, yea or nay, what the, and again, I hate to use the word catastrophic, but you know what I'm saying. What, what service level would we no longer be able to provide to our residents? And approximately at what point on the time? What service levels and along the timeline of the next, uh, one to three years? I guess would be appropriate. I'm just picking it out of the air, but I don't feel comfortable that I understand that. And this is a really big decision because, you know, what we decide now, if it's going to cause a drop in service level three years from now, I need to understand that now. So what I would be asking, if, I mean, you guys live in this world, you know that, and I'm just not comfortable that I understand it well enough. So if that could be produced in advance of the next discussion, well, this is a workshop. So if that could be copied to City Council in short order.
And then the other question I had was these capital projects for water and wastewater. It seems that a lot of the reason for the increase of proposed increases to both the utility rates and to the impact fees are because of these capital projects. How much of these have we asked for in state appropriations? Because I'm also nervous about making a decision, because then if we get state money in, I mean, yes, we can go back and reduce the rate, but how often does that happen? I mean, come on, once it's up there, it's up there. It's very rare that it comes back down. I'm just, that might sound cynical, but it's true.
Not in the last eight years.
So, I, so do we know what that whole, what that entire number is? And how that would, I mean, presumably if we were to get monies in, that would affect what we have to raise rates to?
Based on the current legislative priorities, yeah. I mean, that's a good point. And, you know, it's still, you know, we're four weeks out or more, but. So if you could include that in this summary, and I don't, Stephen, at least from my point of view, I'm really looking for a one pager here because this is just a trigger from which I can, at least for myself, ask more questions and other council members can use it as a framework to make sure that we have considered all that you have presented properly and thoroughly.
And then the last question I have is, um, I think it's pretty clear that in, based on your previous presentations too, a very large percentage of these costs are because of growth, capacity needs, things like that. I mean, good things come with growth, negative things come with growth. In looking at whether or not we have to raise the utility rates a certain amount on the residents as well as impact fees, can those things be bifurcated? In other words, do we have to vote on them together? Or are we able to bifurcate those and say, okay, we're going to vote on this increase to the residents on this day, this increase on the impact fees on another day? Or do they have to be tied together in one vote?
Are you asking, are there independent systems that can be financed independently of another part of the system? Is that, is that what you're asking, kind of?
No, no.
Are you just asking operating versus, uh?
Correct.
Growth?
Yes.
So.
It's my overlap question, I think.
Just trying to kind of coincide together, they work in tandem, right?
And I don't want you to guess. If you need to come back to us, because that's a really important question. I, I'm not looking for a Johnny-on-the-spot answer here. This is way too important.
I had the answer and then lost it there at the very end. Could you just repeat the question?
Sure, yeah. I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not, you know, the, obviously these two, these two things are tied together, but they're very different.
So they don't have to be approved at the same time. I will say that the scenarios we've presented assume implementation of the capacity fee increases on May 1st. In the near term, I'd have to mo, I have to model this out. It's been a while since I've looked at it. I can provide you what the, what, what our dashboard would look like. But I want to say beyond these next two to three years, it's about a quarter of a percent to half a percent impact to those future three and a half percent increases. I'll need to double check that, but just work off my memory. I'm pretty sure that's what the, the impact was. If, if you were to hold capacity charges as they are today throughout the 10-year forecast, that's what the impact to the operating rates would be.
Well, we, we obviously can't afford to do that, but, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then my last kind of two-part question is on the spreadsheet that says capacity fee analysis, full cost recovery fees. You have in there, it looks like the costs, and then you break out of that and reduce the net system investment by with, by taking out grants and contributed capital and then outstanding debt. My question is, what is the contributed capital out of this and where is that coming from?
So those are the grants that are tied to the, there's three water main extension lines that are identified in the CIP.
Okay, but.
Or as main extensions.
Is our proportion that we have to, whatever proportion we have to match for those grants, are those coming out of resident monies or are those coming out of impact fees?
There's no cost share to those.
There's no cost share for those?
And we didn't account for any.
Okay, so when you, when it says contributed capital, there's actually no contributed capital? It's just the grants?
Yeah, it's just a, it's just the grants.
Okay. And then what is the outstanding debt that we're also deducting as well? I don't understand that.
So that is the outstanding debt that's currently held by the utility that could have been used, you know, or was used in the past for funding the system. And so we don't want to do a double recovery of those dollars that have already been spent.
Okay, so based on what you proposed as, for the increase in the impact fees, we are looking at a total cost recovery for any expenses that are related to growth that we're looking at through 2028. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And is that, can, taking into account inflation to construction costs caused by capacity increases?
Uh, for, for part of the equation. The other part, that's on the future capital over the next five years. It's, you know, it's part of the CIP plan. The other part of the equation is the existing plant and service. So the capacity fees are, they're trying to ensure that we recover that cost of capacity for those new connections and that future cost, but that when those new connections come onboard, that they're also reimbursing the existing customer base that originally paid into that investment or has been paying for it through their rates. They've been covering the debt service for that investment in the past. And so this is a way to make, to kind of, um, recover the equity.
Pay it backward.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And, and I, I asked the questions that I did about voting on these simultaneously because I'm comfortable with the impact fees. I mean, they're not the max that we could do, obviously, but I think that based on the analysis, they're where they should be. I'm not yet where I need to be on the, on the resident rates. So I don't know if there's a way to, if we voted, you voted different times. I don't know if it's appropriate, but to maybe kind of narrow the issue.
So that could be in the form of a motion at the next meeting. I think we all need to think about it between now and the next meeting and maybe come prepared with your thought. We'll talk about it and maybe customize or offering a motion that considered that might be the most appropriate way to handle it and build in if, if we're going to delay, you know, forward, piece apart, all or whatever. So I think that would be appropriate way to, to handle it at the next meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
I, I would, barring any additional discussion now, I would open this item up to the public if there's any.
I've got to head out of here.
Okay, uh, hold on one second. Wait, 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 wait. One, two, three, okay.
When we have items in the workshop that require this level of consensus, it is very important that these are put on the forefront because now we're already down a council member.
Understood.
Potentially contentious.
Good point. Appreciate it.
I think the increase is needed because we don't want to have like what you described, a catastrophic disaster. That, but anyway, I emphasize that our water bill is, our utility bill here is very expensive. My family pay in Phoenix, Arizona, sixty-eight dollars a month for the same type of service. So it is pretty expensive here. But I figured out probably there they use mountain water and here we have to use all the chemicals because it's brackish water. That might be a reason one. What I will ask is that the plan offer that will promote to save water is the one plan that charge a less percentage to, is less costly to those that consume less water. And that will promote that. And one other thing is no Trump for this resident, please. No Trump for this resident.
Thank you for your comment. If there are no other comments, I'll come back to the, to the dais. Steve, I just want to make sure you have enough kind of direction to communicate through the city manager's office to us based on the questions that you heard today and, you know, don't.
I, I think so, Mayor.
Looking for this to narrow our focus so that we can get our comfort levels so that we're able to make a, a correct decision at our, at our next meeting.
Understand. I, I would like to point out a couple of things if I could. That this program promotes a strong fiscal position and maintains our credit rating. These things are important because they ensure the system complies with all rate covenant requirements. It maintains adequate working capital for us, for our operating capital, and it supports the issuance of future needed debt to increase capacity. One of the big things that these rate studies do is it ensures the rating agencies that we're basically doing the hard decisions that we have to make to operate a facility of this magnitude that serves over a hundred thousand customers. Yes, is there always a place that you can cut some? Trust me, I'm always cutting the manager's numbers down or asking them, why do you need this? But I can tell you with complete confidence that we need these rates to operate this facility, both as, I think Councilwoman Pontieri put it well. Probably if I had to say which one, the capacity fees are probably a higher need than the operating numbers. But the operating numbers are right behind it because if we don't raise the operating, we're just going to slowly eat our reserves down to nothing and then, you know, you're Peter paying Paul. So.
All right, Steve, thank you. So put that, put that debt item into your, you know, catastrophic. Don't use that word catastrophic, but just so that we, you remind us of that. I appreciate that. So if there is no further discussion, gentlemen, thank you. We, we know how much work went into this and we're doing our best to become experts and make the best decisions on behalf of the welfare of our community and the current economic condition that our folks are, are trying to, you know, live through here. So don't mistake our, the depth at which we want to consider all of this. It is for the good of the community, but we thank you for your efforts. With that, I would open up final public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a final public comment today on any item that was not previously discussed on today's agenda?
Good afternoon. George Mayo, Palm Coast. Concerning the discussion here with Mr. Flanagan and the fees, I'm wondering, they showed the graphs for increase for residents and non-residents. And I'm wondering if the percentage of increase that they are seeking is the same for residents and non-residents? And if so, why don't we charge non-residents a higher percentage of fees? And I know in the past several years, we've always had the capacity and we've allowed other communities and we've said, well, we have the capacity. You could engage and enter into our system. We could take care of your wastewater. Well, maybe now's the time to say, no, we don't, because now we don't have the capacity. So if a future community that is not in Palm Coast says, oh, we want to build this, can we join you? Sometimes it's the old just say, no, we can't do it. So one other point of, I just want to make watching at home, the camera that is watching the back of me right now and everything, if you move it a couple of degrees this way, you'll still be able to see the city manager and you would also be able to see the people sitting at the table here. So, and also the city clerk, just move a couple of degrees and you would get everybody in the picture.
Thank you for your comment. Any other final comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public comment. Counselor, any comment today?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Assistant City Manager.
Uh, yes, Mayor. We wish Ms. Bevan well and also we're trying to schedule your, per your direction, the legal services discussion. We've tentatively scheduled that for your next, after the conclusion of your next business meeting. We'll work on the agenda of trying to streamline the meeting, have a little break and then reconvene for that conversation on legal services.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I jumped over city council members.
I won't keep anyone here any longer.
Anybody? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion adjourned. I have a second. We're adjourned. Thank you all.